Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the specially called meeting. Today is a budget work session for Friday, June 27. We have a full day's agenda ahead of us, so we will jump right in. Ms. Hilberg, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Delgarza?
I am present.
Councilman Kidder?
Here.
Councilwoman Butler?
Present.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young?
Here.
Councilman Lofgren?
Here.
And Mayor Crocker?
Here. If you would, please stand. Join me for the pledges, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right. Again, welcome, everyone. We will start with announcements and reminders. Mr. Garza, do you have anything for us this morning?
Good morning. I do not.
How about public and employee recognitions?
I do not.
Any items from council?
You do not. Oh.
I have one, a quick one. And that's just, I had a phone call from someone telling me or asking if we could look at the timing of the intersection of 87 and Ben Jordan, South Ben Jordan. Apparently, it's cycling really short for traffic getting through. And I know periodically they get out of whack.
Absolutely. We'll look into that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Scott. I have no cards for citizens communication. Is there anyone who would like to, member of the public, would like to address council? Seeing none, I think some of you don't want to address council, but you have to, so I get it. All right.
Probably true.
Let's jump straight into work session. Mr. Garza.
All right. Well, good morning, mayor and council. Here we are again. It seems like the last 12 months have just flown by, but we are excited to present to you the fiscal year 2026 preliminary budget. Before I jump in, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the folks that, of course, have helped put it together, and you know them. Gilbert, Wesley, Laura, Marissa, and Sarah, they're all here with the finance department. And so thank you all so much for all your hard work. This year in specific was the first year that Wesley basically put it all together. You know, over the last few years, it's been a slow progression on Gilbert's part to release some of that responsibility, and this was Wesley's first year, and I applaud him. Last night at 11:00 PM, he graduated from the University of Last Minute Changes from the City Manager. And so thank you, Wesley.
Thank you, Wesley.
We were in our respective homes, just to be clear. But in any case, as usual, today you'll hear an overview of the preliminary budget from me, and then following that, you'll hear from most of the directors about their budgets. And it will follow a very similar format as it has in the past, meaning we all will highlight some achievements from fiscal year '25. We'll talk a little bit about some goals and objectives for fiscal year '26, walk you through the differences between the fiscal year '25 budget and the '26, as well as talk about any new initiatives, and then leave you with just some thoughts and some ideas on what's to come in the future. And I will follow a very similar format as it relates to that. And so I want to start off by just highlighting some catalytic projects and initiatives from fiscal year '25, some of which we had a very direct role in, and some of which we had more of a support role in. But it has been our goal for the past six years to embark on more catalytic projects because we know it's those types of projects that will lead to growth in our community. And so pictured above, on the top left, for example, is the new Amazon facility. Of course, our very own Public Safety Headquarters facility is there, as well as the Community Center, which was a big part of the fiscal year '25 story for us. Of course, some retail achievements that our Economic Development Director, Daniel Williams, sparehead from scratch, that was actually her first project, literally meeting the developer at a coffee line in Vegas during ICSE a couple of years ago to now having the shopping strip that's now under construction. And then we have some workforce housing projects there pictured, and then ultimately, we have police and fire pictured there because they're a big priority of ours. And I'm going to make that a little bit more clear in today's presentation than perhaps I have in the past because it truly is a year for police and fire. And so I'll give you some examples of that as we go through that. Before I get into fiscal year '26, though, we thought it would be appropriate to give you a snapshot of what is going on, what is going on across the state, what issues are other cities facing. And you may or may not have seen these headlines that have been published literally just over the last month or so, talking about a lot of communities across the state facing budget deficits, mainly the larger cities, but we're seeing this across the board. And we're seeing this across the board because there's a stabilization in the economy, right? We're seeing, for example, even just the market prices of homes, right? That's beginning to level off, which, of course, has an impact on property values. And we actually are seeing some of that, and I'll share that with you in a few minutes. But ultimately, the biggest pieces that contribute to these communities being put in this position are twofold. First, their local politics. I've worked in communities where local politics and elected officials cause the community to not budget conservatively because there's pressures, right, from elected officials to fund pet projects or earmarks or all sorts of things. And so it just puts a lot of pressure on cities to put together a budget that takes a lot of risk because of those pressures. Second, every single one of these communities is civil service and has either collective bargaining or meet and confer, which also creates financial pressure for those communities to have to always take risks on the budgeting side because of the pressures that come from the unions in those respective communities. And that's something that we need to be mindful of, in specific, going into fiscal year '26. But ultimately, the common denominator on why we don't face this type of issue is because we budget conservatively. We didn't face it during the pandemic. Many communities, when the pandemic hit, had to also make cuts or face deficits. We didn't because of our conservative approach to budgeting. And this year in specific, I'm going to highlight more intentionally the areas in the budget where we do that, so that you can see for yourself more clearly why it is that we're not in this position like other communities are to that extent. So as I mentioned, our fiscal year '26 story, the economy has a big role in it, and I'll get to that when I talk about property appraisals. Of course, our budget is always balanced, as it has to be per law. There are some implications potentially to the tax rate due to that flattening growth. We, of course, have presented to you, and I'll go over a high-level summary of the historic pay program that we're recommending. We'll talk briefly and take somewhat of a deeper dive into the status of our health plan because I think it's important, especially for our newer council members, to understand some of that history because that's also beginning to kind of trend in a direction that necessitates some of our attention. And then ultimately, the CIP program is a big one. A couple of years ago, we had a very historic CIP program and $94 million, which included the Public Safety Headquarters building. This one's up there. And so obviously driven predominantly by the Community Center project that was approved by our residents. And grant programs is always on this slide, but I specifically put personnel in parentheses because you're going to hear from a few departments that are applying for grants for personnel, which is a little bit different from what you've seen in the last few years, but that's just a creative way that we're trying to beef up personnel without necessarily putting that burden on our local taxpayers. And for the first time, we've added an icon for public safety because of what I alluded to, fiscal year '26, and the increases associated with fiscal year '26 can be attributed literally predominantly to police and fire. Overall, the fiscal year '26 budget is coming in at about $254 million in expenditures. This is an increase, and I'll show a slide here in a bit that shows that, but fiscal year '25 is about $194. So it is an increase, and I'll highlight here shortly what those increases are about. By the way, I should have mentioned this early on, but we intentionally left some notepads and pens for you because that way it's easier for you to jot down questions, make notes. I want to make sure that today's discussion is a discussion, and if you have questions, we have time for questions. I know in the past, we've kind of rushed through some of this, and so I just want to make sure that you can ask your questions, and we'll adjust accordingly the schedule as we go. In any case, the revenue budget for fiscal year '26 is $243 million. If you're jotting down on your notepad right now, that's an $11 million difference. Why is that? Doesn't make sense. We actually budget this way every year. And every year, we actually budget an amount that we refer to comes from excess fund balance or working capital, and that is very intentional. And this is actually an example of conservative budgeting, which I'll show you a little later more clearly. But because we budget conservatively, we have excess fund balance or working capital at the end of a fiscal year, which affords us the ability to be able to apply those funds towards one-time expenses. And so you see here on fiscal year '25, we basically had a $10 million in excess fund balance utilized for the budget, and for fiscal year '26, that's a little over $11 million. And again, these are literally used for one-time expenses. I like it. Y'all are writing. I love it. Okay. So I'm going to hit on the revenue slides first, or the revenue topic first. That, of course, is coming in at $243 million, as I just described. In fiscal year '25, that was $184 million, so that is a difference of about $58 million. These charts and these slides are very similar to what they've been in the past in that all of these bars, as they slide to the right or to the left in all of these slides that I'll show you, attempt to depict a high-level summary of what is causing that increase or that decrease and where it's coming from. And so, for example, you can very clearly see in this slide that that increase in $58 million is predominantly from bond proceeds, grants, CIP transfers, internal service charges, which is basically our CIP in vehicles. It would be the high, high, high level to summarize that. I do have a few slides here shortly that take a deeper dive into both of those topics. But ultimately, if you wanted to just summarize it in a few words, the increase is due to the large CIP that we are proposing, driven by the Community Center. Grants is driven by us continuing to move the City BG MIT projects because we've yet to receive that funding from the GLO, and so we just keep moving that money from fiscal year to fiscal year. As is customary, we do, of course, for purposes of this budget, take into account and make some assumptions and some estimates as it relates to property tax revenue and sales tax revenue. And so this year is no different. You'll notice even on the slide that's above here that there is a slight blue line to the positive in the line item listed for property tax. And so I want to get right into that because I know that's always a topic of interest. I alluded to the fact that we're seeing the stabilization of the economy all across the state, which is partly what's producing this situation for other communities, and we're not immune to that. And so you'll see here, this is as of last Friday. As of last Friday, our net taxable appraised values are actually in the negative, slightly, but in the negative. And so let's just call it flat. Now, we know that over the last four or five years, that actually hasn't been the story, right? Which has presented opportunities for us to increase our property tax revenue while at the same time decrease the property tax rate. And I'll show you a slide here that depicts that. But I want to draw your attention a little bit to the right-hand side of this slide so we can talk a little bit about some trends, some of which are okay, some of which are of concern. Now, this chart here on the right-hand side does not include this year's valuations because we haven't received the certified ones yet, which we receive at the end of July. But you'll notice some trends here. So you'll notice how residential values are plateauing, and you'll notice how commercial and industrial continues to increase. You'll notice how frozen values continue to increase as well, but to the negative. So on the frozen side, for example, right, we're already over $1 billion in frozen values. 10 years ago, it was half that. So what does that mean? It means our community is getting older. And so if we were to want to actually take a deep dive into the data on what is driving our NTAV growth or the fact that it stays the same, it's a combination, right? It's a combination of there isn't growth, right, that is rejuvenating and bringing more value to our existing properties. There isn't enough new growth to do that either, and our existing population is getting older. And so when we talk about growth, I don't want to digress too much, but it's got to be specific in that we need more young people. We need more working families in our community. Last year, at this exact same meeting, I also actually showed you a negative number that ended up not to be true, and it put me in a position to present a preliminary tax rate increase last year. I'm not going to do that this year. I learned my lesson. But I do want to remind you that what the rules of engagement are as it relates to the property tax rate in a situation where we might have a negative NTAV, and it all boils down to SB 2. You all are familiar with the fact that SB 2 limits our ability to increase our revenue from existing values to 3.5%. If we don't maximize that, SB 2 allows us the ability to bank that increment and potentially apply it the following year, right? This year in specific, I think this is going to be very relevant because, let's assume that this stays as is and comes in flat or at a negative number, in order to achieve that 3.5% increase in revenue, which is a little over half a million dollars, we would have to increase the tax rate, quite frankly, very minimally, but increase it nonetheless. And so it's a position we haven't been in in five years. And so this year in specific, I do want to take more time individually with each of you during our one-on-ones or through our budget workshops in general to talk about strategies about how to approach the tax rate situation. A situation or a circumstance that I wish we didn't have to face, right? And if we were a growing community, we probably wouldn't be facing to this extent, so it only exacerbates the need for growth. Any questions on that?
What's a penny worth in dollars now?
Nowadays, it's a little shy of $500,000. $550,000, okay, it's half a million. So, yeah. The value of that penny continues to go up.
Yes, it does.
Yeah. So, for example, currently, the preliminary budget that we're presenting to you today actually does account for that half a million dollars in it, and I'll show you a graph here shortly that depicts that. So if we do have conversations about, you know, not increasing the tax rate by that penny, then we would have to have conversations about cutting something. The pay program that we put together was put together with the intention that we would capture that 3.5%, and the members of the compensation committee may recall that being discussed in that setting. Anyway, I'm already behind schedule, and I just started on slide 11. Good times. Okay. So on the sales tax side, this is a very, very clear example of our conservative budgeting approach and how it differs from other communities. And so you'll notice here at the very bottom, if you pay attention to the actuals for '23, '24, and even our expected actuals for 2025, they're basically $20 million. Now, other communities would look at that and say, we're going to just budget $20 million because we got $20 million last year. Some communities might look at that $20 million and say, you know what? We actually think people are going to spend more, so we're going to actually make that $20 million to $20.5 million, right? We don't do that. So this is a very, very clear example of our conservative budgeting approach that creates cushion for us. And so, for example, in fiscal year '25, we budgeted $19 million in spite of the fact that the year before, we had 20. We did that because we weren't sure if the $20 million was going to be consistent or if it was a glitch in just people's buying power. But you could see that we're projecting hitting $20 million in fiscal year '25 as well. But instead of being risky, right, and instead of being aggressive with this, like another community might have to be because of pressures, we're suggesting solely a $500,000 increase in our budgeting number from $19 million to $19.5. That make sense? Cool. All right. So this slide depicts a little bit of what I was referring to earlier, which is as your property tax revenue goes up, your tax rate goes down, you could see how for us, that dichotomy in that relationship between the two just started happening a few years ago. Some communities reached that point 20 years ago, 30 years ago. And so when we think about, you know, why don't we have more money, or why are we behind compared to other communities, there just hasn't been that consistent growth in our community to create this pattern. And so I hope that it continues because it's a good sign of growth, obviously, when you're able to collect more money and keep a flat tax rate or even decrease it, which is what we've done the last four years. Any questions on that? Water break. Okay. So we'll get into the expense budget. So the expense budget, as I mentioned, is $254 million. It's about a $60 million increase compared to fiscal year '25. The story on the reasons why is very similar to what I mentioned during revenues. It's predominantly coming from the CIP, from CIP transfers, personnel, meaning the pay program, and I'll go through that, the vehicles that I alluded to earlier, right? That's driving that. High-level overview of the CIP. I'll start off by saying that next week at our regular council meeting, we will provide you a more in-depth update on the CIP. We normally do that in May, but this year, we intentionally wanted to wait until after the legislative session was over because there were some bills that potentially could have impacted our approach to the CIP development. Thankfully, that legislation that we were concerned about, or those two pieces of legislation we were concerned about, didn't pass. And so we'll present to you in more detail the CIP next year. But you do need to know a couple of things in order to at least understand the big picture as to why it's a $78 million CIP program for fiscal year '26. And I'll start at the top with residential. I'll back up a second. You may recall that we actually put together a CIP for multiple years, right? It's a three-year CIP. And so in that three-year CIP that we provided to you last year, it showed us needing $12 million in fiscal year '26 to accommodate the projects that we had on that list. Here, we're suggesting that we actually need another $5 million in fiscal year '26 to do the projects that we need to do. The reason behind that is because our original three-year CIP program had, I'm blanking out of the neighborhood, Bonner? Bonner Phase 1 in fiscal year '25 and Bonner Phase 2 in fiscal year '26. The design of Bonner Phase 1 did not come in in time in order for us to bid that out without impacting the school schedule because we were trying to do that work during the summer. So we've had to push that Phase 1 to fiscal year '26. So we didn't actually spend, and we're not actually spending, $10 million in residential streets in fiscal year '25. So we've just moved that money over to fiscal year '26, and that's the delta that you see there. The other one that would stick out that's worth me mentioning is the $28 million for the Community Center, and I have a slide later on that takes a deeper dive into that, which I think you'll like, the story behind that $28 million. And like I said, everything else, we'll take a deep dive into next week. I love this chart because it shows that we're doing a lot, and it's not a bad thing. Obviously driven by facilities, and the Public Safety Headquarters building being in the budget in '24 and Community Center in '26, but we're also doing more with streets. We're doing more with residential streets, with thoroughfares streets. And so this really, this slide really highlights the increase of investment on our part. This slide, we originally started including this slide a few years ago because of the anomaly that happened in fiscal year '22 that created an opportunity for us to transfer quite a bit of money from the general fund to the CIP in '22, which stemmed from us delaying projects when the pandemic hit, and also stemmed from that original CARES Act, I think is what it was called, CARES Act that came through at that time. We were actually going to remove it, I was going to remove it, from this year's presentation, but I thought, no, because this is another clear example as to how our conservative budgeting approach is a good thing. Because since we intentionally, right, budget for a lesser number than we know we're going to get in revenues, it creates that excess capital for us to be able to make this transfer every year. If we didn't do that, right, if we wanted to budget more aggressively every year, then we wouldn't have excess capital to utilize for one-time projects. So you got to pick, right? And like I said, I'm overemphasizing that stuff quite a bit in this year's presentation, so I apologize in advance. The next thing I want to hit on really briefly, or maybe not briefly, but is the pay program. I'm not going to go through this in detail. This is simply just to recap. I very selfishly asked staff to begin this in fiscal year '21, which was the first budget that I was involved with, because I wanted to just make clear the investments in personnel. And it's something that I take a lot of great pride in, quite frankly, because our personnel are our biggest asset, and for me, it's always been a priority to invest in them as much as possible. And so at the bottom of this is a cumulative, I said that wrong, cumulative amount of funds that we've contributed towards pay programs, which you can see that over the last, this five-year window, it's been about $6 million. So very high-level recap of the proposal pay program that I already presented in detail last month, but it, again, very intentionally focused on police, fire, public works, solid waste, and general population. There is no change to this proposed step structure that I showed you last month for police. So that hasn't changed. I'm going to go through this as quickly as I can. One of the things that I thought might be appropriate would be to show you the same six-year time window and how much the net pay, meaning pay that goes into somebody's pocket, has increased in that timeframe. And it's a combination of us increasing pay and lowering premiums for employees. One of the biggest things that I heard when I arrived six years ago was this concern from employees or this observation that, okay, sure, the city gave me a 3% across the board, but they increased my premium, so I really didn't get additional cash in my pocketbook at the end of the day. And so I want to overemphasize intentionally the fact that we have increased pay for our employees while at the same time decrease the cost of the premium for insurance, that of course increases money in the pocketbook. And so over the last six years, from fiscal year '21 to what we're proposing in fiscal year '26, the starting pay for a police officer would have gone up, and that pay in the pocketbook by 43%. Now, this takes into account the family plan. If you aren't on our insurance, that obviously is a greater number because you're not paying that $400 a month, right? So this is a really good story, basically, to show our investment didn't just start today and isn't just starting next year. It's been happening for the last six years. On the fire side, very, very minor adjustments to what I showed you last year. It was mainly, we very minimally decreased the pay increases for engineer, lieutenant, and captain by $1,500. This is very intentional because we wanted to actually increase pay for the EMS folks. The feedback that we received after the initial rollout of these proposed steps to the fire department was that we hadn't done enough to increase pay for the paramedic crew leaders or for our paramedics that work the ambulance, which, quite frankly, are the busier bunch. And so we created some financial capacity by decreasing the increase on the fire side for engineer, lieutenant, and captains by 1,500. Those three positions are still seeing a 20% increase in pay, by the way. So us reducing that by 1,500 did not drastically impact those significant increases in pay that we're proposing. And then we basically were able to take the increase in pay for a paramedic crew leader that was originally proposed to be 3% and make that 10%. And so it was a change that came from feedback from the personnel themselves, as well as Chief Gomes, and we worked with the compensation committee as well to confirm and validate what I'm showing you today. What I didn't show you last month was what it would look like for our Fire Marshal's office. Our Fire Marshal, Chief Bonce, had just begun, and we wanted to give her time to basically just look at the Fire Marshal's office and structure that however she saw fit. And so we now have this to show you for the first time publicly, which is basically what the track would look like for the Fire Marshal's office. We've intentionally eliminated the title of Deputy Fire Marshal. That was a little confused, confusing, as sometimes people think of deputy as, you know, Assistant Chief or Assistant. So not only was that confusing, and it's now more clear with the Fire Prevention Specialist position. Do you want some water? But we also reclassified one of the positions to become an Assistant Fire Marshal, and we have a very experienced individual that's actually becoming our Assistant Fire Marshal and begins next week, and so we're very excited about that. And so Chief Bonce is doing a great job in beefing up the Fire Marshal's office. And I suspect that in short order, you're probably going to be getting some presentations directly from her on all the amazing work that she's doing. We did the same thing for firefighter, so you could see that over the last six years, the net pay increase for firefighter has increased by 38%. For public works, as I mentioned last month, we focused on progression and just creating opportunities for upward mobility within the for upward mobility within the department, something that I know the compensation committee is very interested in us doing for all departments. And I assure you that all the directors in the room want to make sure that that exists in their departments as well. So we'll be working on that moving forward. I wanted to also include this for maintenance worker because I know sometimes we think that police and fire are the ones that have, you know, only been the only ones to get a pay bump. But we've invested in everybody to some extent. The reason why it appears like we're investing more in PD and fire is because there's just more of them, right? And so it just costs more money to fund increases with police and fire because we literally have hundreds of police officers and firefighters. But if we were to just look at the history of this position in isolation, you'll see that the net increase in pay has also increased to a clip of about 37%. Solid waste, you may recall from last month's presentation, this is something that we treat very, very different because our competitive, our competitors are private sector. So we do have to be a little more aggressive with them with these pay increases, and the data shows that. So the data actually shows that, you know, the net take-home pay for our solid waste drivers is up there to the tune of about 42%, which matches the percentage for police officer, if you may recall that, which was at 43%. I know we don't talk about investing in these drivers enough, but just know that there has been investment in these drivers over the years to be competitive with the private sector because they are very, very important to our operation and very, very important to enhancing livability, just as much as that police officer. General population, just very high level because I don't have time to go into the details, but we made adjustments throughout, where we made adjustments to 243 employees just based off of just what the market was suggesting. For the first time, we did include a longevity, or a tenure factor, I should say, which was very well received by employees when we were rolling it out. As you can imagine, when employees have been in the same position for a number of years, making just as much money as somebody who started yesterday, that's kind of a morale killer, right? And so we wanted to make sure that we had a little bit of separation there. And so I'm happy to report we were able to do that. And hopefully, moving forward, if we're successful in growing our tax base or successful in other things, hopefully, we'll have money to be able to create greater separation between tenure. As I mentioned, or let me rephrase. In addition, we also had about 142 employees that the data suggested were already within market. So for these individuals, we focused on $1,000 stipends. So you'll see in department budgets, references to pay program and references to stipends. That's because basically the employees that didn't, weren't recommended for a pay increase are slated to get a $1,000 stipend. And all in all, it's about a $3.8 million pay program. That's why I call it historic because we've never been able to invest in a pay program like this year over year. That 3.8 is a combination of the recurring expense of 3.6, which accounts for all the pay increases, and it includes $181,000 for the one-time stipend that I just described. We do have some new positions that we are recommending and that you're going to hear about through the different department directors and chief presentations. I won't go through them in great detail, but these are consistent with the annual reports that you received earlier in the year. We were very intentional with those directors highlighting some of their challenges and how they believe they can solve some of those challenges. And so I'll just highlight a couple of these to give you an example. You may recall during Roger's presentation, him talking a little bit about some of the challenges that we're having with the management of the fleet and how that can be resolved by simply having somebody doing that on a full-time basis. So we're recommending adding that position. You may recall hearing from the police chief in the data that he shared as part of his annual report, how they're just seeing a huge increase in records requests and other items with the records division from police. And so we felt it was appropriate to add some manpower to that division of the Police Department. And so all of these, right, are very specifically intended to hit on addressing some of the challenges that were presented by the directors, as well as just being more proactive, right, at some of the things that we're doing really good at, that we want to be better at. So as an example, I think we can all agree that Ashley has done a tremendous job in taking our communications department from what it was to what it is, which is an amazing, award-winning communications department. And so we want to make sure we continue that, right? Because as great as she's doing and as great as that department's doing, you'd be surprised. There's a lot that we're not doing that we could be doing even more. And we can't do that without more people. And so that's just one example of one of the positions that is really just continuing to move the needle in a direction that needs to be moved. So basically, the preliminary budget would increase our FTE count from 656 to 662. This is a high-level summary that basically encompasses the recommended pay program that I just went over at a very high level. So you'll see in bold there on the right-hand side, the 3.6. You see the cost of the new positions that I just showed you, some baseline adjustments that we incorporate every year. You see the one-time stipend expense. You're also going to start to see in different departments one-time costs for workers' comp. We are seeing an increase in work comp claims. And so we're at a point where we need to just pump more money towards that fund because we're just addressing more claims. So that, all in all, it's about a $4.6 million investment in personnel-centric things, which, again, very, very historic. This is just the usual slide that we showed depicting where all the money's coming from. No shocker, right, the majority of it is general fund. And that'll make a little more sense when I highlight the general fund year-over-year budget. If you liked the color scheme, Wesley, thank you. Okay, let's talk a little bit about debt service. And so this is slated to go up slightly. The things that I'll, I guess, mention on this slide are just a few. You notice in bold at the very top that variance 0.53. I'm sorry, yeah, 0.53. And that's basically just due to just scheduled debt. And so whenever we issue debt, we obviously have a payment schedule that oftentimes, you know, starts low and then it ramps up, or maybe skips a year at the very beginning, and then we start to repay it. And so that at the very top is literally just to honor our existing commitments. That's not issuing it in your debt. That's just how the schedule of our debt is structured. That has to go up. You'll notice that there is no redemption program in the preliminary budget. That's because our property values are flat, are in the negative. So there is no cushion there to take any of that money to try and pay debt off early, like there has been the last few years. So thus, there's no plan for that in fiscal year 26. You'll notice that there's a reference there to new CO bond debt being issued, right? That goes back to the Bonner examples that I gave you and the fact that, you know, we'd have to issue that debt. Because we didn't do Bonner Phase 1 in fiscal year 25, that 0.47 there that's listed on there actually wasn't issued. So if you think back the last six months, we normally come to you to issue debt, right? Every January or February, we didn't do that this year because we delayed that project. And so that's the reason for that shift over to fiscal year 26 for that debt service. When we issue COs for projects like streets, we normally issue that debt in January or February, and we do actually have that first payment in August, which, of course, is the existing fiscal year, which is why this is in here. And if you're asking yourself, well, where's Community Center? Where is all that debt for the Community Center? We're handling that separate. And so I have a separate slide that highlights that because we want to try and keep that conversation a little bit separate because how we're structuring the repayment for the Community Center is different. And so I'll walk you through that later. Any questions? I know I'm just rolling, expecting you to just keep up like you do this every day, like I do. But I am trying to make it, you know, as easy to understand as possible, and I really do want you all to follow along. So if you do have questions, let me know. This shows how, basically, how it looks over the next 10 years plus, as it relates to our debt commitments. And so you, basically, as this line goes down, right, that's all debt capacity that's freeing up over the years. The reason why we have the chart on the right showing VSTDC is because VSTDC committed $10 million to help pay the debt for Public Safety Headquarters. And so all the way until 2034, there'll be $1 million in VSTDC's budget that we will utilize to help pay that debt for the Public Safety Headquarters building. Okay, I'm going to start going a little quicker because I know you're tired of hearing from me. So really quick, general fund. It's increasing by $5 million, and it's literally because of the pay program and vehicles as well as in here. Actually, no, they're not. It's mainly pay program. These guys. Yes, vehicles, the one-time purchase vehicle. Yes, we bought some, we're buying some, we bought some vehicles outright and then leasing some. Anyway, so that's really the story behind this. One thing that I thought was very interesting, because it comes up a lot, is, of course, about our investment in public safety. And so I was curious, and I asked finance to go back 10 years and see what the public safety budget looked like 10 years ago. And of course, for us, that's police, fire, and municipal court. And in fiscal year 26, it was 27 million, which at the time represented 53% of the general fund. And so you can see how it's obviously increased quite a bit from 27 million to basically 40 million and has gone from 53% of the general fund to 60% of the general fund.
What year was it, 27 million?
2016.
2016, okay.
Yeah, so basically 10 years, right, comparing fiscal years 2016 to 2026.
Got it.
This is not an uncommon trend. It's a common trend in other communities because, again, as those pressures are put on communities to invest more money in public safety, right, it obviously causes there to be less money for other things. And so that's just something to keep an eye on as we progress. This is just another slide that just depicts why or where that $5 million is coming from. And as I described, it's mainly personnel and vehicle-centric items, which all those vehicles were police and fire in the general fund. On the revenue side slide, you'll see an increase in $3 million. You notice in the middle of that slide, it shows a little over $600,000 in property tax revenue. That's because, again, this preliminary budget is taking into account us capturing that 3.5%. And so if we decide to not do that, then we'd have to reduce this preliminary budget by about half a million dollars. You see the slight increase in sales tax. The ambulance billing continues to go up, which is good. And then other, we want to be very transparent that what's driving that other is the increase in revenue that we would receive from the county. Because you may recall that our agreement for fire and EMS with the county has them paying 14% of whatever we have for the fire department. And because we're increasing pay pretty significantly for fire and buying all these vehicles, it's going to increase the financial commitment from the county to us pretty significantly. And this slide, as is customary, we try and show you in as easy format as we can what the expected fund balance at the end of 2026 might look like. This is another slide that clearly depicts our conservative budgeting approach. And so, for example, the right-hand most bar here shows that our 25 minimum reserve would be $16.7 million, and we're estimating to end at about 20. So we're very, very intentionally, right, budgeting conservatively, leaving that $3 million cushion there. That $3 million cushion, again, just to be repetitive, is what allows us to, let's say, once we get to fiscal year '27, right, have money to transfer to the CIP. If this cushion wasn't there, we wouldn't have money to do that. If there's a recession, if something happens, another pandemic, you know, whatever, there's cushion there for us to tap into funds, right, without getting anywhere near our 25% minimum reserve. And so this, again, highlights our conservative approach. Now, if council said we don't want to be this conservative, if council said we want to be more aggressive, regardless of what we might think, right? I mean, that is your prerogative, right? I mean, you are the policymakers of this organization, of this community. One of your biggest responsibilities is, of course, approving the budget. And so if you told us, hey, we don't want to be as conservative because we want to be more aggressive with this or that, that's your prerogative. We need that direction. But just know that the implication of that would be not having that money for the next fiscal year to be able to do things as aggressively. Yes. What we do from this cushion is that we actually also set aside an intentional amount in anticipation of payroll increases the following year. The compensation committee will have a little better sense of this because we took a deeper dive with them. But historically, i.e. prior to this administration, the city struggled to honor commitments and state pay increases for police and fire. And so what we've done in order to basically ensure that that takes place is that we set aside money now, recurring money, and save it and bank it so that it's there next year. So that if we have, let's say, another flat year in fiscal year '27, we actually, through this cushion, have intentionally set aside money to honor those steps next year. So again, that just goes to the conservative proactive thinking that we put into the budget. Okay, I am definitely behind schedule now. On the utility fund, just very, very high level, this is going down by about $2.5 million. A lot of that has to do with simply just not doing as many CIP-centric projects. And you'll hear Greg talk a little bit about that during his presentation. This shows it, but I don't want to steal too much thunder from directors, even though they probably feel I already did. On the revenue side, I'll simply highlight that the SCADA CIP project that would be coming from the City BG MIT, as I mentioned earlier, we continue to just push that project forward because we've yet to receive those funds. So if we don't receive those funds in fiscal year '26, you're going to see this again in fiscal year '27, just how you have, like, for the last three years, it feels like. So call your GLO representative.
There's a limit on your time.
On my time? My presentation time?
To use those funds.
Oh, I thought you were talking about my presentation time.
No, he's right.
Yeah, I was like, all right, peace, I'm out. Yeah, you're right, there is, yes. Even more reason to get it done, right? Same story. And so, again, the big takeaway from this is that intentional cushion that we leave at the right-hand most bar of this. You can see that our minimum reserve is basically $7 million, and we're intentionally leaving a $2 million cushion there on the utility side. Same thing. We do the same thing on the utility side in that we intentionally leave some excess cash there or a cushion that we can use in case anything comes up throughout the year or that we can use next year to apply towards whatever commitments we intend to have in fiscal year '27, in this case. I definitely won't steal Daryl's thunder. But thank you, Daryl, for all that you do and what Environmental Services does for the city. I actually don't say that jokingly because it's easy to take for granted, you know, picking up trash. But thanks to this fund, more specifically, thanks to the post-closure fund, we're able to do what's in the preliminary budget. There at the top, you see a significant investment in internal charges coming from this fund. This fund's paying for three ambulances. You see at the very bottom, a transfer to general fund. That's for the pay program. So this fund is literally helping public safety in '26 by buying three ambulances and helping contribute some cash towards the pay program. So we're blessed to have this operation in-house because it affords us the ability to do some things like this every once in a while. Some communities that outsource this type of operation obviously would not have the ability to do that. No change in revenue. I know Daryl's going to hit on this, but I think it's worth repeating. Our garbage fee has not increased in 30 years. Over that timeframe, we've, of course, have added lines of business, as Daryl would call them, which have come with fees. But if you were to just look at garbage fees in isolation, those haven't increased in 30 years. So that's a conversation that we intend to have with you over the course of the next year or two. We're not proposing any increases now, but I think it's important for you to be reminded of that fact. And in spite of the fact that this fund is able to continue to do what it does, in spite of the fact that this fund is able to, of course, increase pay for its drivers, as I showed, and in spite of it being able to help pay for and in spite of it being able to help pay for ambulances and for pay program, we're still able to have a cushion there in this fund. And so you see how the minimum reserve is six and a half and we're estimating a little over eight million. Any questions on that? Health plan's going to take me a minute. I hope that this stuff, this stuff, sorry. I, I hope that this very complex, sophisticated budget that is presented to you, and it's not stuff. Hopefully, as the years go on, you know, becomes easier to understand and easier to follow, right? And we've been presenting in this format for several years now. And, and, and I hope that for those council members that have been with us that in that timeframe, hopefully this stuff, this complex, sophisticated, fancy budget is hopefully becoming easier to follow and easier to understand. And if it's not, please let me know because we want that to be the case. To that end, I want to actually take a little bit of a step back on the health fund and for purposes of our new council members, but also as a refresher for, for everybody else and, and, and walk you through a little bit of the history. But I'll start off by highlighting that for fiscal year 26, we do, we are putting more money towards claims. Because we're beginning to see claims coming a little higher than anticipated. No surprise, right? We all know that there's, you know, cost of healthcare is, is on the rise. We've heard from our benefits consultant that even tariffs is having an impact in the cost of providing medicine and, or just the fear of all of that. Excuse me, so we're intentionally increasing the claims. But I want to highlight what we've been able to do over the last six years to put us in a position to be able to have a very proactive and intentional and strategic conversation about how to approach this topic. Because that hasn't always been the case historically. Fiscal year 21 is not shown on this slide, but in fiscal year 21, we actually started to, we increased the employer part of the premiums by a million, almost a million dollars a year. And if you were to add all that up with all of these things that we've been able to do from HSA contributions to adding, you know, benefits on the, on the health side, it basically equates about $2 million in recurring and one-time expenses that in that same six-year period, we've been able to put towards employees. I forgot to mention this earlier, but once you add the almost $4 million in the recommended pay program that we have for fiscal year 26 to everything that we did before then on the pay program side, that was 10 million over six years. If you add the 2 million that we've been able to now put towards, towards benefits on the medical side, that's 12 million. So in six years, there's something to be very proud of. In six, in a six-year period, we've been able to put 12 million dollars in recurring and one-time expenses towards our employees in the form of improved pay or enhanced medical benefits. I don't think that gets talked about enough because it's so natural for everybody to just talk about the bad or talk about what we still don't have yet. But we've been able to do a lot and I quite frankly, take a lot of pride in that, which is why I sometimes do take it personal when folks allude to the fact that our employees aren't a priority because the facts say otherwise. But I'm going to take you back in history a little bit. So in this graph, pay attention, that, that's a weird way to word it. Please call your eyes to fiscal year 2019 and 2020. You'll notice how in 2019 and 2020, the employee portion of premiums was going down. It was trending down. But you notice how those bar, bars on the city portion were flat for 2019 and 2020. And that was a trend that had been occurring for years, way more years before 2019. And so if you had employee portion of the premium that was going down and you had the city stay flat and you had claims go up as they do every year, where was that money coming from? Who was paying for those claims for all, during that whole time? Well, the answer was the reserve was, which is why this line shows the reserve getting all the way down to 1.5 million dollars in fiscal year 2019. I don't think I've ever shown this to y'all in this kind of way. But that's why that was happening, right? Claims were coming in very high. The city wasn't increasing the portion on the city side. Premiums for employees were flat or going down. So what took a hit was the reserve. And so you notice a significant increase and a positive correlation between when we started pumping that extra million dollars on the employer side, right, in 2021 and the, oops, and the increase in the reserve. And how that just started to just go up, very, very intentional. And so now that we are in a basically healthier position in the health fund, salute. It's night and day in where we are. And so you heard me say earlier that we're increasing the expense side on claims. So you'll notice how the reserve's taking a little bit of a dip or flattening, right? Over the next, the, over last year and this upcoming year. What does that mean? Well, that means we're going to have to start having conversations about, well, if we, if this trend continues, where claims continue to go up, right? And where's that money going to come from to pay for that? I say this not to convey that we're proposing any changes because we're not. I'm conveying this for two reasons. One, to more clearly show you how we were able to build up that reserve through that additional investment in, in a million dollars beginning in 21, but to also convey to you that we're in a really, really good position to be proactive with staying ahead of this issue. As opposed to potentially being rash, like maybe the city came across rash 10 years ago or so, when the city started having high deductible plans or rash when the city, you know, eliminated other options and the only option was a high deductible option. Many of you lived through that. So you probably recall that, I wasn't here, but from what I hear from employees was that it came across very rash, right, to them, very difficult decisions for you to make, but to them came across very rash, right? And so the position this fund is in now puts us in a good position to not be that way, not repeat that. And so we plan on continuing to work with the compensation committee on long-term strategies on how to address this issue. But again, no changes in fiscal year 26. Everything is staying the same on the health insurance side. Any questions on that? You have a question?
I'll ask. When the compensation committee meets, I have lots of questions, yes.
Let's make sure that meeting is like six months or whatever. Okay. On the hot tax fund, recall that the hot tax fund is a fund that then funds a variety of different things. And so it funds our convention visitors grow. It of course funds the grants that we put out for our community. There's a transfer that goes in for the community center for maintenance and, and issues. Some of it goes towards our commitment to the zoo. And so you can kind of see that, how it's lined up. At the bottom, you'll notice that one of the biggest changes is, or additions, I should say, is a million dollar transfer to the CIP. That's for the community center. That'll make a little more sense when, when I get to the community center slide. But we've been thinking very creatively on how we can lessen the CO burden on that project. Because much of the feedback that we received when we were going out, out in the community, educating them on the project was, ah, you know, we're known, and, and some of you had the same concern. We're not sure if we're, we like that 15 million from our INS rate. It's going towards this project because that's money that could go towards streets, right? So one way to decrease the amount of COs that would be coming from property taxes for this project is just to increase the, the funding from the hotel tax fund in the form of one-time transfers, as well as some additional debt, which I'll show you in a second. But this million is a one-time transfer from the fund to go towards the community center project. What this means is that now there, we were saving up money in this fund to potentially put towards moving the visitor center or buying a building to do that. That no longer is, is giving me the case. And Joel will, will hit on, on, on what the new plan is in his presentation. But that's what that million dollars is, community center. We more intentionally in fiscal year 26 are allocating expenses and revenues for Texas Fest. Last year was kind of a little bit of a cluster, how that kind of played out. Not anybody's fault, it just kind of, uh, just happened that way. Because it had been, you know, a couple, a few years since we had done one. And so now it's more intentionally in the budget. So that's why you see that increase there on the revenue side. And we're actually also being a little more aggressive on the revenue estimate on just the hotel occupancy tax dollars that we get. And so you see how on the slide, it shows an actual in 2024 of about 1.9 million. You see how in 2025, we budgeted 1.8. And you could see how the 2025 estimate's coming in about 1.975. In this particular fund, we are being aggressive with the estimate because of the community center. That's, that's how we lessen the burden of that project on the, on the CO side, on the property tax side, is by taking risks here. What that does though is that it really puts us in a position to really have to talk about everything that you see on this pie chart. Because it's not sustainable long-term. It's not sustainable for us to continue to put as much money as we put towards, let's say, the grant program for our community partners or maybe even for Texas Fest or whatever else. And so this is going to be a conversation that we're going to need to have. And we've kind of alluded to it over the last two fiscal years that the path we've been on with this fund isn't necessarily sustainable. But we're being aggressive with this fund on purpose. And so this is how being aggressive out of this fund looks like. And I'll walk you through this. So we know that we just awarded the design contract, right, for Populous. So that obviously came out of fiscal year 2025. We have, as I, as I showed earlier, 28 million in fiscal year 2026. And then we have another 4.5 in fiscal year 27 because this project will bleed over into fiscal year, excuse me, 27. And so you see at the very top of this, how what the voters approved will yield just a little over nine million dollars, a little bit less than what we thought. But we're trying to be conservative with that. Because remember that we, well, you may not remember, but we legally have to utilize some of that revenue to establish a reserve. And so that put us in a position to only leverage about nine million dollars for that. You see the second part of this showing existing hot receipts. This is the aggressive part. So in addition to that money that that new taxes would generate, we're basically saying that out of the 1.9 million that we're getting right now, that I showed you, oops, that I showed you here, that 400,000 of that go towards a six million, a, a, a six million dollars to apply towards this project. This is, this is the aggressive part. Remember, the county was going to contribute some money. They're not anymore, right? Us, us, us committing this $400,000 out of that 1.9 is what creates that need to long-term revisit how we spend that 1.9 million dollars. Because that $400,000 would obviously be committed towards debt, right? And you got to pay your debt. And so one of the things that we're hopeful happens, and quite frankly, only time will tell, is that currently we do pump about, is it 400 to the community center? 500? So we, we transfer about half a million dollars from that amount towards the community center every year. And they use that for maintenance to help offset the operation. That operation doesn't run in the black. It's subsidized basically by the hot fund. So one of our hopes is that the investment in the facility will actually increase revenues for that facility as well as an opportunities for sponsorship, annual sponsorship revenue. But ultimately, basically trying to get the community center to be a self-sustaining operation, similar to how like we might see an enterprise fund or the golf division of parks, right? And so that half a million that we use to subsidize for that is where we get that $400,000 for the debt for that building. So if that happens, then it really puts us in a better shape to be able to continue funding everything else. But if that doesn't happen, then we're going to have to make some cuts, stop funding some things. And so the pressure's on us, right? To run an operation out there at the community center that, that's self, self-sufficient for the benefit of everything else that's funded out of this fund. Does that make sense? The third part of this at the very bottom highlights the, I guess, the additional COs that we would issue in order to get to the amount that we need. I mentioned earlier that when we were talking to you and talking to the public about how we were funding this project, we were accounting for about 15 million dollars in, in COs coming from the INS rate. You could see how this reduces that pretty significantly by over four million dollars. And so we think this is good news because we're, we've listened to you. We've listened to the feedback from the public that, you know, they didn't want to put as much commitment from the property taxes towards this project. And so we've been able to find a way to do that by being more aggressive with the hot fund. And this is just another slide that depicts the breakdown of that 35 million. You could see at the very, very bottom the reference to the INS rate and how that would be attached to that, that a little over 10 million dollars in debt, which again, is a reduction from what we had originally recommended of 15 and then everything else. As this project continues to unfold, we'll, we'll, we'll provide more, more details to you on it. I'm almost done, I promise. Things that aren't in this budget and that we need to be mindful of moving forward. So we've had some preliminary presentations with you about the idea of establishing a stormwater utility. This preliminary budget does not account for that. And so this preliminary budget has been put together, not assuming anything because it doesn't make sense for us to assume anything until we get some direction from council on that topic. So that's something that is ongoing and that will be ongoing through the summer, as well as fiscal year 26. We've mentioned for a couple of years now, the need to go through a water rate study. And so that is ongoing. Of course, you're familiar with the water feasibility study that, that CDM Smith's conducting for us and that is scheduled to be completed in the winter. One of the things that's an ongoing item right now is a design or preliminary conceptual planning for the City Hall complex remodel. We want to be mindful of the timing of when municipal court and PD moves to the new facility. Because we don't want to, at least for a very long time, just leave these spaces vacated, right? And so we're beginning to program for that. Of course, we have the civil service collective bargaining election in November, which is something that could drastically change our fiscal year 2026 budget from an overhead standpoint. And then long-term could potentially create some opportunity, but also some challenges, right? Just with everything else, there are some pros and cons with any decision that is made. And there are some pros and cons with the idea of us being civil service and having collective bargaining for fire. And so we do plan on, once we get through the budget cycle, having some educational presentations to you on what it means. What a civil service means, what does include, what are the pros and cons? So we intend to begin doing, begin that in September. As I alluded to earlier, we'll continue to meet with the city council compensation, benefits and compensation committee to just kind of explore some long-term strategies on how to, how to just be more, more aggressive if we can with, with, with pay. And of course, as I alluded to earlier, we need to have conversations on the property tax rates stemming from flat values. And that's a conversation that I've already began with some of you in our one-on-ones and then I'll continue with the rest of you through our one-on-ones coming up. And the library roof replacement. We've been talking about this for quite a while. The county continues to be committed to paying for half of that. But that is a scope that has continued to grow and grow and grow. And so we hope to wrap that up so that hopefully it, it is more officially included in the fiscal year 2026 budget by the time that we get to my official proposal at the first meeting in August.
Are we still thinking that's about a million?
As the last I heard, yeah. I mean, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's good.
I mean, yes, sir. And 27 and beyond, so I alluded to earlier, you're going to, every department's going to have a 27 and beyond slide. And so for us, it's continuing to monitor or trying to monitor what's going on with the economy, what's going on with the housing market. I don't know if this flattening of values is a one-time thing. Is it going to be something that happens over the next two or three years? That's something that we're going to have to keep an eye on and be mindful of moving forward. You've heard Daryl and you're continuing to hear Daryl talk about the importance of the landfill contract. That's a big deal. That could bring in some additional royalty revenue to the general fund that could help, potentially help us make up for the loss of growth on the property tax side. I already hit on the compensation committee, that's an ongoing thing. You heard Julie talk about during her most recent CDBG planned presentation, potential cuts coming to that. So if that actually happens, that'll probably put us in a position to have to have conversations about whether we want to create our own version of a CDBG program to continue to support some to continue to support some of our nonprofits that focus on vulnerable populations. I already alluded to some of the potential trends with the health fund that we'll have to have proactive conversations about. I already alluded to the need for a solid waste rate study, because those haven't been increased in 30 years. And then, of course, it's always a priority for us to be mindful of our CAP moving forward, which I know streets is a big part of that. And as I said, we'll take a deep dive into that next week at our regular council meeting. Rather than coming back and presenting anything to you at the end of the day, I want to just go ahead and now get out of the way, the, the schedule and the calendar, if that's right with you. So I don't have to come back up at 4:00 PM. I'm going to leave right after this, actually. I'm just kidding. But moving forward, this is what you can expect. And so over the course of the next month, July, I plan on working with you individually through our one-on-ones, right? Having conversations on property tax rates, having conversations about strategies, depending on where, where you, where you are on that topic. So that hopefully by the time I officially present to you the budget on August 5th, it's as finalized as possible. And then, of course, we have to legally follow the subsequent work sessions, public hearings, you know, et cetera. And then ultimately, we have final adoption of the budget on September 9th. And of course, it goes into effect October 1st. And that finally concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
All right, well, let's jump into our department reports.
We're going to mix up the order of departments today a little bit. And so you're going to hear from some of our larger departments first. And that falls in line with our wanting us to, wanting there to be dialogue questions, you know, et cetera. And so some of the administrative smaller departments are, are scheduled to go at the end of the day. So we do need to cut some, because we're coming across, or up to that 4:00 PM. We can cut the smaller departments and we can hit on those in a different setting or, or at an upcoming regular council meeting. And so first up, we're going to have Chief Young go over the police department budget. Thank you.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Chuck Young, as you know, I'm here to talk about the Victoria Police Department and present to you the 2026 budget. The police department is 167 personnel comprised of 36 professional staff members and 131 licensed personnel. We've organized the department into two different bureaus, the Administrative Bureau and the Operations Bureau. The Administrative Bureau is commanded by Deputy Chief Alene Moya. And she has, under her, she has Kevin, Captain Kevin Sanderson as the captain of the Support Services Division. The Admin Bureau is responsible for Public Relations, Policy Review, Accreditation, Planning and Research, and Budget Oversight. And Captain Sanderson's portion is also the Support Services Division, which is Recruitment, Community Engagement, Training, the Quartermaster, Records, Case Prep, the Public Information Team, and of course Dispatch under Lieutenant Buentelo. The other side of the House is the Operations Bureau. That's Deputy Chief Clay Fetters. He's responsible for the entire bureau, which is, Captain Jason Turner is over the Patrol Division. You have Patrol, Traffic Safety, the Special Crimes Unit, which is the Narcotics Vice-Folks, the Mental Health Unit, the K-9 Squad, the Marshal Task Force, and the Highway Interdiction Team. Under that, parallel to that is Lieutenant Mark Hayden, that's the Investigations. You have the Capers Team, the Property Team, the Digital Forensics Unit. As you can see, there are Auto Theft, Crime Scene, Crime Analyst, Victims Crime Liaison, and Crime Stoppers. That's a overview of the organizational chart that mainly just explains everything that I just told you, the breakdown of everybody. You notice on the, on the right-hand side, under the, the two gray boxes, those are the increases that we're looking at. One is the Records Technician increase that. And the Real-Time Crime Analyst will be from a grant. As was mentioned earlier, we're, we're about, since 2018, we're 239% increase in the requests, open record request. And then in the last three years, it's 54%. The Licensed Employees, basically in '26, we're asking for the Records Technician person. And then we're going to add a Regional Real-Time Crime Center Analyst Position, which will be a grant-funded. As you can see on there, we have the, the grant-funded, we have several members of our, the licensed staff, as well as the, the professional staff that we're trying to increase from, basically the grant-funded is eight. And we're trying to bring the professional staff to 37 for a total of 169. The department's mission, of course, is to reduce crime and the fear of crime through outstanding police services in partnership with the community. The department works tirelessly to make our community safer and stronger. And we're always trying to move forward with the efforts that we are presenting to the public and to the, to the community. The goals and objectives haven't really changed. They're under the Growth Capacity and Infrastructure Section of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. One of the goals is to respond to calls in six minutes or less. And these are the priority one calls, the shootings, stabbings, major accidents, et cetera. To reduce crime, to include traffic, traffic-related accidents by 3%. Enhance the operation capabilities through technological advancements, which is including the Regional Real-Time Crime Center. We've talked about that a lot. The Automated Fingerprint Identification System, we talked about that a lot, about the technology. Another focus is to recruit, hire, and train personnel to fill the existing vacancies. The, and while achieving six or below, that's, we haven't quite met that one. We're a little bit higher than, higher than the six. And then obviously, to maintain community engagement events focusing on the community outreach and education and crime-related issues. You know, we're, we're just trying to be as forward-thinking that we can be. We're trying to build bridges and we're trying to do the, the problem solving. And the problem solving is that maintain an overall investigative case clearance of at least 40% or higher. The 2025 good stuff, Lunch and Learn, once a month, we do one of those. Blue in the School or Bits, it's where, again, we've talked about this before. It's where we teach the, the core values to the fifth, sixth graders in the, in the schools. Casting with Cops, we just had, very successful. The Donut Dash, Civilian Police Academy, National Night Out, Kickoff Party, National Night Out, Blue Santa, the Toy, the Target Toy Drive Program, and the Female Leadership Conference. One of the big things that we've done this year is with the P2C, which is a software system that allows the community to be able to call in or basically do the police reports online via the computer. It's something new that we've, we've just started this year. And it's, 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 the usage has been increasing monthly. Dispatch and Police overtime compared to the average vacancies, you see the, the charts from, we start out at 2020 and it continues on. The forecast for 2025 is the bar chart on the far right. And you can see where our overtime expenditures are right at about 1.4 million. And that's the, the green line represents the sum of overtime for that time period. We currently have 27 vacancies. So are there any questions on that slide at all? Okay. The Performance Measures, those are the detectives' cases assigned. And what we did is we did January 30, January 1st to May 31st. And we found that each of the detectives, or several of the detectives, are pulling about an average of almost 100 additional cases than they did last year. And I can attribute that to the staffing issues. The Performance Metrics, this is a slide that has quite a bit of data, but you've seen this before. The one in the lower right is the number of car burglaries, which have increased year-to-date by about 56 crimes, which is fantastic. The number of weapons that are taken inside, from inside the gun, from inside the vehicles, as you could see in the 2024, was 27, which is one of my pet peeves, you know, about leaving. And we've talked about this a lot. But we're right at about 11% of the, the car burglaries, the vehicle burglaries, the BMVs are having weapons that are being discovered and stolen. Part 1 Crimes, you can see is in the top right. That's the Total Property Crimes is in the red. And the Total Violent Crimes is in the blues. You can see those numbers are decreasing. And then lastly, the Performance Metrics are the Class 1 or the Part 1 Crimes from 2019 to 2024. That's the chart on the left, that is also in the decreased mode. The next slide is the Performance Measures, the Adult Arrests and Juvenile, it's the one on the top. As you can see, the numbers are going down. We're more reactive today because of staffing than we are proactive. We're not actually doing the DWI stops, et cetera, for the on-view arrests, because there's just not enough of the rank and file, the troops to go out and look for those. We're more reactive to the calls versus being proactive. And we've been throwing a little bit of additional manpower, et cetera. We're, we're having the investigators working a week, two times of the year to supplement the patrol staffing. As you see in the lower left, Response Time to Calls, that has increased. Where, remember, our goal was six minutes or less, we're at 5 minutes and 55 seconds. So we're right, right on that, that matrix. And if you look at the last on the right, it's the Officer Response to Traffic Crashes Within the City. That has gone down. I think that we are, we're, not that the crashes are going down, it's just that those are respond, we are responding to less and less of those. One would ask, does P2C have anything to do with that? And the answer to that would be no, because there is no option for the P2C involving any kind of traffic-reported collisions. Again, fewer officers on the left is causing the priority and the response times to go up just a little bit. Department efficiencies, we're focusing on employee retention, and this saves money. Associate with the training and expenses of educating a new cadet. Either a cadet or a telecommunications person. It just costs quite a bit of funding to be able to fund, to fund an officer or a civilian dispatcher in that role. The Patrol Replacement Vehicle Fleet Acquisition, it's better for the resale. We're putting less miles on the, the singular cars and we're getting more cars, which is wonderful, thank you. New Public Safety Headquarters Building, all of the staffing will be under one roof instead of being spread out in the city. And then exploring all forms of grant possibilities. Sidebar on that, we've just been able to put, we have a total of 23 AEDs in each one of the patrol cars, which is an important thing, the automatic external defibrillators. And we have one of those, and we've got those through grant programs. One of the, another departmental efficiency is, and this is a good one. This, this is, this goes to the, the, the work of the previous administrations. It goes to the, the rank and file. But since 2009, the department has been recognized by the Texas Police Chiefs Association as being a, an outstanding agency. They've been recognized, which the barometer is to review 173 of the different best practices. And, which includes the Use of Force, Protection of Citizen Rights, Vehicle Pursuits, and Property and Evidence Management. We've been, we just had a review done like a couple of weeks ago. And the 173, they found a couple minor, minor issues. So I, going out on a limb, saying that I hope that we will be further recognized in 2025, but that's quite a departmental accomplishment. So that's, that's the rank and file, that's the administrators, that's the, the, just the department in a whole by doing such a wonderful job. Of 2,800, we are one of 218 in the state of Texas. So new programs 2026, increase the morale by moving to the new building. Establishing the Regional Real-Time Crime Center and, again, the Automated Fingerprint Identification System. And what that system does, in case you need an update on that, we take a, we take a fingerprint out at the crime scene and we're able to get, instead of having to put it in and send it to Corpus Christi, et cetera, and there being a lag time, we're able to do it in-house. And we're able to determine who that offender is and take appropriate action faster than getting it through a lab somewhere else. Improved Salary Structure, again, is a wonderful, wonderful, the certification pay for the telecommunication operators, which is great, because we have the different category, we have the, the Master, Advanced, Intermediate Certificates. The Improvement in the Cars, Leadership Development. Again, the new Analyst Position, which hopefully is grant-funded. We'll know that probably, I would say, in probably two more months, whether or not that's, that grant position is going to be funded. And then, of course, the new Records Technician. Budget Overview, we're up 1.7 million compared to the last year. And then the, in the Personnel Issue on the Budget Highlights, the Pay Program, additional professional staff positions, which we've already talked about. The Software Maintenance Increase. I call it the Mr. Foot Fee. That's a little bit of IT and increase there. The Capital is a decrease due to the computers, the machinery and SWAT equipment cost reductions. And then the One-Time Expenses, the cars. You know, as you see on there, the, the cars and the radios and the Stipend Pay Program, all is about $900,000. And then lastly, the, almost lastly, the 27 and beyond, continue to focus on retention and recruitment. We're still going to have that as an issue in '27, we're still going to work on that. The Ability to Staff and Fund for the Police Explorer Program. It's something that we weren't able to do this year, it was on our want-to-do list, but we weren't able to do. But hopefully in '27, we'll be able to do that, because of, it goes, it goes back to the staffing issues. We just don't have enough folks to be able to, to educate and, and become involved in that Police Explorer Program. And then the Implementa, Implementation of a New RMS System, Records Management System, the Computer-Aided Dispatch for Police and Fire Departments. Increase the Staffing for the Regional Real-Time Crime Center, I wanted to go from the one to a two. I want to broaden that out a little bit. I just really feel that we're going to be the, the regional tip of the spear for that, for that information sharing program. And that's it. That's us. There's the before and after picture, I mean.
Yeah, because we needed it.
But, you know, and I figured if you zoom in really good, you can actually see our names are on the appropriate name tags. So, yeah. It's pretty good. Does anybody have any questions? I don't know how much time I did, anybody running a timer on that?
You, you passed.
You did great, Chief.
Okay. Sorry, I went through, I'm sorry I went through everything relatively quick, but a lot of this you, you've heard before. It's the re, the re-regurgitation of pretty much the same thing, I'm telling you, the same, the same stuff.
I appreciate you, you taking less time, because I took more time.
Is there any questions? Chief, I know this is going to be a big year for PD, so we're excited about it.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
So we're going to keep the Public Safety theme going, and Chief Gamas will come up and present the Fire Department's budget.
Good morning, Chief Gamas.
Good morning, everyone. Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present our budget for 2026. So we are an all-hazards department. Basically, what that means, besides the obvious, fire suppression, medical care, we also provide services for hazmat mitigation. We have the, we have the ability for water rescue, technical rescue. We have our own Fire Marshal's Office that does fire inspections, fire permits, and then also educates the community on fire prevention. And basically, we, we, we will attack anything you throw in front of us. As you can see, the picture there, the plane crash that we had back in December, to yesterday, the high-rise fire that we had up at the top of the plaza. So very proud of this, the men and women of this department, what they do, day in, day out. So here's our organization chart, basically divided into four divisions. You have Chief Mark, Assistant Chief Mark Martin over the EMS operations, we're moving from left to right. And then you have Assistant Chief Dustin Ferguson over our fire operations. And then you have Assistant Chief Michael Belt over our administration. And then you have a recently hired Fire Marshal, Annette Ponce, over the Fire Marshal's Office. I'd like to direct your attention to the very bottom of the Fire Operations, and you'll see a box there that says Safer Grant and for three people. And I'll go into a little bit more detail in another slide. So again, this is the makeup of the department, we kind of just broke it out. So you kind of see the personnel and where they're at. We really haven't grown over the years, we're still at 130. We really haven't grown over the years, we're still at 130, but we have shifted some personnel, and you can see in FY '24, we shifted a couple of more people towards the EMS side, and that was to provide oversight and supervision with EMS supervisors for our ambulances. So our department mission is to preserve life property and, with a dedicated and caring service. This mission is critical to us, this is what is, drives our decision-making, it drives our training, and it drives our responses. We understand that when someone calls 911 and they need help, we understand that that person is probably having the worst day of their life. And there's three things that we know that they expect from us, and that's for us to get to them fast, but safely. When we get there, we know what the issue is, there's some familiarity, we've seen it before, whatever it is, whether it's medical, fire suppression, whatever, that we can handle that situation. And then the third thing is to get them on the road to recovery, whether it's mitigating, suppressing a fire, or transporting to the hospital. So the goals and objectives for us, it's always looking at our response times, how can we make sure that they stay consistent, make sure that they stay low? And what we do is we look at what's called the UHUs, the unit hour utilizations, and what we look at is we look at how busy our apparatuses are, because there's a threshold there, it's 30%. If they're, we don't, we want to make sure we're addressing the need, but then we also want to look beyond that, that, for the availability as well. So our threshold is 30% when we're looking at our apparatuses and how busy they are. We want to make sure that they're at least available 70% of the time for the next emergency. So another goal for us is to reduce overtime, and that's where the Safer Grant comes in. And the Safer Grant, we applied for this year, again, this is another creative way to increase staffing without putting it on the backs of the taxpayers. And what the Safer Grant will do is, basically, it stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Responses. So we want to make sure we have the, the right amount of people responding to the right emergency. And what that does is it helps and assists in funding for the cost of personnel. So it's a three-year program that the people that we're asking for, if we get approved, what they do is they cover 75% of the cost of that personnel for the first two years, and then it lowers to 35%. And then by year four, then it's, it's on us. But again, it's, it's another creative way to try to create some funding without putting on the taxpayers back on that. Strategic planning, we're constantly monitoring our apparatuses, making sure we're meeting the demand, looking at our data. I think if anything, you talk about baseball, everything's counted, in baseball, we count everything, response times, travel times, time we get off on scene to the time we're on the chest, how many compressions we're doing a minute, things like that. And so we're constantly evaluating and looking at things like that, making sure everything is in the proper place to meet the demands of the city. And then also trying to predict what's hap, what's coming to be ahead of that. The smoke detector initiative, we actually kicked off this year, February of '25. I had said we're going to touch 90% of the homes in the city within the next three years. I was told in a meeting by Daryl, where's Daryl, Joe's not here, that we have 20,000 homes in the city of Victoria. So yes, it's a little ambitious, but at, at the end of the day, the goal is that we're going to be out and about in the public, the community is going to see us, we are going to touch every home that we can, even if we don't make that, it's going to continue to happen. As long as I'm here, this is what we're going to be doing. I think it's great at building relationships with the community, they get to see our faces, there's a trust and confidence level that increases when, when we get to interact with the community, and that's what we want. So increase in fire inspections, like I had mentioned, we hired a new fire marshal. We had a turnover, we, the whole office basically either retired or seeked other career opportunities. I think the last standing member was the Admin Assistant Connie Delgado, and so we hired Anette, Anette Ponce, so she has put together a great team, like Mr. Garza has said, so we're anticipating some really great things out of that, that division, and we're looking to see increase in fire inspections, which also increase to a safer city. And then again, we continue with the hands-only CPR, pulse point, continue just growing that, getting the word out, information, increasing that to where, you know, I had said that I want to be like Seattle King County, where everyone, it's the safest city in the world if you were to have a heart attack, because everyone knows how to do CPR. And that's where, that's one of our goals, is to be able to compete, and we could be the Seattle King County of the South. So for the highlights, this year, we did have turnover in, in members, we were definitely short in hazmat technicians. Through a partnership with Teaks and Tedom, we were able to train up to 16 of our members. So I think we're healthy now with the hazmat program. We, again, the smoke detector initiative, we've touched over 200 homes, and we've actually raised over $20,000 in purchasing smoke detectors for this program. The civilian responder program, again, it's been a success, we had our largest class ever. The citizens really enjoy, and they kind of understand maybe, we, we, a little glimpse of the method of our madness, when we show up on scene, sometimes people just see that we're just breaking stuff, or stuff like that, but there is a rhyme and reason why we do things. And I think that the opportunity is to show them that, and it's, it's a great relationship, a partnership that we have with, with this program. The fire prevention show, again, a great show in October, it's giving back to the kids, all of our members, everyone that participates, again, and I've mentioned before, are members of the fire department, and both in developing the, the scenes, acting, as well as even the band that plays in the intermission, it's all members of the fire department. We definitely wanted to get ahead of this, because we want to increase attendance, reached out with the ISD, and we are actually in the planning stages for this next program. So we're looking forward to some really great things and a larger attendance. Teaching the kids on fire safety, what that translates into is retention of the fire safety, and actually taking it home and sharing it with their families and stuff. Again, the whole goal is trying to create a safer, a safer city. The annual awards banquet we had this year, it's a first since COVID. It is a cherished tradition where we honor and recognize our members for their performance over the year, but more importantly, I think it's an opportunity to strengthen the bonds within our fire family. And this year, we actually had a silent auction, where we actually raised $1,200, again, to go to our smoke detector program. So like I said, you know, baseball, we count everything, we count everything. This is just a glimpse of what we look at, average response times, we want to make sure that we are consistent, and we do monthly reports, this is an annual report, but we all, we're always looking at that, making sure we're consistent, if there's anything that's out of, that's out of the ordinary, we, we address it, we identify what the issue is and address it. And as you can see, over the years, if you look at the first bar for the city, that's our turnout time. Our turnout time is when the speakers open at the station, and the clock starts, and the time, the wheels are rolling, and we're out of the station. So you can see, we're pretty consistent right there at that one-minute mark. And the same as the travel time, the five minutes, it's pretty consistent, so that's what we look at, we want to make sure that, that we have consistency. So the next two slides have a lot of data, and basically, the first slide is the city, and here's the second slide is the county. And again, it's looking at the calls for service, and over the last several years, from, from '22 to '25, and what is estimated. I think in the last, in the annual report that I gave you all, the incre, the demand for us is increasing. And normally, I had mentioned, it's usually about 4% increase, but this last year was what we thought was an anomaly, that it was 8%, and we actually broke 14,000 runs this past year. I think in '22, we were over between 10,000, 11,000 runs to actually coming at, if we stay on pace for '25, we will break 15,000. And that would be another 8% increase. So for department efficiencies, again, turnout times, turnout times are very important to us, because that's really, when you think about it, that's the one thing we can control. We preach to our members all the time that it's not speeding down the streets and the avenues to get to the emergency. We want to get there fast, but we want to be there, get there safely. If we have any control in lowering our times, it's the turnout time, and that's what we have control over, is getting out of the station faster. So we make sure we constantly remind our, our members about that. Another thing was to lower the overtime, and so we kind of, we were thinking outside the box, you know, it's, it's a challenge to find the firefighter EMT, that person that comes with the firefighter certification, with the EMT certification, and we had vacancies throughout the year. And so what we noticed is that our local college here was graduating four to five classes of EMTs. Well, we have a legitimate, a legitimate fire academy that we have every year, so we thought, why not do a targeted approach and find those EMTs that want to be firefighters, hire them to fill the vacancy, which then lowers the, the demand or the overtime, let them get acclimated to working with us, and then use our academy to train them up to be firefighters. So that's the approach that we are looking at. I think what will happen is that we're finding kids that are from the neighborhood, from locally, and that will stay here and not move on to other departments or anything like that, that we've seen in the past. We also expanded, to lower the overtime, expanded our part-time paramedic program. The part-time paramedic program was basically members that once worked for us, that have moved on, whether to another department, or have seeked alternative career opportunities, but really loved what they did here in serving the citizens for Victoria. And at a part-time, of course, it's actually cheaper to use them, because they're, they're, they don't qualify for any of the benefits, they only can work so many hours, so actually they're working at a, a lower cost, but they're also filling the need of the vacancies. So with that, what we did is we actually expanded the program to include EMTs. So we are familiar with the difference between the medic and the EMT are. The EMT does basic care, a lot of the bandaging, can apply oxygen, things like that, where a paramedic can actually do, is a little more aggressive, a little more invasive, where they can actually do things for, they can shock the patient, they can actually stick a needle in your chest if you have a compromised collapsed lung, something like that. So they're a little bit more invasive, invasive, but anyway, we expanded it to include the EMT, so we have a bigger pool, so whenever there, we're short-staffed, we can actually call upon them to fill that vacancy at a lower cost than, than hiring someone back at a higher cost. We also transitioned from e-Dispatch to Active Alert. e-Dispatch was a software that was only available to the command staff, so whenever the higher level emergencies came through, we were all alerted, and it, you know, of course, created a higher level of situational awareness of what's going on in the city. Transitioning to Active Alert, the cost was a little cheaper, but what that allowed us to do is actually extend that awareness to all of our members on the department, so they have an app on their phone. So even when they're off that day, and something comes in, for example, the high-rise fire, it at least alerts those that are off, that maybe I need to stick around, I may be needed. It, it, it changes the mindset that maybe, like I said, I get, I may need to be available because I may be needed for service, and again, that lowers the, the response times or the turnouts for them to, to respond back to the city and also help us. So it's a, it's a great app, and again, it's, every member of our department has it on their phone. So for new programs, again, we talked about where we did a targeted approach with the EMTs, and we will train them. So the idea is to do a hybrid fire academy, basically, it's an online training, get them up to speed, and then get to, get them to a point where then it comes to the physical part, where they have to, we have to teach them the skills, you know, how to set the ladder, how to manage a hose, how to ventilate a structure. And so this program, usually, it's probably about a three-month program, but again, it's, it's something that we will be doing this coming year, something different, and if it is successful, we are looking at extending it out to the general public as well. The paramedic program, this is an initiative that I want, what I want is I want every, I want a medic on every apparatus in our department. We only have five ambulances, so I want to make use of the other apparatuses to have a paramedic. If we don't have an ambulance available to respond, at least we have a medic on an engine or a truck that's nearby that can respond, that has the tools and the equipment that can start the treatment as the ambulance is coming to the scene. And we could at least, again, we want to get to them fast, we want to intervene, mitigate the incident, and get them on the road to recovery. So with that, we will, will be approaching certain programs, certain colleges, to see if they will tailor a specific paramedic program for our members. A paramedic, to become a paramedic, it can be anywhere from a year to 18 months, and it's, it's a lot of information. And what we are looking for is someone to come in, and that could actually do the same, maybe online, again, lowering our cost, but maybe tailor it to more at about six months, four months to six months. But at the end of the day, the goal is to put a paramedic on every apparatus, and so we're delivering a higher level of care for the, the citizens of Victoria. Officer development program, we are in the middle of promotions right now, we do have some young officers, and moving forward, we want to make sure we're investing in these officers. And so we want to make sure we have funds available to send them to workshops, other conferences, anything that we can think of that can help in their development of leadership. And it's also part of our succession building, succession planning, because these are going to be the, our future leaders for the department. The three-year strategic program is basically a deeper dive into all of our data, we're looking at our stations, we're looking at our apparatuses, our equipment, our staffing, and basically formulating a roadmap for our members and for you all, and basically saying, here's where we are, and then here's where we want to go, or here's where we want to be. And, you know, providing direction like that is, it just, it creates, I would want to say like a sense of purpose, we're not just here doing just this, we, we understand we're progressing and we're moving forward. And then, of course, city council, I call it city council fun day, field day. I would love for you all to spend time, maybe a half a day with us, where we can demonstrate the equipment and the tools that you all decided on, that you all approved funding for, and to show you how things work, how we operate, but also what everything that you guys have done, how it translates for us in being able to serve the citizens, and be able to provide a enhanced level of care. But I think it would be a great opportunity for all of us to be a part of that. So I will be contacting you and trying to see when is a good day to come out, try on our gear, you know, ride on the apparatus, see what it's like.
We won't record it.
So for the budget '26, we are, it's increasing just shy of 3 million. And you can look at, well, the increases, the pay program, and then you look at the, the recurring increase on the equipment. The internal service charge and stuff, that's big, because that's, we, if you recall, we had Sidens Martin here, they are the builders of our apparatuses. And whenever we had an issue or a problem that maybe was beyond the scope of the general maintenance here, and needed some specialized attention, we would have to send a Corpus or Colleen, and it increased the out-of-service time. With Sidens Martin here, it's been a great, they've been a great asset for us. Now, we knew that they were going to go through every apparatus with a fine-tooth comb and find every problem that we had, and we knew it was going to be a little bit costly, but we are actually now starting to see the benefits of it, because they actually have the parts here in Victoria, our turnout or our turn-down time, or turnaround time is lower than it used to be, because we're able now, because they've been able to address every single thing on the apparatus, if there's something goes wrong, we have parts here, we bring it in, and then it goes back out for, back in service. And actually, last week was the first that we were able to have two engines and two ambulances standing by in reserve, ready to go. And so again, we're, we're And so again, we're beginning to see the benefits of having Sidens Martin here, here in Victoria. So for the revenues, it's two sources. It's come from Emergicon, which is our ambulance building, and then it's the contract with the county and the, there's an anticipated increase in revenue in 2026. So 27 beyond, again, the demand is growing. EMS continues to be the major, major, major part of what we do. And so we want to increase our EMS staffing, the same for the Fire Marshal's Office, you know, having a couple more fire prevention specialists out, inspecting businesses and things like that. Again, just translate to a safer city. The community risk reduction program that we have, you know, with the smoke detector initiative, the hands-only CPR and the pulse point that we introduced this past year, we were looking at other programs as well to add to our program. And then station resilience, this is something big and it's looking at our fire stations. Normally, the lifespan of a fire station is about 30 to 50 years. And the reason for that is just because of the, again, the demand on the city. If, you know, accommodating for more members, staffing personnel to be housed there or even resources to be housed there. And then, of course, you're looking at safety and technology advancements and things like that. So I think the biggest thing here is looking at our two oldest stations, which is Station Three and Station Five, and having to decide if we need to rebuild, relocate and rebuild or do we remodel like we did Station One. We know that Station Three and Five are not hurricane hardened like we did with Station One. And so those are issues when, if and when preparing for a hurricane, for example, last year, we had, we could not leave our crews at those stations because, again, they were not built to withstand a hurricane. So we actually had to board up the stations, you know, leave signs on the door that they were not here, that they were at another station that could accommodate them and was built to withstand a hurricane. So again, this is something pretty significant that we have to be looking at and decide what is it that we want to do. And with that, I'm not going to let Chief Young outdo me. I do want to just really just thank the compensation committee for their efforts. I'd like to thank Chief Michael Belt, Finance, Mr. Reyna, Mr. Janasek, and then, of course, our city manager, Mr. Garza, and you all as well for our apparatuses and Daryl. Dang, Daryl, there you are. Thank you, Daryl. Thank you, Daryl, for the three ambulances again. So I really believe where we're at, where we are at now has laid a very, very solid platform for us, a foundation for us that's going to enable us to recruit, for recruitment and retention and also for the increase of safety of our members. So thank you all. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Chief. There any questions?
Chief, on the budget expenditures in the personnel column, was the increase assuming the grant program from the Safer Grant? Did it include those three and assuming the grant?
So right now, we're in the process of the grant. So we've applied for it, we're just waiting to hear back.
I just didn't know if those numbers.
Yeah, technically no.
No.
Technically no. Yeah. It would be very minor though, because of what he described, we don't want to be responsible for a percentage, right?
For the first couple of years.
More than likely by the time this gets to official proposed budget at the first meeting in August, it would be in there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Chief, thanks. And hey, please pass along, congrats to your team. Great job on the One O'Connor Plaza response yesterday.
Oh, they were amazing. I tell them that every time afterwards when they were, when they dressed down and they were just worn out and tired, I went and shook everyone's hand, told them how amazing they were. And then you see, even like within the troops, you've got Madison, you know, she's there, you know, with the hoses on her SCBA, going up the stairs. And then you have little Natalie, I don't know if you met or remember, then you have little Natalie, she's doing the same. It was a great effort across the board with all of them.
Well, please pass along our thanks and congrats to all.
Are you Little George or Big George?
I'm Big George, I guess you can tell, right?
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, I think we hit the point where we could take a quick break.
Absolutely, yes.
We're scheduled to be from 10:45 to 11:00. We're a little bit behind. Why don't we shorten the break to 10 minutes and let's try to be back at 11:05 to try to get a little bit back on schedule?
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a break for 10. All right, we are back in session and we will jump back into our department reports. And it's municipal court, Mastoto, welcome.
Yes, thank you so much. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm excited today to present the 2026 budget for the municipal court. The municipal court department handles Class C fine-only violations from a variety of different departments and throughout the city as well as the county. We get tickets from the Victoria Police Department, code enforcement, Victoria County Animal Services, and then we also do case, get case filings from the Fire Marshal's Office. Our department handles a variety of different functions, including customer service, providing information to those who receive violations, on how they can handle those matters, judicial hearings through our court proceedings overseen by Judge Heindl, and then administrative functions, including records management and state reporting. This is our proposed fiscal year 26 personnel organizational chart, which does include the addition this year of an associate judge, which is a part-time role that is appointed by city council. We also have five full-time employees. There is not a change in the full-time number count for fiscal year 26, which you can see depicted here. We have remained steady over the past several years with this year adding in an associate judge to assist Judge Heindl with management of court dockets. The department's mission is to strive to provide increased access to fair court proceedings and accurate information that follows all laws and ensures the rights of all are protected. This is just from one of our celebrations where we had Java with the judge out here in the courtyard. We'll be excited to have some of those over at the new facility later on next year. Our goals and objectives for the municipal court department are to provide strategic and operational direction to ensure access to justice and timeliness in case processing. We also like to leverage innovative solutions to enhance our services and improve our efficiencies and deter criminal behavior and reduce recidivism from those charged with violations to enhance public safety and quality of life for those residents and visitors in the community. Our fiscal year 25 highlights include our ongoing outreach initiatives through our open docket platform and our court in the community where we go to various locations each month to provide court to those needing services in their locations that they travel to, such as we had one at the Victoria County Public Health Department coming up next month. We've had them at Christ Kitchen, we've had them at MidCoast Family Services, and we're looking forward to continuing that initiative. We also like to do community outreach through a variety of educational programs, primarily focusing our initiatives on our child safety program, which does award grants to nonprofit organizations that focus on child safety initiatives and through our commitment in child passenger safety as car crashes are one of the leading causes of injury in children. And so our goal is to help educate parents and caregivers on that. Judge Heindl also does an excellent job in helping to educate in the community and also host things such as mock trials to educate the youth on the processes. And so with those efforts that we have done, we were awarded with our fifth consecutive traffic safety award this past year. We also have our public safety and quality of life initiatives with our partnerships with Billy T. Catan Recovery Court to Recovery Program and a new partnership or continuing partnership with MidCoast Family Services through the Youth Diversion Plan, which went into effect earlier this year. These are a couple of our performance metrics here. So on the left there, you'll see an overview of our court sessions. That first column there shows number of cases being cleared through court dockets. The middle row there has number of people that come to those dockets. So on average, most of our people have anywhere from three to four violations they might have when they're coming to a court session. And then our dockets have remained a little bit steady throughout the years with over 130 to 120 dockets per year and that we do see that continuing to be consistent. On the right there, you'll see our child passenger safety data. Fiscal year 24 is a little bit higher than some of our others and that's because we had a partnership with AgriLife last year where we, the past fiscal year, where we issued out almost 20 booster seats to children that they had provided. And so I would love to continue to do booster seat initiatives, but I don't know if I'll hit that number each year. So that is why that one is a little bit higher than where we're at year-to-date and projected for next year. But that was a great partnership and we do enjoy educating the public on the importance of car seat safety. Then here we have an overview over incoming and outgoing cases. So incoming cases is a combination of new case filings and cases that may be reactivated that were once, such as a warrant, for example, it becomes what they consider inactive in the system, where it's not continuing to progress or move forward in the system, but they're coming back to court because of an outreach docket. And so we see those become reactivated. And so here in fiscal year 25, we want to be able to dispose as many cases as we're receiving. And so we're starting to see that number level out a bit as we are making more intentional efforts to go out into the community and provide additional services to court. Some of our efficiencies here, one, we've migrated our live chat to an email response system to reduce staff time responding live to questions. So we do receive those questions, but we're getting fewer of them, which has helped to reduce some of that staff time. We did implement the department header package with the help of both communications and IT through the website redesign project. This has helped to streamline how we help people navigate our website because a lot of the information is now right here on this homepage. Some of the most common links they look for, like requesting a court date or paying for a ticket are right here on the homepage now. And then we've transitioned our e-file portal to an online form to help reduce financial burden and streamline the process for those filing documentation with the court. Our fiscal year 2026 new programs include completing the move to the public safety headquarters, transitioning our court software. We're currently hosted onsite through a local server. We're looking to migrate that to a hosted environment, which is through Amazon Web Services. This will provide additional access to the court server, especially when we are remote. We will do that through a secure connection directly through Tyler Technologies. And that does also help to alleviate the burden from our own internal IT staff here to manage that local server and software maintenance on just that particular program. And then we did apply for a grant through the office of the governor for a juvenile justice and truancy prevention program to enhance our juvenile case manager program that we have, and we are awaiting results on that. We do have a staff member who does dedicate some of her time to that and we're hoping with the award of this grant, we'll be able to beef up the work that she does in that program with receiving that grant, which we'll know hopefully in a couple of months as well sometime later this fall. Our 2026 budget here, we do have a proposed increase of $46,364 or 8.81%. And that is a result primarily due to a few different items here. So we have the pay program for staff, the addition of a part-time associate judge, the reoccurring increased expenditures on internal service charges, as well as that transition from the local server to a cloud-based system. And then we do have a decrease slightly in our capital there of $4,900 and that's due to we do not have any computer replacements needed for next fiscal year and then the one-time cost in the workers' comp of $35. This is our overview of our court collections that we've received from payments of fines and court costs. And so for here, you'll see a, when the numbers decline, it is because those years we did experience decline in cases. This year, we are experiencing a decline as well, which is why the projections are a bit lower than the past fiscal year. Fee increases are generally recommended by, not necessarily by us, and so we do not have any proposed changes in this. Usually that is implemented from state law requirements that they have on fines and collections. And then our fiscal year 2027 and beyond, we're looking to expand our court of record services to enhance quality of life and evaluate the need for additional court dockets to better meet community demands. Developing a trackable data dashboard to provide visibility to performance metrics, including things such as how long it takes us to dispose a case. Implementation of an online jury management portal. We do currently utilize a web form for this, but an online management portal will actually allow for the management of that internally and it will allow people to submit their exemptions and will remove them from the system. So we're looking to implement that in the future. And then continue to evaluate different services such as court translation or in usage of AI-driven technologies to enhance court processes. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have, I have a question. The, what's the rationale behind adding the associate judge and what's the timeframe for that person to start his or her job?
Yes, so the Judge Heindl is looking for her contingency plan and so she's wanting to be able to have somebody learn the role that she does so that in the event when it's time, you know, for her no longer to be with us and she'll have that plan in place. But it also helps when she's out or unavailable, we can continue court proceedings without having a disruption in services by continuing to provide court without having to cancel or reschedule things or in the event there's a recusal too. That will allow, if she has to recuse herself due to a matter she's not able to oversee, then she would have somebody else that could potentially oversee those types of cases. And as far as when that would start, maybe after the fiscal year would begin, that would be brought before counsel for an appointment recommendation for that.
And that'd be something we would obviously include Judge Heindl in as well. And I would also add that with the move to the new facility, the intent is to also, if needed, be able to host just more sessions. Because now there will be, there'd be zero scheduling conflicts, like sometimes there might be in this space, right? And so it would be nice to obviously have availability of two judges in that effort as opposed to just the one.
And I think that position was slated for what, like 35,000? Is that what I saw?
Correct.
Okay.
I think it was just shy than, I think it was 31,000, 32,000, but yeah.
Okay, got it. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mastoto, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So next in on my schedule would be building and equipment services.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wilder, welcome.
Thank you, good morning. We'll go quickly through and we'll take 30 minutes, but welcome to the fiscal year 26 budget presentation for Building and Equipment Services Department. Quick overview of the department, we have three divisions. Our Building Services Division, which maintains city facilities, including the structural, electrical, plumbing and HVAC systems. The Custodial Services Division maintains clean work in public areas and city buildings to ensure a pleasant environment for staff and visitors. And the Fleet Services Department operates the city's central maintenance facility and manages the light-duty vehicle lease program. Here's a quick look at our organizational chart. You can see the positions backed in blue are our active positions and we have one position backed in gray, which would be the additional position we're proposing for fiscal year 26 of the fleet manager. Here's a look at our employee count. We've been running at 13 for the last four years and looking to expand that to 14 in fiscal year 26 with that fleet manager. The mission of the Building and Equipment Services Department at the City of Victoria is to ensure that all city staff have safe, functional, reliable and comfortable facilities, vehicles and workspaces. And there's a quick look at our department. Goals and objectives, number one is to focus on proactive maintenance and that's something that we keep in mind every day that we go to work. We want to implement sustainable practices and energy-efficient technologies when the opportunities arise to do so. We strive to reduce equipment downtime and optimize vehicle utilization by looking at trends in mileage and usage. We also want to create opportunities for our staff and motivation for their development. Our fiscal year 25 highlights, some of these are still in process, but we are going to have replace the emergency generator at Fire Station Four with a new unit. We remodeled the Citizens Visitor Bureau vestibule at 700 Main for operation outside normal business hours. With collaboration with the Information Technology Department, we did a remodel and technology upgrade on the engineering conference room at 700 Main. We constructed a new break room for the golf course maintenance shop staff and we will complete a gravel lot expansion at the solid waste facility before the end of the year. and we will complete a gravel lot expansion at the solid waste facility before the end of the year. A look at the performance metrics. This is our fleet metric. It is downtime listed in hours of downtime. It runs twenty four hours a day, so if a unit is not in service, it is collecting downtime. So you can see it got pretty high in twenty twenty four. We were struggling with our public safety maintenance, as well as our environmental services vehicle maintenance. With the addition of the Sidens Martin Emergency Group maintenance contract, we have seen a significant decrease in downtime. You can see there that we're projecting based on data to be almost forty five thousand hours lower than the previous year. And we look to, to keep that trend going for fiscal year twenty six. For our building services group, we track preventative maintenance versus reactive maintenance or repairs. As you can see, we started out in twenty twenty one with a, with a very backwards-looking metric. We strive for eighty percent of our repairs to be preventative. We're trending toward that direction at about three to four percent per year. So you can see that we're projecting based on current data to be at about thirty seven percent preventative for the current year and looking to increase that further in twenty twenty six. For efficiencies, we have to talk about Sidens Martin Emergency Group maintenance contract. It's been a huge contributor in time savings. Their, their acquisition of parts and their intrinsic knowledge of the equipment that they maintain has been a massive help for the fire department. They know what to look for, they know how to fix it, and they can get parts in a hurry. So that's been great. We also did an amendment at the beginning of this year to our transdev maintenance contract. And this was sort of a, sort of a paperwork efficiency. The amendment was, was to help streamline some of the managerial processes that they were having to do based on the design of our original contract. There was, it was very paperwork-heavy, and it, it was difficult to discern which type of vehicles are getting which charges, et cetera. So we cleaned that up with an amendment this year, and it's resulted in, in a lot more efficient operation in that facility. Also with our internal folks, we've done some strategic assignments with custodians and with building maintenance technicians. It's kind of a divide and conquer type of setup. We had them running a crews. We've since divided them. We were able to make available a couple of extra vehicles that were already in our department. And we have our maintenance technicians going out solo unless we have safety-sensitive working-at-h heights electricity, stuff like that. We have two of them go to the same job. But we've been able to conquer a lot more preventative maintenance with them being separated. And the custodial assignments were sort of in preparation for the, the move into the public safety headquarters. So we are aware that we're going to be, this first year, we're going to be maintaining that with the existing staff that we have. And we think that we'll have, we'll call it one and a half staff to, to maintain that facility right from its inception. So we'll have a full time there all day long, and we'll have another person splitting time that is currently working in this facility that, that will be vacated. So we suspect that that load will, will fall off. New programs for fiscal year twenty six are that we're extending the replacement cycle for some of our HVAC equipment. We have been running that at fifteen years. And for the non-critical areas, we intend to run that out a little bit longer and see if we can get more life out of those units. We sometimes replace units prior to their complete failure. So we're going to see if we can get a little bit, a little bit more life out of those. The addition of the fleet manager position and exploring fleet management strategies and possibly telematics for our fleet. We'd like to complete the library roof replacement project. And then myself and, and our project manager at Building and Equipment Services are going to be involved in the community center renovation and expansion project. So we're looking very forward to that learning opportunity and ability to contribute. Quick look at the numbers. As you can see, we're up a lot, seventy three percent, a little over four million dollars. We can dive into what that consists of. First and foremost is capital expenses. We have a large volume of fleet assets being replaced this year, as you're aware. They're mainly in the public safety fleets and the environmental services fleet. We have some recurring MNO increases due to the increased cost of our vehicle maintenance contracts. In personnel, we have the additional position of the fleet manager accounted for there, as well as our pay program. And in one-time expenses, we have a, a small amount of one-time expenses that are the stipend program, as well as a new printer-copier combo for one of our offices. Our revenues, pretty straightforward. It matches our expenses exactly. Our revenues are a reflection of expenses from other city departments as we are an internal services fund. So our, our revenues come directly from other departments within the city. Obviously, the, the largest increase in, in fleet vehicle acquisition. For fiscal year twenty seven and beyond, and we have some big projects upcoming that we're looking forward to. The city hall complex and the seven hundred Main Center remodels after we move into the public safety headquarters. We still want to explore the relocation of the city service center to be more located centrally to the operations headquarters for Public Works. We have the possibility of additional staff needed to maintain new facilities, additional staff to increase preventative maintenance within our facilities, and maybe even the, the addition of heavy-duty certified truck mechanics. And this is specifically for environmental services. Their vehicles are, are very particular. They take a specific set of skills, and they could be factory-trained by our chassis and body companies to hopefully expedite repairs on those pieces of equipment. That's it for me. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions?
No cartoon of you?
What did you say?
I said, no cartoon of you?
No cartoon of me, no. No, I have the unpaid version of ChatGPT, so I don't get that.
Well played. Very nice. Thank you. Appreciate the information.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Roger.
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 Can you remind us all how many vehicles you have in fleet?
Yeah, we have just over three hundred. I think we're sitting right at three hundred and four vehicles in fleet, which are licensed plate can drive-on-the-road vehicles.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so then next on the list, I think we're shuffling around a little bit. We're going to do economic development next, correct?
Yes, sir.
Welcome, Ms. Williams.
Good morning, Council and Mayor. All right. Are we good? Yep. All right, so I'm going to be presenting to you all the fiscal year twenty six economic development budget. And then Kate will be right after me to discuss Victoria Main Street program. So a little bit about our department description. When it comes to economic development, we do a lot of things, right? And we have a lot of core functions, those being business recruitment, retention, workforce development initiatives, incentive management, which takes up quite a bit of time, strategic planning, supportive entrepreneurship and innovation, looking into land redevelopment, foster community relationships with all of our community partners, and then also helping manage the downtown TERS board and the sales tax board. And I'm not going to steal Kate's thunder, so I'll let her go over what she does. And here is our organizational chart. We have the director at the top. We have an admin assistant. To the right is Main Street manager, two downtown maintenance, and one downtown coordinator. And as you can see in the gray box, we are proposing for a business retention manager. And the black boxes are funded under another fund, which is the hotel motel tax fund. More of a breakdown on how we've evolved over the years in employees. We added one admin assistant in fiscal year twenty three, and that is a shared position between CBB and Economic Development and Main Street program. And then we also added in the one business retention manager position for next fiscal year. And as I mentioned before, the Main Street program is funded out of hotel occupancy, occupancy tax. My budget is funded out of the sales tax. And then also we have the admin that's split between the two. So there's our team. Our mission in economic development is to foster economic growth through collaboration and innovation for continued prosperity for our community. We do have two vacancies currently, one being a maintenance position and one downtown coordinator. So if you know of anybody who's looking to work for Main Street program, please send them our way. Some of our goals and objectives for economic development is promote sustainable economic growth in Victoria with a robust marketing strategy. We recently launched our new website, and we want to build off of that. Strengthening workforce development and education by supporting workforce solutions, BISD, VC, and the new Texas A&amp;M Victoria. And the picture to the right is actually of the students at Midcoast Construction Academy. And then we want to encourage innovation and entrepreneurship by establishing that entrepreneurship ecosystem this next fiscal year. And we look to enhance quality of life and livability by supporting parks and Main Street programs through the Sales Tax Development Corporation. Enhance governance and incentive policy framework for economic development and attract and retain local businesses with that new BRE program and program manager. The fun part, fiscal year twenty five highlights. So we've been busy. There were six new retailers that opened, and I have a little breakdown on how we assisted with each of those. HGO was recruitment through Retail Coach, the contract that we have with Retail Coach. Seven Brew as well. Starbucks, number two, we helped with site location assistance. Dollar General Market, there's been some help with the historical preservation assistance there. Toasted Yolk was another one recruited through Retail Coach. And Guadalajara Meat Market, we recently helped promote their grand opening through the Town Talk podcast. That was a request of theirs. And then under construction, we have six new retailers with the Victoria Village, as Jesus mentioned earlier, with Burlington, Five Below, Ulta, and Petco, and they are still working to fill the other small shops. And that was made possible through that Chapter Three Eighty agreement. We've also helped with site marketing for the Old Red Lobster, which therefore recruited the El Churro to move in and start a remodel, a heavy remodel of that location. And then also Ollie's Bargain Store moving into the Big Lots location. That was through efforts with Retail Coach as well. Some more highlights and big push that we've been focusing on, kind of shifting from retail as land redevelopment. We published an RFI to sort of get a request for interest of local or outside developers for the lot next to seven hundred Main, which is six hundred North Main, or also known as the Street of Ten Friends Lot with the sign on the corner. And we got two that were interested, and they were both local developers. So we look to hopefully redevelop that land in the future. We assisted and are still assisting JW Moore and their land redevelopment at three oh eight East Staton. And that picture to the top right is a conceptual design of what they look to do with the warehouses, a mixed-use development with condos and a possible distillery, and then also some townhomes that would face North Street on the north side there. We developed a TERS incentive guidelines. It's still in draft form, but that is to encourage and support residential infill in downtown, just like JW Moore's proposed development. That is within the TERS, so that's a big win for us. We also began working with Housing Finance Corporation and Development Services in Low Income Housing and Affordable Projects. Began working on redevelopment of COV property, specifically Pine Street for residential. So we are, started that, and we're still working on what that looks like for the future. As far as Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation goes, recently just sold the last seven acres of the Lone Tree Industrial Park and have been working closely with VEDC and have assisted very heavily with the tax abatement for that seven acres. The Sales Tax Development Corporation, other community partners, was very successful. Again, this being the third time to receive the High Demand Job Training Grant through Workforce Solutions through the state to help with Midcoast Construction Academy and their efforts. We also saw this recently and still going on, the Cinemark remodel. And that was made possible through a performance agreement with the Sales Tax Development Corporation and Whole Properties. And you have a picture of that to the right, bottom right. And finally, we are working and putting in hopefully some improvements on the John Stockbury Mall Drive to help with realignment of the driveway into the mall. And that's just to help with flow of traffic and really increase that traffic over there towards the Mall, Murdochs, and Longhorn Steakhouse. Some performance metrics that we try to keep track of is public and private investments as far as when you see new developments or remodels of retail and commercial space. We had roughly eighteen hundred projects that came through Development Services in twenty twenty four. We're trying to keep it modest for the next, this next year, fifteen hundred. And then also that resulted in roughly a hundred and fifty-eight million dollar of total investment last year. And we're going to keep that modest at a hundred million for the, the next fiscal year. And then also we keep track of retail recruitment and the prospects and touchpoints that we've had with trying to recruit, recruit those folks. And as you see, those numbers have dropped because we've become more fine-tuned on which ones we go after so that they do fit within our market. And we look to keep those efforts going. Departmental efficiencies. Again, we launched the Growing Victoria website. This is to be a tool for developers and folks looking to move here or start their business here. Makes it easier and faster for them to find certain aspects of our community, whether it's where are we located, what sites are available, what incentives are available. And it's very well laid out, so they can find it very easily. We also purchased recently InPlan software and Zactax software. InPlan software is a total econo, economic impact software. I can plug in a project, put in a few numbers such as total investment, jobs, and some other factors, and then it will tell me exactly what's the ripple effect. How will that affect the rest of our restaurants in, in retail with extra spending or recruiting other jobs that, that come as a result from that project? So I look forward to using that more in the future. And then also Zactax software. And that's a quick and easy look at sales tax and property tax revenues for each business annual property in Victoria. And that's going to be a key tool for our BRE program. They'll be able to take a quick glance on there on a regular basis and see who may be falling behind and who is doing well and who we might need to go reach out to and see what their needs are. New programs and initiatives. Again, continue to promote Victoria is a vibrant and sustainable place to do business. The, the website was the, the first foundational step, right? Now we have a place to send people when they want more information. So again, growing that marketing strategy of Victoria for developers and new residents. Implementing that business and retention expansion program to assist our current businesses and their needs, and then also implement and further develop our Housing Finance Corporation and Public Facility Corporation so we can expand on the housing needs that are in Victoria. So the budget has increased due mainly because of that request of that one person with a total of hundred and six thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars or roughly fifty-three percent. But that also includes the pay program, BRE manager, and then the tools they need to do the job, a computer, a cell phone, et cetera. Twenty seven beyond. So again, we look to be more active with the HFC and PFC to further grow those housing and residential and maybe even some other projects in Victoria. The Victorian Senior Living will grand open in twenty twenty six, and there's a picture of it in the top right corner. Continue to see the website to be a strong resource tool. Recruit one major retail tainment business. So the bottom right, there's a picture of a chicken and pickle. Now, I'm not saying that I'm going to be fortunate enough to get chicken and pickle here, but I do want to think positive, positively and, and hopefully recruit something like that, where you have outdoor recreation, you have a bar, restaurant, a space where you can have music, maybe rent it for a party, so forth and so on. So that'll be the, the next step. Explore more funding through the Texas Workforce Commission to grow our workforce pipeline. We do, we were successful in that one grant. There are more options and opportunities there that I'm going to explore and hopefully try to tap into those resources. Hopefully by this time next year, I'll be able to provide more metrics on housing and business retention efforts that will look like how many visits did we make to the businesses? What were some of their needs? What were the survey results, so forth and so on? So I look to bring that back to you guys. Explore collaboration efforts with the University of Texas A&amp;M Victoria to see what resources they have and how we can work together for the community as a whole. And then also, like I mentioned before, on the redevelopment of land and that being a strong focus, I would look to propose a redevelopment officer position in fiscal year twenty seven. Oh, and I skipped one picture. That one picture is just a conceptual of some infill housing. That one picture is just a conceptual of some infill housing to try to go along with the H F C P F C efforts. That completes my presentation. Are there any questions?
I have one question. On the the proposed new position for Business Retention Manager, could you just expand a little bit on kind of what the job duties of that position would be?
Sure. So their focus will be, you know, ideally first, they're going to assess the community and what the needs are. And then we'll pull, we'll put together some goals and objectives and what what we need to tackle. But that could look like going and visiting with the businesses, getting them more involved. It's a lot of relationship building in the beginning. And then later, it's really tackling, you know, how can we help them? And how can we connect them with the right resources too? Because we have a lot of community partners and resources here already that we can just simply connect them to, whether it be the S B D C or workforce solutions, so forth and so on. But then also, we want to have some workshops. We want to have some programs, maybe collaborate with the Chamber to help host those. And so that increase also includes some small events and programs for that outreach effort to try to get them to say, hey, we're here, we want to help you guys. Please let us know what your needs are. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. Are there any other questions? I will say, if you haven't gone on, checked out the Growing Victoria website, please do so because there is a wealth of information on there. I mean, it's 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 impressive. A great job on putting that together because there's a really a one stop shop, so to speak, for somebody that's looking to locate in Victoria. There's a lot of information on there, so very well done.
Thank you.
Great.
And as Danielle alluded to, we'll just transition to Kate talking about Main Street, which is a Division of Economic Development Department.
Welcome, Kate.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I've noticed that everybody has largely kept their hands at their sides, so I'll try and keep my theatrics to a minimum. I am delighted to present the Main Street Fiscal Year twenty six budget to you today. And without going into redundancy, Danielle had a nice comprehensive list on on her slides about some key focuses of Main Street. But you can largely put them in three buckets. That's manage Deleon Plaza facilities, coordinate landscape maintenance for city owned properties located downtown, and provide economic development assistance to support and attract businesses to the downtown area. Our org chart, as evidenced by Danielle's presentation, we are a Division of the Economic Development Department. I have two downtown maintenance workers, one position open again, shameless plug. And our downtown coordinator position is also open. Those both report to me, and then I then report to Danielle. So our employee numbers grew in twenty five and remain consistent into the twenty six year. That's the manager, the coordinator, and our two downtown maintenance workers. Our department mission is through leadership and the use of the Main Street Program. The Victoria Main Street Program will ensure that downtown contributes to the community's overall quality of life by providing opportunities for economic growth as well as for entertainment and personal enjoyment. And it seems to be tricky. We did opt, Roger, we opted for the paid chat G P T at last minute. It seems to be a struggle to get us all in one room together, so you have some nice animated versions of all of us. And oddly enough, this is not my first or second time to be animated. Goals and objectives of the Main Street Program to support local businesses. This can look like business recruitment. This can look like helping connect to resources with development. It can be tricky to develop or redevelop a building that is approaching a hundred years old versus a new build. Development, develop Main Street Subcommittee structure and volunteer networks. As the program grows and we continue to work through our master plan, we realize that we need more hands. So this this could look like a program that we're about to launch with Keep Victory Beautiful to go into not just beautifying through keeping our neighborhoods nice and tidy, but rather horticultural engagement, education programs, looking at helping keep our nice, beautiful flower beds at Deleon Plaza, right in front of the Founder Circle at the new expansion, and City Hall Courtyard, et cetera, nice and tidy and beautiful. Create and implement a downtown activation guidebook. This kind of goes hand in hand with what Danielle is doing in economic development providing resources throughout the entire city. But again, as I mentioned, there are some unique necessities that you kind of have to work through to kind of reimagine what these older buildings look like and maybe changing their use. So this will be kind of a guidebook and a step by step resource to help business owners looking to relocate into the area. Where do I start? Where do I go? This will get them on the right track. Strengthen communication outreach with community partners. We work a lot with what is now the University of Texas A and M Victoria to strengthen that partnership and get that demographic downtown. We also want to begin leveraging, you know, our radio communications, maybe go on crossroads today more often, present more to our Kiwanis and our Rotary, who are great community partners that contribute throughout and really leveraging those partnerships. For F Y twenty five highlights, we accomplished some really big things. We received program accreditation from Main Street America again. This board engagement really got us that accreditation and over that hump again. So I'm really excited to announce that we did receive accreditation. We increased reservations since completing the expansion of the Deleon Plaza. It's much easier to activate, so we've seen more events come to the area versus cobbling an event together. As you remember, it was just a plain street, so we'd have to bring a stage in. We would have to bring in resources. Now it's much more of a plug and play. Implemented updated citywide special events process and review committee. This is a partnership that we have with Parks and Recreation to make activating outdoor event spaces, special event spaces, an easier process and more of a one stop shop. Successfully hosted awards and recognition event for downtown businesses and supporters. We thought it was very important, and this is also identified in the master plan for downtown, of recognizing the accomplishments of the property owners, the business owners, the event organizers, and everything that happens downtown to keep that motivation, really trucking forward to continue the investment in downtown. Expand the entertainment and cultural districts. Those, again, those are two kind of different mechanisms. Our entertainment district is really like a marketing tool to get more events, more attendance to the downtown area. And the cultural district is more of an economic development tool through the arts and cultural scenes. And we launched the new website. So thanks to Danielle and her efforts with the Growing Victoria website, we were able to secure a sub site for Main Street. Now, on the backend, this just means that we kind of tagged along with her website. It really doesn't have any different look or feel. When you navigate to victoriamainstreet.org, it feels like its own website. So it's it's thanks to her efforts that we were able to secure a website for the Main Street Program, which we use to disseminate information such as street closures, event permits, et cetera. Some performance metrics. So the investments, as we've seen, have kind of declined since twenty twenty one, but they remain consistent. But I wanted to really highlight on this because I think there's some opportunities with our facade grants and continuing providing that opportunity for development assistance and incentives to our entryways and corridors, specifically Water Street, Wanlin, Moody Street, et cetera. We're seeing those areas start to become developed and redeveloped. So we think there are opportunities to expand our facade grant to these boundaries that are also indicated in the master plan. The lack of housing development downtown. This is, again, this is a metric that I wanted to highlight because it's going to be a focus that we work with Danielle and and economic development on to really, you know, focus on adaptive reuse, really leverage those private and public partnerships to unlock underutilized properties and strategic long term planning for land banking, possibly redevelopment for city owned properties. Now, this is a positive one. We are still seeing an increase in our downtown plaza rentals or our Deleon Plaza rentals. And this is largely due to what I had mentioned before. Now it's a plug and play. It's much easier to activate. So we're seeing more interest in activating a space that you don't have to cobble together. Now you can just pop up, show up and plug in. Departmental efficiency, streamline special events process. Again, we're incorporating technology to manage that flow. It can be a bulky process when you have approximately up to ten to twelve departments touching a special event. This could be Fire Marshal's Office. This could be Public Works. This could be, you know, Parks and Recreation, Main Street Program, Convention Visitors Bureau if it's a hot fund recipient. So we we implemented monday.com to help us manage that process flow and make it easy on staff to to manage it from start to finish. Improved board engagement through better processes and policies. This again, as I mentioned before, this really contributed to us gaining that accreditation again, is looking at our processes and our policies on our board and improving those. Implemented low maintenance landscaping. This is a transition from a more high, high maintenance landscaping to more native, that native plants and grasses that can subs- that can withstand drought, can withstand, you know, low temperatures. That way, we're not spending quite so much time maintaining those. And shared services and leveraging equipment and services from other departments to save money and build employee knowledge. Shout out to two specific departments that really help us a lot, Parks and Recreation and Community Appearance. They continue to help us. I mean, it's just wild how willing they are to lend a hand. So we're we're really leveraging those partnerships. And again, a big thank you to those two departments and every other department. Building Services helps us out quite a bit, too. F Y twenty six, new programs and initiatives that we're looking at. Public Art and Mural Program Policy. We're working with a lot of departments to help kind of implement and devise a public art policy that is, you know, your departments are Keep Victory Beautiful. We've got Legal Department helping us. There's Development Services. There's Convention Visitors Bureau, Main Street. So we're all working together to make sure that we can implement these beautiful murals around town that drive visitation, that again, drive economic development. So playing our part in the arts and culture sector. Downtown Small Business Fair. Again, this kind of goes hand in hand with the award ceremony. It's great to, it's great to acknowledge the accomplishments, but we also want to bolster the small businesses that are here day in, day out. So we want to do a small business fair sometime possibly in the fall. Walking tours, there's so many great things that are happening downtown that we want to build walking tours around them. This could look like a walking tour of all the art downtown. This could look like a walking tour of all of the historic markers downtown. We want to really celebrate the accomplishments that, you know, both community partners and businesses have invested in the downtown area. Downtown Maintenance Program. This is, again, tightening the nuts and bolts down on really making the maintenance of all of the plaza amenities and landscaping throughout downtown just a really well oiled machine. Minor aesthetic improvements to Memorial Square. These look like, you know, washing, cleaning the monument that's there or adding some nice greenery and some nice floral arrangements there, maybe a small flower bed. But, you know, these are, this is also identified in the master plan to kind of give that area some attention as well. Our budget overview, we see a decrease of about ten percent, and that is largely due to completing our one time expenses from last year. We don't have or we're not requesting any other one time expenses in the twenty six budget, but you'll see that small increase due to the pay program. Twenty seven beyond, Main Street Lighting Project. We have identified through hosting several different types of events that there are some areas in the downtown sector that are not very well lit. One example of this is Main Street between Constitution and Santa Rosa. You've got two sides of the road that have multi story buildings that sort of cast a shadow. So we're looking at projects that can really lighten that space up. So larger events like Tejas Fest, like Crossroads, barbecue and brew, your larger events that kind of spread out down that way, creating a safer feel for visitors downtown. Residential housing infill, I'm not going to say too much on that because we've touched on it a few times, both in Danielle's presentation and mine, but really kind of trying to to build up those housing units downtown. Streetscape Designs, I mentioned this before in expanding the facade grant, boundaries possibly. We're looking at beautifying Rio Grande, Santa Rosa, Constitution, and Wanlin, which are all major thoroughfares into the downtown area. And once you're here, we're looking at wayfinding implementation. And this is not specifically a project that Joel has mentioned before in some of his presentations earlier this year, but it's more focused on pedestrian wayfinding. And once you're in the district, where everything is, how to get there, et cetera. And C I P Memorial Square improvements, these are larger improvements to that area, not the minor ones that I had mentioned prior that are also identified in the master plan. And with that, if there are any questions, I would love to answer them or try to.
So you may have any questions? I think I saw somewhere that K V V has a Deleon Plaza event coming up, like a workday. When is that again?
So July twelfth and July twenty sixth. We have two workdays that we're going to partner. The July twelfth is for sure an ice cream social. So Green Cow Ice Cream or Green Cow Creamery is helping us with a special flavor for that day.
It's probably why I remembered.
Yes. So show up and get an ice cream on Main Street as a thank you for helping us volunteer.
And that's focused on Deleon Plaza, correct?
That's focused on Deleon Plaza and City Hall Courtyard.
Got it.
Yes, sir.
Great. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
So that brings us to our lunch break and puts us back on schedule.
All right.
So we have a thirty minute schedule in the schedule, but we can extend that to forty five minutes if if you wish. I I think the remainder of the presentations this afternoon should go fairly smoothly. So your your call, Mayor, on how long you want lunch break to be.
All right. Well, let's stick with the thirty minutes and we get three extra minutes. We're ahead of schedule.
There you go. That's right. I'll stop talking then.
We'll be back at twelve thirty. All right, we are back in session after our lunch break. Mr. Garza, I believe we have Development Services next.
Yes, sir. Julie will take it from here.
All right, great. Welcome, Ms. Fulgham.
I will be the first to say good afternoon to council. We made it through the morning. Okay. So Development Services is comprised of four divisions. We have Development Center, which is all things building permits and inspections, Planning Services, Code Enforcement, and G I S. And we are a one stop Development Center. This is our org chart. So we are four divisions, but we're across five fund centers. So you'll see on the upper right corner of the screen, all of our different fund centers. For our Development Services Administration, we have three staff members in the light blue boxes, Director, Assistant Director, and Admin. And then we will have our Inspections Department in the light gray box. Our dark blue is Planning. Our bright blue is Code Enforcement. And then the dark gray is our G I S division. And the boxes that are highlighted or outlined in red are grant funded positions, not in the general fund. So this is an overview of our department history. We have twenty six full time employees. We have shifted different positions within different divisions over the years to meet our needs. This most recent year, we will be moving our Assistant Director's position into our Development Services Administration. When I was Assistant Director, my position was funded out of Planning because I was a planner. Rick has been funded out of Development Center for all these years. But really, it makes sense for the administration to be funded out of the Development Services Administration Fund. But we have, as you can see, been holding steady with twenty six employees for actually a lot longer since fiscal year twenty twenty two, since twenty fourteen and beyond. Our mission is to provide sound, professional advice and technical expertise to develop a great city, to apply codes fairly and consistently. And we have a duty to enforce city codes to ensure a safe and healthy environment. But we will balance that duty with a common sense approach and a facilitative attitude. Our goals and objectives for this next year, we have several in each division for our Development Center. We will be adopting the twenty twenty four I C C codes and also implementing our new My Government online software. For Planning Services, we'll continue to implement the Comp Plan and the Unified Development Code with N P O, which is again a federal or a grant. We have two big projects, which will be the Transit's Public Engagement Plan, which is what's required to implement their recently adopted route study. And then we will also be beginning the freight study at the beginning of next year, calendar year. C D B G, we will be implementing our new Con Plan and Annual Action Plan. For our Code Enforcement, we'll continue, of course, just enforcing our municipal codes. And then we want to address more commercial substandard buildings, which is additional requirements for commercial is the asbestos and asbestos abatements. So that takes another step for abating those types of buildings. And then G I S, we are scheduled for our three year flyover for aerial photography this year. And then they have been working very closely and diligently with Public Works Department on the impervious covered data said. So you'll hear a lot about the Stormwater Utility from K I N. And G I S has been really instrumental in kind of helping develop that. Our twenty twenty five highlights, of course, Development Center, you see a lot of those amazing projects that are now new around town, new buildings. And then we will be, we've been working all year to develop them. And then we will be, we've been working all year to develop the My Government Online Software, which is our new permitting system. And our Go Live date is anticipated for September, and we're really excited about that because it should help with some efficiencies. And Planning, we have continued to amend our UDO, completed our five-year long-range transportation plan, the MTP through NPO, and then, of course, drafting our consolidated plan right now for community development. In Code Enforcement, we have successful, we have a lot of successful municipal court cases, but council hears a lot about 2204 East North Street Home Park. And so we do have a very, we did finally close that case out and have had a successful court case on that. And then GIS is updating, have updated our database and continuing to work with Public Works on that impervious coverage layer. So this is what our 25 highlights look like in pictures. So you see that top left corner is the Victoria Oaks Manufactured Home Park with a beautiful new concrete drive. And then, of course, we have some before and afters with Code Enforcement pictures. I could probably take a whole presentation with different before and afters. Those are really fun. And then Mission Valley School, our Public Safety Headquarters, Long John Silver's, and the Amazon Distribution Warehouse. These are our performance metrics. The blue ones are for permit values. The first, the top, the one on the left is your permit values, and then the bottom right-hand corner is our actual number of permits. We do hover at about 4,000 permits average over the past 10-year span. They've been a little bit lower, but you can see the value hasn't necessarily correlated in, with that lower volume, but we've had some really, really large value projects that you saw from the photos. In the upper right-hand corner, we have Code Enforcement with the environmental nuisance cases in our junk vehicles. And again, we generally keep around 3,500, 3,000 cases for those. On the left is our Planning Performance Matrix. So that total line looks like it has a huge variance, but there's actually only 50 cases between our top year and our low year, and most of those are attributed to pre-development meetings, which can really be fluctuating. And our GIS, GIS metrics on the right, we have data sets maintained is the bright blue, and then map data request is the bright purple, and those are really the, the two biggest metrics we look at in GIS. And you'll see that they're continuing to turn upward, and that really generates a lot of the work for the GIS team. Our efficiencies is to continue with our in-house training for certifications. The My Government Online will also allow us to add a little bit more permits to be, that can be applied for online. The big permits still will have to be applied for through papers because of the big plans associated with them, but we'll be able to do a little bit more online. We'll continue our UDO amendments. Code Enforcement Abatement has also moved away, again, from Community Appearance and because of staffing, so we are contracting that out. And it's just not really a cost efficiency, but it is a huge time efficiency, so we were able to get those contracts out a lot quicker. For GIS, we're upgrading our scanner to provide faster documents into Laserfish. And we've, they've been working very closely with the Public Works Department on the, the data that needs to be input and updated to keep our data sites maintained, especially with training them on GPS unit so that they can get real points and then upload that into our GIS system. So our new programs and initiatives for FY '26 is for Development Center to adopt new codes. Planning, we will be looking at the end of the year to ask y'all to help us develop the new and probably final action agenda for our comprehensive plan. Usually they're two-year action agendas, but we'll probably be asking for a three-year action agenda to kind of close out and finish this comp plan before we embark on a new one. The NPO, of course, is doing the Public Engagement Plan for the Route Implementation and the Freight Study. And then our Community Development, we have our Con Plan and Annual Action Plan implementation, working with Housing Finance Corporation for a lot-to-home initial housing program, and then to close out the entire program if necessary. Code Enforcement will continue to work with Habitat for Humanity to enhance their brush-up program. We conduct neighborhood sweeps ahead of the cleanup events and then continue our targeted enforcement on main thoroughfares, corridors, and rear fence lines. GIS is going to have the new aerial photography and continuing to coordinate and help with that impervious coverage layer. So our total budget is $2.6 million, which is about an $80,000 increase or a 3.2% increase over last year. So Personnel, we have, of course, the pay program and then the baseline grant award for the NPO grant, increase, increased for all NPOs across the state, which has allowed us to charge 20% of the director's salary to the grant. Our MNO is increasing because of software and internal service charges. Capital is decreasing because we have less computer replacements this year. And then our one-time is the new aerials as well as additional funds for demolition to, again, increase those or address those commercial structures. Our revenues are primarily made up of our permits and contractor licenses with 79%. Our next largest collection is the Wheatie Lot Abatement Collections, and then our planning fees are at 7%. So for 2027 and beyond, some issues that we hope to address is our disjointed offices. Development Services is spread across four offices, so I get my steps in almost every day going to the different offices to communicate with staff. And our Development Center, we're always looking at the number of inspections, or inspectors that we have in our population, and also our workload. So the more inspectors we have, the more we can do. So if we have low permits, then we're, we're working on more enforcement activities or, you know, paying, being more thorough in our inspections. And then we continue to have issues finding quality education resources for ICC certifications and maintenance. In Planning, we will be looking at a new comprehensive plan. Hopefully, this one that we have will get us through 2029 and we'll have a new one for the new decade. And then Code Enforcement, we want to continue to try and figure out how to partner with outside agencies and work with some volunteer management to get people to help with property owners that are elderly or disabled that have violations. And then I skipped over Planning. Also, the changing federal regulations and funding, as we know, the CDBG grant may be being eliminated. And then, of course, the rules are changing drastically every day, I feel like, on the NPO side. So that's a constant challenge. And then GIS is the changing software and training. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much. I know we're all curious what the feds will do with the CVB.
Very much so.
So we'll figure it out.
All right. So I think we're going to stick to the schedule, and so that would have Joel coming up and talking about CBB.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
Happy to be presenting to you all our 2026 budget proposal for the Convention and All righty. So what does our department do in a nutshell? We are the main promotional arm for the City of Victoria for advertising events that are going on, promoting our history and attractions, making those groups that come to our town feel welcome, including sports and conferences and meetings, engaging our residents, making them love their community and understand what there is to make this community so special and enhance the livability of those folks. And then supporting our travel partners. That includes our hoteliers, our nonprofits, arts groups, as well as places like the Victoria Regional Airport. So it can really have a wide range of folks here in town who we help support in their efforts, too. Our organizational chart is not looking at any changes for next year. You have myself, the Director, my Assistant Director, Elizabeth Tice, Destination Marketing Manager, Nancy Britton, and Bridget Postel, our Guest Services Specialist. You see the black area there, that is the administrative assistant three that we share with the Main Street Program and Economic Development. And again, no proposed changes to the CBB Department, still holding at four positions for the next fiscal year. The position I just mentioned, the administrative assistant three, is not reflected in our budget, but is reflected in Main Street Economic Development. Our department mission, to foster economic development in Victoria by positioning it as one of the premier mid-sized market destinations for leisure travel, conferences and meetings, sports travel, through a number of efforts. And yes, those are real photos. And the one on the left, Liz, is very appreciative that I did not use her real photo there and made an AI image there. But on the right, that's actually us in our new visitor's center space. Our goals and objectives, increased visitation to Victoria from leisure travel, conferences and meetings, and sports events. We track this by looking at our room nights generated from events. Some of that are room nights that we get from our Hot Funds Awards post-event reports. Other ones are just events that we engage with and track those room nights for them. Providing services to sports events and conferences, meetings, groups, and meetings and group travel. When I say group, I mean things like especially class reunions. And we service about 20 sports events per year and about 15 different conferences, meetings, groups. Enhance existing and create additional promotional trails and programs. We, of course, annually do our You'll Love Shopping Victoria. We will be relaunching the Tacos and Margs Trail here in a couple of weeks, as well as the Birding I Spy. And then for the next fiscal year, we'll be looking at implementing our BBQ Trail and the Trail Through Time displays into our Bandwango platform as well, so we can streamline all of those promotions in the same system. And then support Victoria Tourism Partners by marketing their businesses and serving as a connector, especially through our social media efforts. We promote at least six different businesses a month, mostly restaurants, retail, and we see huge returns on the organic reach of those posts. So that's just an example of how we support our tourism partners. Our highlights for fiscal year '25, we integrated a new events calendar system, that is our ITI Digital Events Calendar System, launched the new visitor's center space and extended hours in February, bringing back the Tejas Fest for 2025, secured a July 4th and New Year's Eve fireworks vendor on a multi-year agreement. That was a really great thing for us because up until this point, we had been basically bidding out every single show, and a lot of times, we were ending up with a different vendor. The quality of the shows and the style of the shows could differentiate a lot between that. So having someone on a multi-year agreement, which just the first year is guaranteed, we'll see. Looking forward to a really great show next week. They seem very confident, and I'm looking forward to seeing what they put forward. But just the July 4th and the New Year's Eve is guaranteed, and then that'll give us a chance to judge their performance on these next two events. And then proved our business listings at DiscoverVictoritex.com, especially in the area of photography on their copy to just better describe those attractions, restaurants, you name it, on the website. Our performance metrics, our website visits continue to go up. We are planning an increase for this year as well as next year. Our social media reach, we're planning to see increases there as well. We had a little dip in 2024 just because we had to pause our spend early, spend a little less just because of expenses that we incurred from bicentennial. So we had to shuffle some things around in the CBB budget, but we're back to funding that effort as to what we typically do. And then hotel room nights, we are seeing increases there. We get that by doing a calculation of our occupancy rate from our, they're called STR reports, not to be confused with short-term rental. They're just, that's the name of the company, STR. Multiplying that occupancy rate by how many rooms were, by the number of rooms at the hotels that reported. Not all of our hotels, that is a conservative number because not all of our hotels report to STR, the independent properties namely, especially on like Houston Highway. So, and these numbers are from hotels that have a national brand associated with them. And then our visitor's center visits, we're seeing some increases there, definitely helped by the extended hours. Our Saturdays are the most successful, and I'll talk a little bit more about that towards the end of my presentation in terms of our plans going forward. But we are seeing some, especially a couple of months, the first two months of it, we saw about 15 to 20 visitors, extra visitors, just for those Saturday hours. Departmental efficiencies, I mentioned the new visitor calendars, event calendar system with ITI Digital. That automatically pulls information from the web and social media. Up until that point of integrating that system, we had to put every event in manually. So the information is more accurate, we have a lot more events on there. Using ChatGPT to improve business listings on DiscoverVictoritex.com, the copy is wildly improved on the site. And then partnering community businesses and organizations to prevent aspects of the Tejas Fest. We'll have Hot Rod Tour Texas come back for our car show, Mother Cluckers Downtown for our vendor market, as well as the Crossroads Cornell for our Cornell tournament, and we will have the Pet Resort on Main doing the Chihuahua Races. So that really saves us on staff time and puts the experts in there handling those kind of things. New programs and initiatives for fiscal year '26, implementing a new visitor tracking software. We will be no longer partnering with Datify, but we'll be using Placer. It is the number one company around the country. I know 1,500 different municipalities use it, over 200 in Texas. We'll be able to see really, really solid numbers on how many people attend venues like Dailyon Plaza, the Community Center, as well as events like Tejas Fest. Revising and restarting our historic bus stores, we're planning on having new wrinkles to that. Organizing and presenting the annual New Year's Eve blastoff. I put that in there because up until this point, CBB and Parks had been kind of trading that off annually who ran that event. Going forward, that's going to be a CBB venture every year. Revising and launching the BBQ Trail and Trail Through Time through our Bandwango, achieving our Texas Tourism Friendly designation. We already have Texas Music Friendly and Texas Film Friendly, so we're about halfway through that. Increase visitor's center hours and optimize schedule, looking at extending our Saturday hours, possibly eliminating one of the evening hours because we're not seeing a lot of people come in on Thursday and Friday. We're seeing most of that visitation on Saturday. So it makes a lot of sense to increase the hours on Saturday and make it more available. And then develop a short-term rental registration program, establish a local hotel lodging association. This would help hoteliers to come together on a regular schedule, talk about issues that they're facing, communicate with the city staff, and just all in all, create a stronger relationship between the city and our hoteliers. And then explore regional tourism collaboration with Cuero and Goliad specifically around ranching heritage and history. Goliad has a Presidio La Bahia and Mission Espiru Santo. Cuero has the Chisholm Trail Heritage Museum, and the Museum of the Coastal Bend here has a brand-new expanded exhibit on where Texas ranching began. So we think there's some opportunities to work with some communities and bring in people who could stay for several days by exploring our communities together. The budget, we did have a increase in Personnel, you see there, an increase in MNO, and then, so the total budget increased there of $47,000, excuse me, $913. So what made up that increase? Of course, Personnel, the pay program, MNO recurring increase due to new programs, that is namely the fireworks for 4th of July and New Year's Eve. Now, the cost of those fireworks is about $75,000. You didn't see us go up that much because we made cuts in other areas. So you didn't see a just straight increase as how much those fireworks cost. Software, our STR subscription was bought, the STR company was bought by another company called CoStar, so when that happens, it got more expensive. And then information technology charges. Capital, no expenditures requested, and then the one-time workers' comp transfer for other departments for increased workers' compensation claims. Fiscal year 2027 and beyond, support the community center expansion through Event Sales and Services. We're already creating a running list of different expos and shows and things around the state that we could possibly bring to Victoria once that expansion is completed. Explore to improve visitor's center space, the renovation of 700 Main Center with some departments moving out. That is an opportunity for maybe to make our visitor's center space bigger, which means we wouldn't be exploring, you know, a standalone visitor's center. This is something that we discussed would be the best approach going forward for the future. Exploring also, though, a purchase of a mobile visitor's center. That way, we could have something downtown when there are large events, or we could take to other events around the region. And then developing a formal program for engaging residents and creating local champions. This is kind of like an ambassador program, but it would be something we develop in-house and has our own little flair to it. There are another, other, other communities, Houston namely is one that has their Houston Insider Program that they developed themselves, and it's a way to just get people in this community educated about what there is to do, and, and benefits could be like getting access to a, you know, exclusive event. So that's what we're looking at for the future for 2027. And that wraps up my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you go back to '27?
Yes, sir.
I just want to briefly add on the, on the last point. So the local champions are an ambassador program, so the City of San Antonio had this program as well. And typically, the low-hanging fruit folks, the target to go through these types of programs would be, would be individuals that work at hotels, work at restaurants, you know, work at venues where they're interacting with visitors, because it would behoove us to ensure that if you're going to work at a hotel, you're familiar with what are the offerings in the area, right? And so tourism departments have developed these programs to help educate and expand those ambassadors so that more people are talking about the great things. and expand those ambassadors so that more people are talking about the great things that they're out to do here. And it's not just solely placed on the department.
One question I had, uh, you talked about the Texas Tourism Friendly designation.
Yes, sir.
So what are the metrics that are used to determine whether or not you, you get that certification?
So there are no metrics that you do, there's certain processes, there's a uh initial interview that they do with us to ask more about our community. There's a proclamation, which when we brought the National Travel and Tourism Week proclamation. So there's a number of steps to do, but there is no metrics per se to say whether you're tourism friendly or not. The benefits of that are just to, you know, have another certification on our belt to say that we're a community that invites resident or invites visitors here. Just like the music friendly and the ta- film friendly especially, um just make it known that we invite those type of um industries to our area.
Got it, okay. Any other questions? All right, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
For your information.
Thanks, Joel. Uh, we'll keep rolling and Jessica will come up and present on the library.
Ms. Berger, welcome.
Hello, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I have been known to not know how to use this, so um they made fun of me for it, so hopefully I get through this. Okay, all right. Thank you all for the opportunity to present the library's budget. Okay, the Victoria, let's, let's jump into the department description. And the Victoria Book Library offers uh access a wide of, a wide variety of materials, technology, and opportunity for social connection and sharing. Our programming geared for all ages provides something for everyone. From early literacy at our Storytime programs to exposure to arts and music through a variety of crafts and live music. Our building provides access to technology and Wi-Fi. Media room and conversation spaces for tutoring, connecting and sharing ideas. Here's a, our, our organization chart, it hasn't changed over the years, but I would like to say in this time that uh all the team is cross-trained. I'm sure you all have gone into the library and gone to the service desk. Well, everyone in the library that works there are cross-trained to work the service desk and have hours on the desk. As well as our programming, y'all know that we have over three hundred program, programs a year. And you'll see a lot of our team as, they are, they have specialized duties, but you'll see a lot of them in our programs as well when we need extra hands. So that's just an overview of that. Our de- department employees, in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we had twenty-seven full-time employees, but since then, we've stayed at twenty-five full-time employees and six part-time employees. So nothing has changed since twenty twenty-two. Our department mission. The library supports lifelong literacy by providing a welcoming space, services and programs that pr- prioritize access to technology and resources, fostering community support for learning, reading and personal development. And serving as a reliable anchor for our diverse heritage and culture of our community. Uh, this is a little brief, a little picture of just some of the group. And as you all know, we do have stra- strategic priorities that we revisit every five years. We're on our third year of this year's, this five-year plan. And a lot of our goals that we try to meet and the object, objectives we try to look at when we um have services and programs are improving access and technology, fostering that community awareness and support, inspiring personal development and serving as the community anchor. In the picture you'll see to the right, that is our mobile checkout station. Sometimes we have uh at our kickoff, most recently our summer kickoff, we saw over eight hundred people come through the doors in two hours. So sometimes we have to have extra um stations throughout the library and this mobile checkout can move throughout the buil- throughout the uh building wherever we have a larger group. Some twenty twenty-five highlights, just to um bring up is that exciting thing of our first ever launch at a north location, north uh side, satellite location and having the anytime pickup locker at the Victoria Mall, the entrance to the food court. Uh, we've received the twenty twenty-four Texas Municipal Library Directors Association for the third year in a row for excellence in library service. We replaced our aging self-checkout machine with two new models and they are desk um tabletop models. And they have proven to be very popular as a lot of our patrons do like to check out their own materials. And maybe not come visit us at the checkout desk. And then the installation of our AV equipment in the Bronte Room. This is a project that we had been uh holding off for about four years, so we were excited to actually get this done. So if anybody does use the Bronte Room, you'll s- uh you'll be able to see a new surround sound system, new projector screen, a new uh s- another screen on the wall in, in the Bronte Room and a top-of-the-line uh video conferencing. And let's dive into the performance metrics. These numbers are a little small for me, so I made sure to um to print out the paper. So the light blue bar is our physical collection. And the dark blue is our digital, so circulation, circulation means checkouts. So last year, we saw just over two hu- two hundred and forty-six thousand checkouts. We're on track this year to see two hundred and fifty-four thousand checkouts. And as you can see, we're on trend that both collections will continue to grow when it comes to that circulation, checking out materials. Our cardholders, the data does predict that we'll see a slight decrease. The library does expect these numbers to stay stable as we have lot, we have uh changed it to a longer a card activation period. And we do plan to promote library cards, uh signups through different activities. But what I'm hoping to show with the next metrics is that what we have identified with cardholders, foot traffic and pro- program performance is that the library gets used quite often and a lot, but it just gets used differently. So this is cardholders is just, you know, checking in, checking out and ha- um access to our uh digital services. So what does that look like? Foot traffic, they, these are just the people that come into the building. We don't get to have a, a accurate, a quite accurate snapshot because sometimes people come into the Bronte Room and don't actually come through the doors. So people that come through the main entrance doors, we saw a hundred and fifty-five thousand people last year. We're on track to see a hundred and seventy thousand this year. And again, it'll continue to grow. Program attendance. Again, that's uh, we, I, I hope, hopefully you all or any, anybody you know have come to any of our programs because we do offer them for a, a wide variety of ages. We had just over twenty-eight thousand uh attendees at our programs in twenty twenty-four. We expect to see a slight decrease, I don't know if it happened, but that's what the formula said, that we'll see a, a little dip to twenty-five thousand. But again, it's on trend to see, we will continue to see growth in our program attendance. And some department efficiencies, there's a lot here, but I just put a couple in that uh our new paperless procedures. So you see right uh in the picture to the left, there is a self-serving library card signup area. We've um done a lot to have that to where the patron can sign themselves up. So now that our staff is, does not need to input a lot of the information for them. We have access to library card signups on our website as well. We've reduced some of our uh mailing reminders of overdos and re- and things like that into digital. So now it's more text message and emails. And that has proven to be um helpful in a lot of things and also saving money when it comes to uh cost of uh with the po- postal, postal cost. And um, we just received word that we got our tech, a Texas Book Festival uh Collection Development Grant for a twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, as you know, that we are, our two book lockers were grant-funded. We got this grant and we will continue to uh look for grants wherever we can. So, twenty twenty-six new programs and initiatives. Some exterior improvements that we hope to see very soon is the removing of the existing wall and adding railing per the twenty twenty-three master plan. This project has been funded by the Friends of the Library. So we're hoping, as you can see in this picture, uh actual picture in the rendering, we're hoping that it, it opens up the space a little more and creates more of a uh, we're hoping to eventually get to where we can have a reading porch out there. Because again, with master plan, it said look at more outdoor spaces. So we're hoping it's that little step closer to another w- way to offer an outdoor space. And then roof repair, the library roof repair, you've heard it from Jesus, you've heard it from Roger. I know here in Texas, we welcome rain, but right now at the library, we don't. We had rain, a, a heavy rain a couple of weeks ago. And it, again, it, it continued to um cause issues for us. So we're hoping that this, these repairs will alleviate a lot of those issues for us. So now we dive into the budget a little bit in that um, the total budget, there is an increase of two point five seven percent. And what is that a cost to? So our, the personnel pay programming, pro- play, pay program, of course. Reoccurring increase due to software maintenance, maintenance, vehicle expenses and IT charges. There is no uh in- increase due to capital uh request. And there is a one-time stipend pay program and replace our aging public computers. Because as you know, we have thirty-five computers on the floor for the public to use and those need to be re- replaced every so often. Our revenue, we, our revenue comes from a lot of fines and fees associated with the library. We typically see about forty thousand dollars in revenue, but as you can see, it fluctuates where sometimes it goes up a little bit. And the projections show that we will see at least forty thousand from that. So twenty twenty-seven and beyond, we will continue to look at the multipurpose purpose spaces outside, outdoors. And then we are going to look at, you know, entrance to the main street per the master plan. And additional transportation, we have one vehicle and um we have a lot of outreach programs and they continue to grow. We have three off-site book drops that we have to get daily. So uh one vehicle and that many staff members trying to um share using it is a little difficult. So hopefully that, that um, that number that Roger gave was what, three hundred and four vehicles? Hopefully we could get to three hundred and five vehicles. All right. So um, and then determine the needs of satellite location, the north side of town. Uh, we, we continue to see growth in popularity with the pickup locker at the mall. And again, it's just showing us wh- if the needs there. And it is, I think the, within the, the second month of it, we had fifty-five people signed up as that, as that location at the mall as their preferred pickup location. Thank you all for the opportunity to provide this uh budget report and please let me know if you have any questions.
You may have any questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Berger, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jessica. Lisa is gonna be doing three presentations back-to-back-to-back. Um, she's really grabbed the bull by the horns as, as they say. Um, and I'd like to ask Lisa and everybody else who's presenting after that to please be mindful of your pace. Uh, rushing through these presentations can make it difficult for people to keep up with, and so please be mindful of that moving forward. Lisa?
All right, Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to talk about the Parks and Recreation FY twenty twenty-six budget. All right, so here is our department description. Um, it's broken down into a few categories. What you see here is the eight hundred and forty-eight point nine acres of parkland that we oversee. We have one regional park, four community parks and eight neighborhood parks. We also have six point six miles of trails and you can see those listed here as well as three splash pads, thirty-six athletic fields slash sport courts, as well as twenty-two recreational facilities and fifteen social facilities. And so this is how we categorize what we oversee. To the right, you will see our core areas of focus, our administrative services, our parks maintenance, as well as our recreation, our golf course operations, community center, sport tourism, and of course, our Parks and Recreation Commission that help guide our decisions as well. Here's a copy of our organizational chart from the top down. You see in the light blue boxes, that is showing our Parks and Recreation Division. Starting with the Parks and Recreation Director, with the Assistant Director, with two administrative assistants. And then that falls down into our Parks Maintenance Team, starting with our Parks and Recreation Superintendent, which is currently vacant, and our Park Supervisor with the crew. Here's a breakdown, five years of our department. So as you can see, we have Parks and Recreation listed as well as our total part-time employees. So if you look from twenty-two, we started with thirty, progressing throughout, we added an additional position. And that additional position is, it happened in twenty twenty-two. I wanted to start with the part-time. In twenty twenty-two, we had five and then we went in twenty twenty-three, we went to nine. Our thirty-one was the addition of a third crew leader for our park side. Our department mission is to enhance opportunities for the well-being of the community through recreation, tourism and environmental stewardship. And that is a copy of our, picture of our staff. Here you will see to your right, a copy of the cover page of our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which was adopted on November the sixteenth and twenty-ten. The Victoria Parks and Recre- Recreation, excuse me, twenty, excuse me. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan was initiated in late twenty twenty to establish an updated version of how the city's park system, recreation facilities and recreational programs would meet the evolving long-term needs of the Victoria residents and future residents. So here are a list of our goals and objectives. We first want to make sure that there is an equitable distribution of accessible park spaces and recreation facilities that support our community's interests. We also want to leverage the historic and natural assets that are within our parks, which makes us a beautiful site to visit. We also want to seek supplemental funding to support the department initiatives as well as monitoring, refining and expanding our programs. We want to meet the interests of our residents and our visitors. We also want to elevate our administrative practices. We want to make sure that our recreation and park service delivery is quality. And then lastly, we want to be able to enhance our current facility infrastructure and functionality so we can create this even balance of sports and tourism as well as local recreation use in Victoria. Here are some of our twenty twenty-five highlights for Parks and Recreation. As you can see, the first bullet for recreation is showing a two-year extension. That's from twenty twenty-seven to twenty twenty-eight for our annual TAF, which is our Texas Amateur Athletic Federation Winter Games. So we hosted flag football, we used the V I S D Aquatics Facility to host aquatic meets. And so these are just a few of the events that we bring into the city of Victoria. We also wanted to mention about the Fourth Annual Texas Youth Hunt. That is taking place with the Port of Victor, at the Port of Victoria in partnership. We also have the inaugural Citywide Halloween Party. In twenty twenty-four, we hosted our first one, we are going to do that again. And we wanted to mention that the Halloween event did feature a frightening haunted house and it was for all ages. So everyone could be included, included families. For Parks, our second annual restocking of the Rainbow Trout took place and that is in partnership with TPWD. And that is the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. We also installed five new scoreboards at the youth complex. As you know, that facility gets a lot of use, so it was great to show a quality product to all of our renters. We also had the Bronson Park Walking Troll and Sidewalk Improvements. And then lastly, we completed the installation of the Ethel Lee Tracy restroom. And that was very important that the new ba- bathroom was completed so it made it easier for those that went to the splash pad to conveniently go over to the restrooms. Here's a copy of our performance metrics. What you're seeing at the top left is showing programs, leagues and events. And so it's showing the actuals, the estimates and the projected. Starting in twenty twenty-four, it is showing that we had programs and events that were a bit high. We projected a little lower in twenty twenty-five and that was as a result of our recreation coordinator count went from three to two. So that was expected. Now we're projecting a much higher number going into twenty twenty-six. With the addition of staff, we're able to continue with our programming efforts. Here's our RV rentals by reservation days. This again is showing the actuals and projected as well. In twenty twenty-four, we added a RV rental tracking system online. Whereas before it was handled just in-house and there wasn't a true number that we could capture. So twenty twenty-four showed a convenient way for our guests to sign up for these RV spots. We have eighteen of them. And as you can see, we're projecting even higher in the next And as you can see, we're projecting even higher in the next few years because we're seeing quite an increase of those individuals coming to visit Victoria and using our R V spots. Our department efficiencies, the ways that we try to save money and time is that we have created partnerships with local agencies. We utilize actually the community center for our senior bingo program, and they provide snacks. They provide prizes for all the participants. We average around a hundred and twenty seniors at this location. We also added a third crew leader position. We wanted to anticipate the influx of interest in our sport fields, giving all the new renovations and all the enhancements that we're trying to do with our athletic facilities. And so we hired one directly for sport fields. We also established, as you've heard before in previous presentations, about the Special Events Review Committee. We have several special events that take place, and so this was the easy way to have a one stop shop and bring them to our department, and we can help them with their event and help them succeed. And then lastly, L E D lighting at the hike and bike trail, and also the Ethel Lee Tracy tennis courts. We have a lot of players that come at night, so we wanted to make sure that we not only provided that experience for them, that they can play past hours after they get off work, but also to reduce the utility expenses. Our twenty twenty six new programs and initiatives are showing the Tree City U S A ordinance. The Tree City Ordinance assigns clear authority over public trees. By becoming a tree city, your community receives flags, you have signs, there's other materials that proudly show that we are paying attention to our environmental efforts. We will gain national recognition for our commitment to environmental stewardship. We also are looking to implement with our Communications Department, we would like to roll out a campaign for Adopt a Park. Adopt a Park is a joint effort between the city and the residents to keep our parks clean and beautiful. This allows our residents and businesses and clubs and organizations to express their pride and their commitment while providing them with signage recognition. So you'll start to see those, and that will help us beautify our efforts here in the city of Victoria. We also have the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies. That is our CAPRA accreditation, and that demonstrates our ability to meet certain standards. This year, there's about eighty standards, and what we will do in January is we will submit an application to the National Parks and Recreation Agency saying that we will comply with these standards. The reaccreditation effort takes place every five years, so each year we will attempt to meet those standards. Our budget for Parks and Recreation is showing a little less than thirty two thousand two hundred and nineteen. And that is because of our pay program that decreases also in parks personnel to no longer splitting the fund for our golf personnel. The M and O is increased mainly to internal service charges. And then our one time costs, there is a transfer from Park C I P projects, and also for lawnmower replacement, which are five at this time. Our twenty twenty six revenues are showing around two hundred and thirty thousand three hundred. And as you can see to the graph to the left, it is showing revenue sourced by category, and we have several. We have our league revenue, as well as our sports complex, which is showing about ninety five thousand. That includes both the adult sports complex and the youth sports complex. Our pavilions and gazebo's are about twenty thousand dollars. And as you can see to the right, with all those categories, the year over year revenue comparison showing the preliminary numbers in twenty twenty six as two hundred and thirty thousand three hundred. The three year average from twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen, pre pandemic, was around two hundred and eighteen thousand. For F Y twenty twenty seven and begun, as I mentioned, we're working very, very hard to establish standard operating protocol, procedures, and policies within the Parks and Recreation Department. Going for the CAPRA accreditation will help us do that. We also want to plan and prepare a citywide network of multi use char trails in conjunction with the Victoria Active Transportation Plan. That is ongoing. We also are looking to implement the sports facility, facilities, excuse me, the Sports Facility Assessment Plan. That plan was in November of twenty twenty two. And so we're looking to take that report, analyze that, and incorporate that into what our facilities are showing today and see what progress we can make. And as you mentioned with C V B, the gathering and tracking of park visitor usage is of utmost importance to us. We have a lot of events, we have a lot of programs, and while we have a reservation software that we currently use to track those, we want to be able to gather more community numbers, more valid, realistic, accurate numbers. And so we're looking forward to working with C V B with Placer A I as well to bring that forward. And so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
I don't have any questions, but I have a suggestion. I've seen, and I don't know if it be a community appearance or parks, but I've seen wildflower grants, and I've always thought it would be nice if I'm walking down the trail, there's the trails and there was wildflowers growing along. And I'd like somebody to look into wildflower grants. The kids' play area at Riverside Park, it was on your twenty six thing. I've seen grants for accessibility features in play areas. I'd like that to be looked into too, because we don't really have any accessibility things at kids' parks in the city. And if we could get a grant for something, I think it'd be great. I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, no noted. Appreciate appreciate the input and the feedback.
There we do have some accessibility at some of the playgrounds. I'm thinking, I'm not sure all of them, but Ted Reed and Ethel Lee Tracy for sure.
Have some, but there are grants out there for them. Be nice if we could get some more features.
I don't disagree with you at all, but I didn't want people to think we didn't have it at all.
I appreciate it.
There may be more.
Can you go back to the fiscal year twenty six budget overview slide, please? One more right there, yeah. So when we, I guess for context, we've been working, staff has been working on this budget since early in the calendar year. And and so there was a decision that was made a couple of months ago to try and pull out the golf employees that are still partially funded by the general fund and through the Parks Department. That's been a slow progression as the golf course has just picked up in revenue. And so this again was put together with the idea that we would actually stop subsidizing personnel at the golf course and truly have the golf course truly run like an enterprise fund and cover all of its expenses. However, things have begun to paint a different picture. And so what is likely to happen, and what I want to be transparent with you about today, is that come August, this will probably look a little different, because golf revenues, as you'll see here in a bit, are plateauing. And so more than likely for next year, we will go back to funding a portion of the salaries from the golf course. At this point, we're thinking it might be a ninety five percent to five percent split, which in row numbers is about sixty five thousand dollars, just to give you a sense of what that looks like. And so come August, this probably won't be how it looks right now. Won't look in the red like it does right now, I guess, is the point. So.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions on Parks and Recreation?
Other than it was a great show. Thank you. Thank you for the came out of nowhere, right?
You said you were gonna do wardrobe changes.
I was gonna change my voice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Lisa on Parks?
We're good.
Okay.
So now I will talk about the community center. Our department description is showing some highlights of our most popular areas, which would be our arena, the dome, and the annex. And as you can see, the arena holds forty six thousand six hundred and forty one square foot covered. The dome is twelve thousand three hundred and five square feet, and our annex is seven thousand two hundred and seventy nine. I wanted to highlight also about our conference room, because that's been getting more use. It's three hundred and forty two square feet, but we are noticing we get a lot of different uses for this small space. The highlights that you see at the bottom that are in asterisks are showing just some additional offerings from the community center staff. They set up, they tear down. We have a wireless public address system, we have internet access, and we also have an onsite A T M. So the pictures to the right are showing those as well. Our organizational chart is showing in the light blue. As you can see, we have a community center supervisor, Pedro Zindejas. We also have an administrative assistant, Ms. Barbara. I'm sure you guys are quite familiar with her. And then we also have four facility setup assistants. The blue box to the upper right is showing our sport tourism recreation supervisor position that is funded out of this account by twenty percent. Here's our full time count. As you can see, there are no changes for the last five years. So all of those square footage is being covered by seven employees. Our community center is showing seven, seven, seven all the way through. We have two part time employees as well. The Victoria Community Center offers a space for small and large gatherings, recreation programs, community events, and tournaments. And we try to maintain the facility at a high standard, and that takes a lot of work. We want to diversify our gatherings and events for the community. And we also try to be a resource for the entire region, and that was changed into a more broader scope. Our goals and objectives, as you can see to the right, our staff is holding up ring pops. We call it one ring, one vision, one team. And so we want to keep them motivated as they try to carry out some of these goals and objectives. We try to offer flexible, affordable rental options to accommodate various event sizes, which we get all the time. We also want to establish partnerships so we can increase the community engagement. And we want, we want to be able to implement a post event survey, so we can get that feedback and encourage repeat visits. We also want to increase our facility usage by conducting weekly recreation programs, so we can utilize our Monday through Friday. And then, of course, we want to expand our efforts to boost our visibility in the community and beyond. The twenty twenty five highlights are as follows. Of course, we approved the Community Center Master Plan, which is awesome. The Victoria Livestock Show took place again in February, huge success, as well as the South Texas Farmer Ranch Show. We also had the Mid Coast Hurricane Disaster Conference. And the reason why it's on the twenty twenty five highlights is that we had a chair count of almost eight hundred individuals there. And that was, they used the entire building, so we're looking to have more events of that size. We also had the mysterious circus, and I bet you're wondering why that's up there. Well, for entertainment purposes, we had a two week length stay. So they came to our facility and stayed for two weeks, and that certainly brought in a lot of traffic and interest and more exposure to the city of Victoria. Our senior citizens sock hop, we're starting to see more of an increase of these types of free events that take place at the community center, and it was really a joy to join a partnership with Harbor Hospice, and that will be happening again. And then, of course, numerous birthday parties, reunions, church festivals, and fundraisers. So we're excited for the Community Center Master Plan to move forward. Our performance metrics are as follows. We have city rentals, and then we also have outside rentals. So the darker blue box is showing our outside rentals. We anticipated through the five years, if you look at twenty twenty six, it's showing the metrics a little bit lower, but that's a new unknown due to the reservation, the renovation, excuse me. So we want to make sure we were kind of modestly estimating that, but we anticipate that number will be much higher. Our department efficiencies, I wanted to highlight through our Human Resources Department, we utilize an A A R P Senior Community Service. It was an employee program, and it helped to increase our customer service response. We were able to utilize a volunteer at our community center, and they helped to answer numerous calls that came in and just customer service health when we had someone just walk in and had questions. So that was wonderful. We also implemented a dry cleaning service. Normally, our staff would actually wash and dry and iron. And so obviously, that's not an efficient use of time. So we decided to implement the dry cleaning services to reduce our staff labor. We also have updated the community center rules and regulations to improve our internal and external communication, one of which is our police security rules and regulations, as well as our fire marshal. So those contract details have been updated to go with the trends that happen. So we don't want to put out outdated information, so everyone is safe and sound for their event. And then, most importantly, for the community center, if you walk through our facility, we have a lot of assets. And one of the things that happens is that we want to make sure we have ample inventory provided for community members that want to utilize our facility. So we did a huge robust building assess asset management tracking system. So it's super detailed, so we can work hard. When the new facility is built, we are right on point. Our new programs and initiatives, we want to facilitate the Community Center and Fairgrounds Master Plan long range recommendations for event programming and facility improvement at the community center. And as you can see, the picture to the right was showcased in our last council meeting, the proposed design site plan. We also want to expand the existing Civic Rec Recreation Management Software, allowing for online reservations. Currently, anyone that comes to the community center walks in, uses email, or uses the phone. There is nothing that has an online presence, and so we're looking to implement that in twenty twenty six. We just did the run through our Civic Rec that we currently currently use for registration across the board in all of our departments, with the exception of golf. They have another software as well, but this really allows us to engage with the public in a more convenient way. Our citywide Halloween event, it will be the second year, and we are joining in partnership with more city departments, so we look forward to this being even bigger. And then also, very, very important, is that we launch a community center brand. We really want to highlight the investment that the city and the trust that they have put into us to build this new facility. And so we need a campaign that really demonstrates that type of commitment to the community and how far we're trying to reach out. So we'll be working with our communications department to make that happen. Our budget for the community center is showing an increase of four hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and sixty five. And that is due to the pay program, a net increase to internal service charges, no capital requests for this year, but obviously, the transfer for the community center expansion. Our revenues for the community center are seven hundred and fifty nine thousand eight hundred. The three year actual average between pre pandemic, two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and nineteen is showing an average of seven hundred and fifty one thousand, so we're right around target there. There were no rates adjusted in twenty twenty five and no adjustment in twenty twenty six. It's broken down into interest income, other financing sources, and our rental fees. For twenty twenty seven and beyond, implementation of the Community Center Master Plan, and then most importantly, is operating a community center as an enterprise fund, similar to golf. We want to be able to recover those operational costs. Additionally, we would love to support the sport tourism efforts that are taking place. Jerry Ortiz and his team are already retaining new clients and new tournament directors to our parks facilities. And so we're building that database yet again, and so we're excited about that. We're looking to enhance the recreation division by moving the sports tourism recreation supervisor to the community center with the recreation coordinators. One of the proposed designs in there was a gym and things of that sort, so it just made sense to actually move them. So it just made sense to actually move them there so we can continue programming efforts on a higher level, not just events, but even more. And then, lastly, building a strong online presence through social media and events, enhancing the brand of the community center. And I'll be happy to answer any questions should you have those at this time.
Any questions?
Could you just show the budget breakdown one more time?
Sure.
Sorry, I was trying to make notes.
Thank you. That's not it.
Is that the slide you're talking about, April?
That of the community center.
No, one of the community center.
Oh, sorry.
Community.
Okay, I'm clicking now. Okay. There you go.
You want to go back to where it looks bigger?
No, it's good.
Okay.
Any other questions on the community center? It's going to be a busy couple of years for the community center.
Yes, sir.
The only thing I'll add is she transitions to the third presentation is, you know, you heard her talk quite a bit about brand and enhancing the brand of the community center. The community center used to have somewhat of an active social media page that's kind of gone dormant. And so it basically brings to light a little bit of, of the reasoning why it makes sense to continue to invest in this long-term embedded communication structure that Ashley has for her department. Because we have many departments that have needs on marketing events, marketing themselves, creating brands, right, doing all that kind of thing. And certainly, you know, Parks and Rec has staff that can, you know, post on social media, right? But it's not necessarily their expertise or full-time job to be focused on, you know, marketing, advertising, brand creation, brand management, et cetera. And so one of the things that we, we want to do through adding more staff under Ashley's team is, is, is to be able to help support these types of things to a greater degree than we, than we have been able to. So just food for thought.
Thank you, sir. All right, and Riverside Golf Course. Our department description for the Riverside Golf Course is as follows. We have six thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine yards with a par seventy-two. It was designed for the Ralph Klemmer's nineteen forty-five design. Amenities include a full-length driving range, a short game practice area, and a five-hole practice course. And of course, we want to highlight our golf pro shop. I was just in there the other day. There's lots of equipment for sale, apparel and accessories to enhance your game. And it's a one-stop shop, so you can come in and get all your golfing needs met. We are managed by the Parks and Recreation Department, and we provide a well-maintained scenic setting for golfers of all skill levels. This is our organizational chart, and as you can see in the blue, we have a golf course professional. We also have a clubhouse supervisor, as well as a golf course superintendent, golf course mechanic, and also, we have crew leaders and a maintenance team. And that is showing a count of eleven employees altogether. So here's a breakdown for the last five years. Pretty consistent numbers, no changes, but did want to add that in twenty twenty-three, there was the clubhouse supervisor position that was added. The part-time employees, those vary. We typically hold four to five for fifteen to twenty-five hours per week. It just depends on the time of year. And the two positions there are the golf shop attendant, as well as the guest services attendant. So if anyone's looking for a job, you can come on out. Our mission is to provide that enjoyable, well-conditioned course to complement the park, Riverside Park, and enrich the recreational opportunities available to the community. Actually, you can see here, this is our maintenance team. Thought we would highlight them. They typically stay in the background, but I made them take a picture. All right, our goals and objectives. These are pretty standard objectives, but you'll see some enhancements to some of the objectives as well moving forward. We want to always maintain that competitive fee structure, so that way we keep members coming back. We want to make sure the customer service at the courses and the events are engaging, all of that. But we also, more importantly, want to make sure that we're maintaining what we have, that high-quality green surface, want to make sure it's smooth and it's firm, minimal grain, all of that, so they can have optimum speed and they want to come back. We want to expand the practice and tee boxes regularly to improve the player experience and accommodate the increased usage. The aesthetic appeal, you'll hear that theme over and over again. No one wants to come to a golf course that doesn't look pretty, right? And so as you see throughout the presentation, you can see extra effort and the city's commitment to make that happen. And then, lastly, the course efficiency and user experience. We want to add those cart paths and some of those high-traffic areas to facilitate just the traffic moving well on the turf, reducing the wear on the turf, excuse me. The 2025 highlights, we have the ten-year rerating by the Texas Golf Association, and that shows updated course information for accurate player handicapping and tournament host sites. So again, we're doing quite well in that area. We also completed a three-year agreement to host the AJGA, which is the program and tournament that we host every year. We have it now from twenty-six to twenty-eight. The city actually contributes to that fifty thousand dollars, and it brings in a lot of traffic to Victoria. We installed a new water well pump, motor, and casing, and that was huge for us. The golf course also holds a pond area. It's part of the aesthetic appeal, but also coincides with our duck ponds. So they work simultaneously, and so we needed to update that. That was huge for our department, so we really appreciate that. The completion of our maintenance team break room, we hold a lot of meetings in there now. We don't just eat there, which is awesome. They really enjoy it. It is very, very hot. And so being able to come in and take a break is just awesome. We are seeking bids for the parking lot development. That is going to be completed, and we're excited about that because that's the first thing you see when you come to the golf course before you even step on the grounds. So that needed updating. Our performance metrics, over the last few years, these are actually very standard numbers. There's no real changes. We projected pretty high in twenty twenty-six just because of the traffic flow and the enhancements we believe are going to bring even more participation. We also have daily green fees, the total by year. Again, you're not going to see a huge deviation. As you can see, we have projected about that seventeen thousand, excuse me, seventeen thousand. But what happened was we projected a little bit less, but as you can see, we're looking forward to enhancing those each year. Our annual pass total by the year, same scenario with our projections. We were being a bit modest, but we're actually doing quite well with our annual pass rates as well. Our department efficiencies, as I mentioned, the new well pump, as well as enhancing the water quality management, and that reduces the algae growth. Visibility-wise, we want to make sure that everything looks clear and clean. We save costs with outside services because we do have a golf mechanic. And they not only service the golf course equipment, they actually service the entire department's equipment. We also have a park supervisor who is quite handy. She does a great job with our equipment as well. So put those efforts together, we're doing an awesome job to save on cost. Added heating elements to the irrigation control boxes, preventing freeze damage, very critical to consistent play at the golf course. And then also monitored the GPS system, allowing for the pace of play to be consistent. Our new programs and initiatives for 2026, adding cart paths to create additional parking in those high-traffic areas, expansion of the tee boxes. We're going to enhance the parking lot and the cart staging area, using, utilizing reserve funds and to provide a more welcoming space. We are going to increase golf course social media presence to boost the engagement and visibility. We want to make sure that that's happening more regularly. And then also, we want to try a different way of creating these revenue generators, which is targeting golf course promotions and advertising on the GPS systems. They have those GPS systems. It gives them weather updates, so why not create an opportunity for them to invest in our golf course or specials or daily rates, things of that sort? So we're looking to get very creative with that. Our budget for the golf course has increased one hundred and nineteen thousand, eight. And that is because of the pay program. And as city manager had just mentioned, the golf fund will now pay a hundred percent of positions. And then the M and O, the increase mainly due to the equipment lease and the cost of goods sold, and that means the alcohol, the uniforms, things of that sort. The capital, there's no computer replacement in twenty-six, and the one-time is showing the cart pass and the equipment. Our revenues for the golf course are approximately one point four million. Our green fees are a little over a million. Our food and beverage brings in close to two hundred thousand, and our merchandise sales are about seventy thousand. The green fees were adjusted in twenty-five, but there's no adjustment in twenty-six. And as you can see, the projections, we're right on target going into the preliminary for twenty twenty-six.
And again, just to be clear, this is going to change, and so come August, it, if you go back a slide, we're going to...
Didn't go back. Sorry, can you help me go back?
She pulled a Jessica.
I was just wrong.
Yeah, sorry about that. Go forward.
Yes, sir.
So come August, this won't be representative of a hundred percent of positions. As I alluded to earlier, it'll revert back to ninety-five percent of positions, so just to be clear. And if you go to the next slide, so again, it's just the flattening of the revenues. And we've been on a consistent pattern of adjusting green fees every two years, and we just did. And so we wouldn't have one until January of twenty twenty-seven. And so we'd rather just be proactive and not put that burden all on the golf fund just yet after all.
What, what is the current annual pass fee?
I don't know that right offhand.
Okay, no worries.
Steven, do you know?
It was raised recently.
Do you know by her?
No. Recently. You raised it recently.
Yeah, we raised it recently. Yeah, we made some changes in January of this year.
I have a question. Are we projected, this shows that the revenue, expenses will be more than revenue. And the year that we're in, is that going to happen too? The year we're in right now, are, do we project to take away from our fund balance? Or are we going to add to the fund balance? For the present year that we're in?
Yes.
Short answer is yeah.
Yes, but just for one-time expenses, it was just drawing down excess working, working capital. The way, the way it is now is presented is our recurring expenses exceed recurring revenues. So that's why we're having to make that adjustment to balance it. The last year was balanced, or this twenty-five is balanced.
Okay.
But twenty-five is not covering a hundred percent of personnel, which we thought we'd be in a position to make that jump, which is why this looks like you described, but we'll adjust it for August.
We still have an excess fund, right, balance?
Yes, for the golf, yes. Which we're actually looking to draw down in one-time expenses, and so you heard their talk about the parking lot.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
For twenty twenty-seven and beyond, we are still following the recommendations that are provided by the USGA. We want to make sure that our irrigation system is updated, as well as our greens renovation and our fairway sprigging. We want to continue to enhance the water features, the staging area renovation with the cover, the cart barn, and to renovate the multi-use shed. So these are on our radar, and these are being discussed. So I'll be happy to answer any questions should you have them at this time.
Any other questions on the golf course? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job, Lisa. Thank you for tackling all three. Really appreciate it.
You had the heavy lifting today.
Were we taking a break?
Huh? Did I say Jessica? I have Jessica on my mind. I'm sorry, Jessica, again. We're going to continue as scheduled, and we're going to ask Greg to come up and present the utility fund, and then we can go on a break after that.
Sounds good.
All right.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today I'll present, I'll be presenting the Public Works Water and Wastewater Combined Fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget presentation. The department description, this department consists of six divisions. The water distribution department, the water treatment, wastewater treatment, wastewater collections, industrial waste and pretreatment, and environmental. The city has one surface water treatment plant, nine active water wells, two wastewater treatment plants, eighteen lift stations, approximately three hundred and ninety-nine miles of water distribution lines, and three hundred and fifty miles of wastewater collection lines. The organization chart. Everything right now, of course, is under the Director of Public Works, with the Assistant Director is being recommended for this year. There are two operations and maintenance manager positions. One operations and maintenance manager has three divisions, which is the pretreatment, streets, and traffic. And the other operations and maintenance manager has water treatment, distributions and collections, and the wastewater plant. The black box indicated above shows that the streets and traffic control are paid out of a separate fund. Department employees. The water treatment plant hasn't changed, stayed at fourteen. The wastewater treatment plant has had one frozen position in two thousand and twenty-four and has been implemented in two thousand and twenty-five, and this year as well as twenty twenty-six. The water distribution has went from thirty-one to twenty-eight. They actually had four engineering staff that was reduced, and then the addition of one assistant director position. The wastewater collection has went from twenty to fifteen in two thousand and twenty-five and twenty-six and stayed the same with the frozen positions of three equipment operators and two maintenance workers. Industrial waste pretreatment has stayed the same at five. Frozen positions, of course, mentioned just previously, was six in total, with eighty-two full-time positions for fiscal year twenty twenty-six and one part-time employee. Our department mission is to provide a safe, consistent production and distribution of potable water and a safe, reliable treatment and collection of wastewater. Of course, this is our staff here, and they're out there knocking it out every day. Goals and objectives. Our goal is always to have zero TCQ water and wastewater plant violations. Our goal is also to maintain higher water quality standards to remain in the Texas Optimization Program and being a part of the superior water, and having our superior water designation. So when you first drive into the town and it says superior water, that's what we want to make sure we have right there. Also, we continue to, to replace water meters, and we're currently on phase two. Going to go into phase three this upcoming year. Develop programs for aging infrastructure and continue to fill vacancies. I've had previous presentations showing how we don't have a lot of staff, and we're continuing to go ahead and address that. Fiscal twenty twenty-five highlights. Currently, we just had the fifty-nine lift station across Walmart on Rio Grande come through council, and that was approved. So that was, is going to go ahead and replace all the intake piping throughout that lift station. So that is gonna go ahead and replace all the intake piping throughout that lift station. We're also gonna replace pumps and valves at Loop four sixty-three and Highway seventy-seven lift stations. And we changed down a hundred and seventy-nine large water meter chambers ranging from two-inch to six-inch. We completed a bioquatic study for implementation of the groundwater exchange program in case we need it. Now, as a reminder, that is done every three years. We completed a water plant three disinfection process, updated that. We updated the graphics and communications with the surface water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plants for supervisory control and data acquisition. I want to give a shout out to the IT department and helping us with that. Their skated technician Doug has done a phenomenal job and has put us on the right track. And he's been a wonderful help in these past year, James? A little bit over a year, just a phenomenal job. Our performance metrics. The metrics above are based on individual work orders processed through City Works. The city continues to replace and maintenance lift station pumps and motors throughout its eighteen lift stations. The city has replaced over six hundred and fifty residential water meters and eighteen hundred and thirty radio transmitters this year alone and flushed a hundred and ninety-seven fire hydrants for water quality. One thing I do want to go ahead and bring up is if you look in twenty twenty-two in blue where it says eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty-four total work orders completed, you'll see a steady decline from eleven nine fifty-four to twenty twenty-three, nine thousand six hundred and five. And twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry, twenty, yeah, twenty twenty-four, six thousand five hundred and forty. And that's, of course, due to the, you know, staff that we haven't had. We've had a lot of people leave. We've had a couple of meters installed ranging from two fifty-six all the way down to seven. That may be someone that wants to go ahead and get their water meter replaced or someone moves out and they want their water meter taken out. That's why that number's low. Total meters replaced, that reflects two thousand twenty-four is when we started replacing water meters. A total of two thousand two hundred and ten was done that year. Nine hundred and thirty-four, which was done this year. That's with the six hundred and fifty plus what we do with staff. And then that's not including the radio transmitters. And we're projecting for twenty twenty-six to have roughly six hundred. Departmental efficiencies. We're always looking at ways to be more efficient. We're trying to cross-train the water plant and wastewater plant maintenance crews. We're changing our disinfection chemical at the water plant, which was a reduced cost and improved water quality. And our utility distribution and collection crews are able to facilitate meter installs, water leaks, and sewer stop shoes with the limited personnel they currently have. Fiscal year twenty twenty-six new programs and initiatives. We allowed to increase frequency of lift station cleaning to prevent grease and odor issues. I think that's, we've seen a reduction in that of odor complaints recently. We also have an in-depth assessment of sledge hauler fees. We're currently in the process of doing a water feasibility study and completion of the final report is expected in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-six. We're also researching alternative disinfection methods for the wastewater treatment plant at Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant. And we're currently in the process of rehabbing our groundwater wells. Fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget overview. We've had a decrease of four thousand nine dollars, I'm sorry, four million nine thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars or twelve point seventy percent. In this slide for the budget highlights, we'll see why. The personnel went up five point nine five percent for the pay program, addition of one assistant director of public works. And half of engineering services will now be funded by the water fund. M and O, the water fund is going to cover half of the engineering department personnel for a point thirty percent increase. The capital is going to be raised by a two point five two percent recurring increase due to purchase of replacement laptops. And one-time expenses, that one was a significant drop due to includes the water plant chlorine scrubber and filter replacement. And the one-time decreased due to fewer CIP projects for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Fiscal year twenty twenty-six revenues. The total utility revenues were twenty-six thousand, I'm sorry, twenty-six million nine hundred and eighty thousand, which a lot of that was, well, fifty-one percent of that was water sales or thirteen million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. The sewer sales, or forty-eight percent of it, was a total of twelve million eight hundred and twenty thousand. Other financing was point one was twenty-five thousand and miscellaneous was another ten thousand. But no major increases for revenue. But we are in the process of doing a rate study to begin in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Fiscal year twenty twenty-seven and beyond. The CIP planning will be based on water feasibility study improvements, construction of the wastewater influence screening structure at the Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant, completion of all six filters at the surface water plant. We're gonna start our second in two thousand twenty-six. Completion of water and wastewater supervisory control and data acquisition funded by the CDBG MIT grant, which might start in fiscal year twenty twenty-six if funding is received on time. And start the first phase of the influen-infiltration study to rehabilitate seven hundred and eighty manholes. You don't have any questions? Or if you do have any questions, please let me know.
Could you go back to the revenues page? Please?
I pulled it to Jessica, sorry. Sorry, Jessica.
That wasn't me. That wasn't me. I did not. That's like a different, that's like a different department altogether.
Was it? Oh, okay.
I want revenues.
Now it's gonna be Greg.
He was a little out. Why is it so much?
Okay.
Oh, compared to...
Yeah, all the other years.
Yeah. Probably conservative.
So you said revenues, correct?
The revenue page. There you go, stop. Why twenty-six million when it's been twenty-seven million for the last four or five years? I'm just curious. And I understand being conservative, but...
Go for it. Yeah, a good portion of that is interest income. And just with uncertainty in the rate environment and the expectation that those will come down. That's the reason for staying conservative with that. In terms of water and sewer sales, we're staying at the same level simply because we're not seeing the growth in the accounts. And without a change in rates, we can't expect to bring in more revenue from that.
It still seems like a big decrease to me. But that's okay. I trust you.
Yeah, and even, and this year in the projections for twenty-five, that twenty-seven point seven, that includes a transfer back from construction of some excess funds, which those are things that we don't budget for. They just, when they, when they happen, we send the money back.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mine's a little easier. Greg, on the work orders, recognizing that you have challenges related to personnel, have you, have work orders stayed consistent? And so when we're looking at that decrease in the number of work orders that are completed, is it because the same number of work orders are coming in? Or have the work orders decreased as well?
Well, I think we're actually having more work orders come in. And the reason why is because we have programs like See Click Fakes, everything else that we might see. In addition to, you know, people are a lot more vocal. You know, they'll be on social media, they'll go and call in. So my personal opinion is I think we're seeing more work orders come in.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's a good spot for a break.
Yes, it sounds good to me.
Okay, very good.
Fifty-minute break, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. All right, we are back after a short break. Mr. Garza, what's next?
We're gonna continue as described on the list. And so next up is Ken talking about Public Works General Fund. Welcome, Mr. Gil.
Thank you. I'm gonna hit the Public Works, the General Fund portion of Public Works. A little bit about our department. We consist of street department, streets and drainage, and traffic, which is signs, signals, and school zones. Stormwater division, and then street sweeping. We have about three hundred and twenty-six miles of streets, ninety-three miles of open channel, about two hundred and sixty miles of underground storm sewer, and then a hundred and three traffic signals and about fifteen thousand signs. Thing about this traffic signal is even though they're on state highways, they are the city's maintenance. Organizational chart, Greg kind of went over a big part of it. It's myself, Director of Public Works, and then the Assistant Director, and then our Operations Manager. And then following under that is Traffic Control and Street Department. If you'll notice, the ones in black are funded through the revenue fund. And that does include our street sweeping division. They're funded under the pretreatment of the water fund revenue. Department employees, we've been holding consistency since twenty-four at, since twenty twenty-four at thirty-eight. We have four frozen positions at Street Department. Want to make a point, those are frozen, not eliminated. And that includes even in the revenue side. They're not eliminated, they're just frozen for now. We're having the same problem Greg is over in revenue, is getting the, keeping employees at Street Department. We're a little short there, too. Department mission, enhance the quality of life for residents and businesses with the highest quality design and cost-effective services to our street, our drainage, our traffic network, and exceptional customer care. And of course, our primary focus, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. Left is our Street Department with the radar. And on the right is the Traffic Division with a bucket truck behind them. Goals and objectives, improve the street ride quality, provide prompt response to downed trees. We have, if a tree falls into right-of-way or into the street, we get called, we go cut it up and pick it up. We try to do that within forty-eight hours. Most of the time, it's sooner than that. Maintain and improve storm drainage systems. That includes the street sweeping, ditch and pipe cleaning to prevent flooding and water damage. Install battery backup systems in all the traffic control cabinets and fix broken and crooked signals. The backup batteries are important because when the power goes out, that's when those signals go into flash. If we have a battery backup system that's working, it will not flash. It will just immediately go into its cycle. And then when it's off, it goes back. But we're working on getting those battery backups, starting with our major corridors. Upgrade signs in area of north, north of Zach Lance. That includes the stop signs and street signs. Some of our highlights, we cleaned and reshaped Circle Street Detention Basin as part of the West Outfall. That's a trampoline that we pulled out. Commercial and residential street sweeping, we do that on a quarterly cycle. Replaced, converted three traffic control cabinets from T-one to T-two. Those are just newer cabinets, better, can handle the heat better. Navarro in Colorado, Stockbauer in Salem, and North in Laurent. We fixed some signal timing and detection at Millet Drive and Zach Lance. And then at Ben Jordan and Airline, we continue to work on that as we move forward. Completed major hot mix level up on Surtucci Street and three intersections in Blue Ridge subdivision and sections of Odom. And what I mean by that is instead of just fixing a pothole, is Street Department may go out there and in that one area, there's fifty potholes. Well, instead of just doing one at a time, get a lot of mix and spread it out. It's gonna be thin, but they'll spread it out, cover all the potholes, and that eliminates maybe fifty potholes at once. It takes a lot of mix and it's a lot of time because it's handwork. But we're actively doing that and looking at each one saying, let's just, let's just cover it up. Performance metrics, went over, these are some metrics that are work order-based. So in twenty-three, I'm gonna hit the highlight one, the big green one. That's the potholes repaired. And you can see it's twenty-two thousand in twenty-three, twenty-four was fifteen thousand. We're projecting eighteen thousand this year and then seventeen thousand in twenty-six. They go up and down due to a lot of times the rain. More rain we get, sometimes more potholes. But I also want to say that, that out of these numbers, seventy to eighty percent, we do proactively. That's because we have those three patch trucks, that one that added in twenty twenty. That's important. We don't wait for that phone call. We get out there proactively. We got eight zones, they'll hit a zone with two trucks and do them all. So that's something to look at on this chart is it's not reactive. Departmental efficiencies, cleared the detention basins and right-of-way using the deforester. That's the Parks Department has a deforester machine. They've been gracious enough to let us use it and we can clear a lot of the trees and things using that deforester machine in lieu of hiring a contractor. We completed and scheduled replacement of conductor wires at troubled intersections. Those conductor wires are old, they're twenty sometimes plus-year-old. Anything else sitting out in the sun, you can imagine they start shorting out. A good example of that one is Main and Loop four sixty-three. It'd go on flash, it seemed like every morning. Bam, you'd go up, it'd be flash. They had to replace some of that conductor wire that was on those span wires. Helped immensely. Implementing intelligent traffic systems, it's called an ITS system. That enables us to remotely monitor those signals. We're not there a hundred percent working on radios and things, getting them all timed in together. But that's gonna help us diagnose and reset signals in the shop versus having to drive out and go to each one. New programs and initiatives, created in-house crack seal program by utilizing existing street staff. This is important because each year we used to budget two hundred thousand for crack seal. Hire a contractor, they'd go out and crack seal the streets. Our Street Department Superintendent and our Operations Manager has found a new product that allows us to utilize our crews as crack seal. It's not that three hundred and fifty-degree hot pour rubber, which can be a little dangerous. It's more of a cold-applied, they've researched, it's a good product. We're gonna try it out this year and hit those residential streets. It's important to keep those streets sealed from the moisture. We want to replace the time clocks in school zone flashers and migrate into the existing software system that allows us to remotely monitor. Another time saver that, an initiative that allows us to be able to, if the school calls up and says, "Hey, I want to change my times", you know, we're changing it fifteen minutes, that's huge. We can change it right then and be done with it. We can also do it every, you know, before school starts, make sure they're all ready to go. Another one, replace a bucket truck with a truck that does not require CDL. That's one of our issues of getting employees is that CDL licensing. We're gonna get a smaller bucket truck. It can reach every signal. The only thing it can't reach is the hugest tall street lights on Loop four sixty-three. We still have a regular truck for that. But it's gonna be a great saver and we'll be able to utilize it with all our traffic staff. Next, complete the development of the Stormwater Utility. Seen that, we're working on, working through that. Budget overview, we're down a hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. Gonna kind of go with the highlights. Of course, we had our pay program, which went up. We had the one-time stipend. We moved the Stormwater Crew to one-time. This is in anticipation of that Stormwater Utility. It, you know, if that's adjusts, of course, we can adjust this back into our revenue. The M and O side, reduction in construction fund. And again, moving some of that drainage program to one-time, the mowing cost. And that was a big cost on that one. We increased the enterprise lease program and VES and James's costs. You're welcome, James. Laptop replacements and capital and in one-time expenses, striping program. Get back onto that, we kind of skipped a year. We're gonna hit the drainage program and two hybrid traffic sensors. That's the AI radar and detection. They're pretty cool. It does radar and camera. Right now, we've got, most of them are just camera. When it's foggy, rainy, they get dirt on them. You'll go up there and that cycle just keeps running through. You'll go up there and that cycle just keeps running through and you're like, there's nobody there. Well, the AI and that radar will not have to worry about that dust and dirt. They, they got past that. It keeps traffic counts, it keeps track of accidents. It's amazing what new technology is. We're working on getting two of them. We have two now. Next one is replace the box spreader for ice rock. We've got two old ones, we want to replace both of those. And then again, replace that traffic control bucket truck to a non-CDL truck. 2027 and beyond, enhance the street sweeping program. We want to keep moving that forward. We'd like to add another truck at some point and another staff. Keep that street sweeping, increase that residential sweeping. That keeps our Stormwater System clean. Use that Stormwater Utility to clean and reshape outfalls. Clean the, the large diameter storm sewer and then repair some of those concrete line ditches. We want to upgrade the signals on Navarro Corridor. We're going to work through that with our NPO and Tech Dot. They're doing three of them now, but we want to continue that all the way up. And then routine maintenance for, program for medians. Keep those medians clean, keep the grass off of them, and move forward on that, that aesthetic enhancement of Victoria. That ends my program, and I do want to tell, hang on, I got to throw Jessica under the bus again. I didn't include Saran Wrap for a roof, but we can do that. I like the rain, so she's going to have to live with the rain, but we'll just give her Saran Wrap. Okay, questions?
How much do the, how much do the AR radar things cost?
About $27,000.
When Tech Dot does the trail, they're going to do the crosswalks and stuff on Main Street and on, from the loop north on Navarro. Are they going to enhance the signals at all?
They're going to put, they are going to do, enhance on the Main Street for the sidewalk. They're going to make them all pedestrian. They're going to put Pet Heads.
Will they have AR radar things?
They won't have the AI, the radar. They, they will, it's kind of a separate controller for pedestrian. We want to get, start putting them in. We've got an idea, kind of give you where we're at now. Tech Dot has some money called Carbon Reduction. And there's some money left in that Carbon Reduction Fund. And that is the one corridor that we're looking at. We can get about 10 of those, and we're kind of Maggie's working through it. But we want to hit them all on Main Street and then do a couple on the high intersections, the high traffic volumes on Navarro. But yes, Main Street is one we'd like to do because we can get them all.
Ken, on the traffic signal side, there's been discussion about a new traffic signal on Navarro at, I think it's Broadmoor that supports the new Village or because of the new shopping center there? What's the status and timing on that?
Tech Dot's working on that, and there's kind of a little timing and coordination. We've got to get that company that's doing the, the development, they're working on the design of Broadmoor.
Okay.
We're going to widen it, of course, curb and gutter it. Well, they've got to get that to Tech Dot and to their engineers so they can make sure that the signals aren't in the roadway. So we're close, and you'll be seeing soon a contribution in aid or whatever they call it, a Tech Dot, advanced funding agreement that will, will pay a portion of that signal. Probably the, some of the design costs.
Are we talking about?
Coming forward.
Before the end of this year, we're talking about in '26?
Before the end of this year.
Okay.
The issue with signals is there's sometimes a six-month to nine-month delay time just for the pole and mast arms. But that's one of those things, we got to get it ordered and get it in.
Got it, okay, thank you.
You said you had a, two AI radars already installed in town?
Yes, Whispering Creek in Navarro, and I believe the other one is going to be at the traffic, the new Public Safety Building. That's where the other one's going to be, it's, it's already planned and contractors putting it up.
And where are the other two new ones going?
The other ones, the two new ones, we're looking at potentially Navarro and Glasgow. No, for sure the school, okay? Tropical, I'm sorry, Tropical and Carriage Point and Mockingbird, and then Tropical and Main. Again, if we can get that carbon reduction money, we want to, we'll get, get it from that money and then we'll be able to put these other two somewhere else. Again, a high-volume intersections.
In one of your, I think it's at 2027 and beyond? I think you had it all, 2026 and beyond. You said the outfalls were going to be cleaned, scheduled to be cleaned?
Yes.
Is the outfall that runs from behind the new safety building to?
That's one of them.
Vine to Red River to Bluff to Staten? Is the whole thing going to be done?
What we're looking at there, and that's part of that Stormwater Utility Program, is do that in sections. The, the upper section of West Outfall, it's interesting because a lot of times you want to work downstream up.
Right.
But we, we can do the upstream and get that cleaned up. The Gabian's got some silt and debris in it, so we could do that first. We can also do that section there by the Public Safety Building. Do that second. West, West Outfall is unique in that we don't have to follow necessarily that pattern of downstream up. So it's in there, but it's in the further, I think it's in 28, 29 for West Outfall. But that can be adjusted.
A Red River into, traffic on Red River into the park facilitates a lot of visitors going to the park. And that West Outfall in that region from Red River to Bluff looks really bad.
And that part, we, that's in that same thing, the Stormwater Drainage Utility. That whole, all of West Outfall's in there. It's just, which, like I said, again, West Outfall is unique. We can do any section first.
Was that 2027 and beyond? Is, is that the slide that was on?
Yes. And that's, we'll bring that forward as we talk more in the Stormwater Utility, that we can talk more about projects and some timing and shift those around if need be.
I have no more questions.
Any other question?
All right.
You're passing the witness?
Did I pass?
Thank you, Mr. Gil.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ken. Well, we'll keep it going and Darryl will come up and present Environmental Services.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Make this as painless as possible. So we're going to talk about the Environmental Services Department. So our budget for next year. And so just kind of what we cover, of course, all of our solid waste needs. The landscaping, beds, mowing, weed control, contract management. You know, we have several large contracts, like the landfill compost facility, landfill gas. And then we oversee Keep Victoria Beautiful and just general waste reduction, education, and things like that. So this is our org chart. There is a change from last year, and I'll cover the change in a little bit. But essentially, we, I spoke to council when we were doing my annual report and we were unable to keep those two people that we needed in the headcount to do the Wheaty Lot Abatement Program. I will tell you, we can do it better than private contractors can, but I can if I don't have the people. And so that has been taken out of the budget. Now, it's something we'll look at as we go forward and continue to monitor and, and maybe be able to do something when we talk about the Stormwater Program. So here again, on our department overview, you can see that we've got the 29 down from 31. I do want to draw a quick attention to the one automated driver that we added in 2023. That was that seventh route we've talked about, and I have not been able to put that out because we've been short drivers. But I do want to make sure to mention that thanks to council and the raises, we were able to work with, with our CDL drivers. I am only one driver short. So we have made up four positions in a very short time. And I looked, we actually have just interviewed, so we should be having that, that other driver starting. So I'm hoping to put that route online here in the next few months after we get everybody trained. So our department mission is, we're committed to enhancing the beauty, cleanliness, and livability of Victoria through high-quality services, public education on waste management, active community engagement through initiatives like Keep Victoria Beautiful, Community Appearance, and we work to inspire pride. And I think that's the biggest part of what we try and do in our department is inspire that pride and get people to help us make those long-term investments into the city's future. So our goals and objectives, complete the landfill procurement process. I am in the process of reviewing documents that'll go, that we're going back and forth on. And so I hope to have that coming back to council here relatively soon. Improve route efficiency. This is something we look at constantly. How can we do it better? How can we do it safer? How can we do it faster? Provide oversight and maintenance of current contracts, landfill compost facility and commercial waste. Landfill contract is going to be going out to bid probably around the end of August, and that's a big thing for the city. It'll be a 20 to 25-year contract. And it's got some pretty unique things that we're looking at doing that we'll bring back later. Provide oversight of Keep Victoria Beautiful, and that's just blown up. I mean, that's turned into something way bigger than I think we all kind of imagined at first. And work with Main Street Program. We, we work with them on a lot of things downtown. And so it worked, it just happens that our two departments work real well together. 25 highlights. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at it, but the Waste Wizard tool that we were able to get through a grant is pretty cool. You can put anything that you want to get rid of, and it'll tell you all the different places that you can get rid of that item. We finally have all the cameras installed on all of my automated trucks. So that's good for us and good for the customer. If you call and say you missed us, I can pull the video and say, no, I didn't. Or I can say, yeah, well, we'll be back. So it works out great. We completed 13 cleanups. That's the two big neighborhood cleanups. That's the, that's the cleanups that we do for KVB. But it also includes smaller cleanups that we do that are called Clean Sweeps, where people can just call us and say, we'd like to clean an area. We provide them with the tools to do it. They come by the office, pick it up. They do it on their own, and then we pick up the trash when they're done. The Class 1 Waste Amendment, which I touched on, that we're working on currently. The median maintenance program that Ken just talked about is something I got a price from a contractor we're working through. I met with Gilbert and Jesus this week and talked with Wesley. We're going to be putting that in. And so twice a year, we have a contractor who will be able to tackle anything that my crews on the Community Appearance side can't tackle so that we can keep these medians looking good, free from trash, free from weeds, and then spraying them to keep them that way. And then the KVB has, for the third year in a row, got the Gold Star Affiliate, which means we're meeting all of their criteria plus. Some of our performance metrics, cleanups, they're in red. You can see, I mean, they continue to grow every year with the number that we do and the number of volunteers that we have. Looking at brush and bulky, you know, it's kind of leveled off. You know, we had some up and down with Yuri and COVID, but now we're, we're kind of staying the same. This is the one that is, keeps me awake at night if there's anything, and that is contamination in our recycling. We have a curbside recycling program and contamination has been a problem since day one. And you know, it fluctuates, it comes and goes, but here lately, it's, it's been bad. But because of what we're doing with the Waste Wizard, with our education programs, we're in the, in the process now, and you may notice it on your carts at home, we have someone working with our crews going out and putting a sticker of what's acceptable on all the green carts in the city. It's going to take us, you know, probably a month to get it done, but it will be on the top of the cart. And so we're working hard to get that number down because honestly, that, that number can determine whether or not we can continue this service long-term.
Do, do we have a way to say exactly how much the recycling program costs us annually? I mean, is it a standalone number?
Yes, we do. I, I mean, I can tell you, I believe it's $1.92 a month that we're paying now, but we could get back with you and give you the actual cost of the program.
Yeah, I'd like to know what that is, just the overall cost.
Okay.
Yeah, cool, thank you.
You can see yard waste fluctuates quite a bit. And when you look at collections on residential, it's kind of gone up. Some of that is due to weight, but a lot of it's due to all the additional carts that we've got out on the street. I still have a waiting list of people waiting on new carts. Or not new carts, I'm sorry, but additional carts. I, if somebody would have told me that we would have, you know, 10,000 additional carts out on the street, I'd have told them, they're crazy. And then landscaping. So you can see, we did a lot of landscaping programs when we first started Community Appearance. The thing is, is with the crew size we have, can't really do anything new because now I've got to maintain all that we put in. And the loop really takes a lot of our time. That Green Ribbon Project takes a lot of our time, along with the mowing and other things that we, that we do on a regular basis. And then you'll see the code enforcement. The code enforcement drop-off is because we're no longer doing that. So department efficiencies, Waste Wizard Tool, we've talked about a couple times. You know, we got a grant from Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission for $12,500 that's paying for that. The driver raises, like I said, it, it has made a huge difference in what we, us going from six people down to only being one person down and having that person in the pipeline. And then KVB volunteer engagement. It's, you know, helped us with litter abatement and it's, it's valued at between $7,500 and $24,000 per cleanup event. And that's dependent on how many volunteers we have at each of those events. So new programs, well, we want to complete that landfill procurement process because that will get us into a contract that will cover us for the next 20-plus years possibly at the landfill. Increase efficiency by adding that seventh route. I get that person in, we get that person trained. That's going to take care of a lot of the overtime that we've had to have when we have shut down routes and different things. Now remember, it's a, it's only going to be a three-day-a-week route, but it will allow me to cut off all these extra carts that have been added to these current routes that have just blown them out of proportion. They should be between 800 and 1,000 carts a day, and some of them are running over 1,500. And then decrease recycling contamination through continued education. We're doing all we can on that front to get that out to the public. And then construct and open our Class 1 non-hazardous cell at the landfill. We're working through that right now. Hope to be bringing that to council soon for that amendment so that we can get that going. So this is our budget overview. We're up about 2.8 million, so about 44.35%. Personnel, pay program, and the removal of the amendment crew. Or the abatement crew for the Wheaty Lots. M&amp;O, the recurring cost is outs, the abatement program and increase in transfers to the general fund. We help out where we can there. Capital cost, we, we have fewer replacements and, you know, I have to give James credit. He didn't hit me really hard for anything this year, so he gets credit for that. And then, no, no. And then, one time, I came back to council, I think it was the last meeting in April, the first meeting in May, and asked to, for approval to preorder those garbage trucks so that we could get in line and not have to wait 14, 15 months to get trucks. And so that is that cost, and the one time is for those three automated trucks and one rear loader. So our revenue, I think the most important thing, and Mr. Garza covered it earlier, is there's, we're not going to ask for a rate increase this year. I hope Ms. Elise is, is listening because that was what she wanted to hear every year. But there is some change in our, in our revenue year over year, primarily due to conservative, being conservative with, and uncertain on how some of the interest rates goes on some of my accounts. And then an increase in, it's due to, you know, the additional carts in 23. If, just to remind council, we did do an increase on additional carts from $5 to $6.50 per month. So what are we going to do going forward? Next year, when I did my annual report, I, I had a three-year projection of what trucks I would need. So next year, I'll be looking. So next year, I'll be looking to ask for another rearload truck and another new knuckle boom, which picks up our brush and bulky items. A new 20-year contract would begin November of 2027. Now, could be same contractor, could be a new contractor. We'll see how that process goes, but we are on track with the timeline that we put to council several months ago. We've got more entryway signs to do. We only have two entrances left to do entryway signs. Highway 87 South going to Port Le Laca and Business 59. I will do a brief update, and I neglected to tell Mr. Garza this, but, what's the name of the company? Huh? Hunters?
Tejas.
Tejas. Tejas out on 59. There is an old entryway kind of triangle there. Tejas is working with Keep Victoria Beautiful and with our Community Appearance Department, and they are going to put up a sign and on this, as you're, and plants. And as you're coming in from, like Houston, it will say, Welcome to Victoria on one side. As you're leaving Victoria, though, it's going to say, Tejas Productions. All cost is his, not the city's. But he sat on the board with Keep Victoria Beautiful. This is something he wanted to do. So that will serve as a temporary sign. We are not going to seek putting a sign on 59 until the I-69 corridor is done, because if we put anything now, they're just going to tear it out. The, as Mr. Garza mentioned, a rate study for solid waste coming up probably in '27. Greenhouse for Community Appearance. I've talked about this multiple times during my annual reports. We've built our own kind of makeshift greenhouse. We think we can, we're saving around $60,000 a year in plants and stuff that we would have to purchase. If we put in a real greenhouse that's built properly, we could feed Community Appearance, we could feed parks, we could feed downtown with plants at a much cheaper rate than we would be able to buy them. And then the new solid waste building that has been talked about for a while. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions?
What would be the cost of having those two weedy abatement positions versus what you're paying for the contractors?
It is more expensive per property to do, to pay those contractors. I mean, that would be something Julie and I could put together for you, but their cost is a lot higher than our cost, because, one, they're going to take longer to do it. But, two, our cost is spread out in a different way than their cost is, because they're going to charge us for just that property. My cost is spread out through a much broader base. But that's something we can get to you.
Any other questions?
No. And, you know, I've said it before, but particularly in the public space, you know, aesthetics matter.
They do.
And we appreciate the work you and your team do. You do a great job, so keep it up.
It's all the team.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Daryl. Well, we're going to transition now and transition to some departments that we categorize as administrative departments. And so to kick that off, Ashley will speak about communications.
All right. Got to stretch after a while there. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Today, I'll be presenting our 2026 Communications and Public Affairs budget. A description of our department. Of course, we serve as the central hub for sharing information through a variety of communication methods and channels between the city and the community. And here you see a bulleted list of how we do that. And on the right, using ChatGPT, the free program, I did not describe who this would be, but it sure looks like me, Keisha Jesus, and James Foote. Here is our department structure. You'll see in the gray box is our communications manager, a new position we are requesting this year to whom the communications specialist would report. This provides you with the historical overview of our department employees since 2022. We are slowly but surely trying to build our embedded program. Our department's mission, we continue to aspire to inform and engage residents to help foster productive education within our community. And here's some great photos. So how do we do that? Some of our goals include proactively telling the city's story. There's numerous methods that we use to do that very thing. And then we also want to produce engaging content when we do so. Things that are relevant, that are timely, and that are modern to what any, you know, average Joe would expect to see. And we, of course, ultimately want to use these methods to advance the Comp 2035 Plan. And a lot of departments, this is their goal, and we want to support them in doing so, which includes attracting and retaining employees, marketing to outside businesses, and promoting Victoria overall. Some highlights from this year. We, of course, concluded our 2025 Citizens Academy Program, our Alumni Luncheon, and then, of course, we recognize nine distinguished citizens. If you recall, those are those residents who take the time and energy to participate in all three city educational programs, which, as a reminder for those who might be listening, they are free, and you can apply at our website. Town Talk, of course, was our newest podcast. We did launch that this past year. We're very excited to announce as well that the photo on the right shows a TAMEO, Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers Award of Excellence for that production. We just launched it this year, folks, and we're very excited when our statewide colleagues value our work as well. And then, of course, our community center renovation and expansion project, also known as the Venue Tax Information Campaign. We did complete that alongside our city manager's office and our communications consultant. One of the biggest things that we did in addition to that, that was pretty big, was we launched our new City Alert Center. So if you recall, that's our Everbridge software system, where we can target and text our customers right where they're at. Not just text, but phone call and email. And then, of course, we continued to support a lot of heavy content with Bicentennial towards the tail end of that year, and statewide award recognition for another video that I wanted to mention. And all videos are a team project, but really got to give a shout out over here to AJ Gonzalez, who did a lot of hard work on that video that really gave an ode to the history of Victoria, and especially during an important year, our bicentennial. All right, let's move into the metrics. So you notice I mentioned a lot our embedded program. And so over the years, you'll see that as we add one more staff member, when we're able, we are able to produce a little bit more work, not to mention the fact that we did recently, I say recently, but it was maybe about 2021, that we started to even track our workload. And so if we can get more staff members, that is the ultimate goal, is to produce more work for our city services, for our city departments, in the areas of marketing and communications support. Our newsroom visits. This was a kind of recent for those who might not be familiar. The newsroom is our victorietx.gov/news webpage, and what we call, what we consider it as is our central hub of information sources. So let's say someone wants to know, where do I get my podcast? Or how can I find out more videos about the city? How do I check out the latest press release that went out the other day? The newsroom is where we send people. So we do that. We target that newsroom to anything from our social media news releases. We're consistently sending people here, so that it's easy for them to access really everything that we're pushing out. And so that was a newer webpage that we worked on, and you'll hopefully continue to see some visits increasing to that page. And then, of course, social media continues to be one of our critical key methods of communicating to our residents. And you'll see kind of an average of about 5 million reach going on here. And so it really varies year to year based on what we're doing, and really the outcome of how our posts, you know, go online. And so we're excited to continue to see that average. Okay, efficiencies. This one I'm actually really excited and proud to talk about, because on the right you'll see George Bartida, who's not here, but he's a videographer of ours. He typically spends about two to three hours in post-production. What that means is, after we film a video, he then takes it back to the production room, if you will, and edits that video to make it high quality, is what you see the output today. That is about two to three hours. And with the purchase of that equipment that he's operating, what we call is a switcher, he is able to cut that time. And he's able to real-time switch between this camera to that camera, and that camera, and then maybe a third source, if you will, to show graphics and other video. And that way, it's live edited while we're filming. So you're kind of doing two things at once. Very cool. Had to brag on that. AJ does some of that work, too, of course. You heard Kate mention Monday.com. We've been using Monday.com for quite a few years lately here at the city, and we love its automations, so it helps us reduce our emails. When a city department asks us, hey, can you help us with this graphic design flyer? Or can you come do coverage of our event? It automatically emails them versus, you know, staff time having to email them, hey, we received your project. It also plugs it into our project management system, which is, is just a game changer, and it's been very productive for our staff. And then finally, one of the ways that we've been efficient is by providing cross-training. So we are down one staff member, but nevertheless, AJ has filled in to produce some of that content and not leave our city without the capacity to provide some of those services. New programs. So in 2026, we are continuing to develop Town Talk and other creative material, of course. We will continue to coordinate communication-centric training, primarily with HR for our city employees. And along those lines, we are excited to be launching a new internal Citizens Academy solely for our employees. Every year, we get someone from the city who's saying, hey, can I participate in the one that you offer to the public? And I hate when we have to say no, you know, it's really for the public, and this one will be able to do just that. So looking forward to working with HR on that. And then, of course, we want to continue to conduct media luncheons, workshops, training, all the things for our city staff. And finally, once the Public Safety Headquarters Building opens up, we will have our communications embedded staff member, who is Gabe Myers. If you haven't met him, he's great. He's already plugging right in, and he's our new Public Safety Communications Manager. We call him the new Lauren. We've even introduced him at a regional PIO network meeting as such.
How does he feel about that?
He said it. He said, Gabe Myers, also known as the new Lauren. So taking one out of his playbook. So here's our budget overview. This year, we are increasing about $100,000. If you're wondering why, well, we are adding a new staff member. We're requesting to add a new staff member. And of course, with that comes software maintenance and any additional IT needs that'll go with that, including cell phone and the cell service. To specify, software maintenance is not just to the new position, by the way. It's to additional opportunities that we've seen and observed that are out there and that are trending, and that will help us to be the more efficient in our graphic design and video work. So what are we looking at 2027 and beyond? We want to increase, again, I keep saying, the embedded program. We look forward to actually building out this long-awaited, long-discussed studio and communications suite, where we will not be fragmented. I'll have to find an alternative way to get my steps in, like Julie was saying, but we'll all be in one house together, and we'll be closer to chambers as well, once we do move to City Hall. And then, of course, to continue to identify new opportunities to engage and communicate with our public. You know, we continue to really want to outdo ourselves. That's going to be a little hard at some point, but we're trying, and we're going to continue to look for those creative methods and keep getting better at what we do. And without further ado, that is it, and I will answer any questions.
The new position that's being proposed, communications manager, what would be the responsibilities of that position?
So this person will really oversee all the various social media and news release product that we're putting out to the public. There's a lot of different departments that look for this support. If you look at our pie wheel that we'll produce in our annual report, you'll see one of the biggest numbers of support is a news release. That's really the biggest method that people want to hear and learn about our city work. And so that will really help us to divvy up that work. Really, it was going to be more so for environmental services, public works, and, you know, that kind of topic, but this person can really do more for other departments. You already heard that they want to promote their community center brand. You heard about other things that Daryl wants to do with Waste Wizards. So those are just some examples of how we can better support, not just with the news release, but social media campaigns. So it's really going to expand our capacity.
In addition to that, though, I would add that in the org chart, you have this manager position overseeing the communications specialist.
Correct.
And so as this embedded program grows, we envision adding more communications specialists. And so that's, and so if you end up with a group of three or four, you know, communications specialists that help support different departments across the city, they would all report to this one communications manager in that structure.
Got it. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it, Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley. And so we'll keep it going, and I believe Nina is up to talk about everybody's favorite department, human resources.
It isn't.
Your time's up.
Welcome, Nina.
I've got five seconds. Mayor and council, thank you for allowing me to present today. My very supportive team has said it's okay if I mess up my first try, because they'll just laugh like they did everybody else, so there's that. So human resources, we've got a lot going on, starting with our department description. So some of the areas that we feel really important about, we do serve as a strategic partner, not only with our city departments and employees, but also with the community and allies that we have within the community to help build those pipelines of talent and support our employees. Attract, that relates to our exceptional talent. We're really trying to find the right people and put them in the right places, so that we set them up for success. Foster, fostering growth and development throughout the organization is extremely important as we continue to grow and build that succession plan. Inspire commitment. Inspiring commitment plays a huge role in retention, so really getting employees to understand what a great place they're part of, and getting that commitment from day one, so that they continue their career throughout the rest of their, through retirement, we hope. Cultivate, cultivating talent and excellence. Champion equitable and compliant policies that align with organizational structures and goals. And sustaining our workforce to keep Victoria positioned for long-term success. Our organizational chart does have the Director of Human Resources. We have an Assistant Director of Human Resources, an HR Compliance and Risk Manager, an HR Partner. We have two HR partners that are over recruitment and talent acquisition and development, and then the other side really focuses on compensation and compliance. The two black boxes are actually funded out of the risk management budget, not necessarily the HR budget, but we are part of one team.
The idea of a partner came from Nina, by the way.
It did. We are HR partners because we're partnering with our employees to ensure their success. He laughs at me every time I say that. As far as employees for the HR department, we do have a steady five, but we were able to add a part-time position. This was a long-term employee of the HR department that decided to go part-time for a bit, so we want to make sure we keep her talent onboard until she's ready to come back full-time. So that really has helped us with some of the growth we've had and just some of the tasks that have been given to our department.
Go to the next slide, up there, too.
Department mission, we partner across departments in the community to attract and empower a diverse, future-ready workforce, upholding integrity, fostering innovation, and delivering exceptional service to the city of Victoria. Our goals and objectives, to champion a culture of engagement, making sure that every employee feels like their voice and opinion is valued, delivering strategic and trusted HR services, being responsive, transparent, and strategic in all that we do, strengthening the compensation plan to ensure fair, to ensure it's fair, equitable, and sustainable, improving workforce retention, this goes back to inspiring that commitment from day one, and empowering growth and development as we continue to build succession plannings and develop employees across the organization. Some of our FY '25 highlights include our recruitment. We were able to fill approximately 97 positions since October of 2024, five of those being leadership positions that were extremely important in the sustainability of our workforce across departments. The Compensation Committee, it's been a great pleasure to work with council and city administration to help develop a compensation plan that would not only attract and retain high-quality employees, but strengthen employee satisfaction and ensure the continuity of essential city services. And as you can see, those are just pieces of the Compensation Committee presentation that we presented, and all of the different areas that had a positive impact from those changes and support. changes and support. As far as performance goes, we have remained steady with around 77 open positions. That gives us a vacancy rate with an average of 11.1%. You can see how it's changed from 2022 to 2025. Turnover rate, that really peaked in 2022 but has declined, and we hope to see that continuing to decline. So our average over the past four years has been 21.5%. Departmental efficiencies, some of those include our successful implementation of NeoGov's preboarding, onboarding, and e-forms. These are various platforms that we have within the system that helps automate compliance, speed up the onboarding process, replace paperwork, enhance oversight, and strengthen engagement, not only with current employees, but with employees who just start from day one. So NeoGov will take them from the moment they apply all the way through their employment and day one. Under Health and Wellness, we did transition from Vitality to Well on Target. Well on Target is a wellness program and platform that's offered through Blue Cross, Blue Shield, something that's already part of our health plan, and so we were able to save about $26,400 by transitioning over to that. Offers the same benefits, and it's a little easier for employees to access and utilize. New programs and initiatives, we have a lot of really good things going on. The first, fostering growth, so delivering, delivering targeted training to boost engagement and long-term success. Enhancing systems, moving from NeoGov to Tyler Technologies to streamline finance, HR, payroll, and procurement, making sure that we're all working within the same system. Elevate recruitment, using NeoGov tools to attract and onboard talent. Revamping onboarding, this goes back to that championing commitment. Redesigning orientation to align with the values, improve connection, and support retention. And tracking impact, using metrics to gauge productivity and measure outcomes, not only for recruitment, such as time to hire, time to fill, and our, but also in our health plan to see who's enrolled in which programs, to see where our success is, to see where we should be focusing as far as different programs that we're rolling out with Health and Wellness as well. So you can see our budget overview, we are a little over by 53,491 as far as changes. Some of that is, next one, that's attributed to the pay program increase, and then also some increases in computer maintenance. As mentioned, we are going to be transitioning over to Tyler. We did get a new badge machine to help improve that efficiency in various software that we began using to just improve efficiencies within our department. For FY '27 and beyond, talent development and success planning, succession planning, proactively investing in leadership pipelines, upskilling and internal mobility to prepare for retirements and workforce shifts, technology integration and automation, embracing digital HR tools such as air-driven recruitment, cell service portals, analytics, and anything we need to enhance efficiency and employee experience, and workforce wellness and retention strategies, expanding that mental health resources, flexible work policies, and engagement initiatives to attract and retain a resilient, motivated workforce. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Sure.
And for those that don't know, I, I know this just from being on the subcommittee, I want to highlight Nina's dedication to that Compensation Subcommittee and her fostering relationship growth and transparency with our city employees.
Thank you.
So thank you and your team for that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. She's been with us for a little over six months, and normally HR doesn't present like this, but we felt it was appropriate to give her an opportunity to just highlight the vision she has for our HR Department, because literally every single employee touches HR in one way, shape, or form. And so it's critical that we all are up to speed with the evolution of our HR Department to be more proactive, be more innovative, and just be more intentional at the end of the day, and Nina's the right person for that. So, all right, moving on. Now we get to talking about IT stuff. It's, it's everyone's favorite budget villain.
Right? Right? Yeah. First of all, I really want to disappoint some people. I'm going to ask some individuals who have not completed their security awareness training to stay after the workshop. And please complete that. But in all seriousness, no, you don't have to. But I will remind you all, please, Mr. Garz has completed his training. I think everyone else can just step up their game a little bit, complete that.
Yes, I'm always the last one.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. I'm here to present the Information Technology Budget Request for Fiscal 2026. I'm excited to share how we're positioning ourselves to better serve our community and city departments in the coming years. The Information Technology Department serves as a central technology hub for all city operations, supporting everything from basic computer support to critical infrastructure systems. Our department manages the city's entire technology ecosystem, including network infrastructure, cybersecurity, telecommunications, radio systems, specialized applications that keep the city services running smoothly. Let me start with our organizational chart and proposed changes. As you can see from our organizational chart, our team structure reflects the diverse technology needs across the city departments. We have specialists in systems administration, network management, web support, SCADA systems for public works, and general IT support. The Assistant IT Director shown in gray on our organizational chart is the only additional personnel we are requesting. Employees, we, we currently operate with 11 full-time employees, and for Fiscal 2026, as I mentioned previously, we're requesting to add one critical position. Assistant IT, Assistant Director of IT, we need this management-level support to effectively oversee our expanded team and services and also ensure continuity of operation. This would bring our total requested count to 12. Our mission is clear and focused. We deliver exceptional support and innovative technology solutions and empower city departments to provide efficient and effective services to our community. Everything we do aligns with our four key objectives. Prioritizing our initiatives to directly support departmental business needs, providing technology coordination for public safety systems, maintaining compliance, security, and confidentiality, delivering effective customer service to all city system users. Some of our accomplishments highlight what we've accomplished this year, and these achievements demonstrate our value and set the foundation for our Fiscal 2026 request. We have significantly strengthened our cybersecurity posture by implementing DMARC email security protocols, protecting the city from email-based threats and phishing attacks. Our public safety capabilities improved through enhanced P25 radio interoperability with outside agencies, which is crucial for emergency response coordination. To date, we've already added two outside agencies, Jackson and Lavaca County, and Council, next week, I will be bringing to you another MOU for DeWitt County to join our, you know, We've modernized our support infrastructure with the new Helpdesk solution and upgraded the city's phone system, improving our response time and service quality. We've expanded operational efficiency by adding solid waste parks and building equipment services to our city work system, and we've enhanced security by adding encryption to all of our city laptops. I'm doing this a little different. I'm actually adding in the IT highlights, and then also, I'm also adding in the radio system highlights because I'm also over the, the radio system. But our radio system improvements have been particularly significant for all public safety operations. We programmed all of our public safety radios with new state-issued radio IDs and state encryption keys, enabling seamless communication with state agencies during emergencies and joint operations. We've conducted a comprehensive inspection of our south tower, and we're addressing the structural weaknesses, ensuring the reliability of our critical communications infrastructure. We've modernized our tower connectivity by transitioning from outdated T1 copper circuits to high-speed fiber circuits, improving signal quality and system reliability. And we've also repurchased replacement police and fire radios. Thank you, Council, for doing that, ensuring our first responders have reliable, up-to-date communications equipment. I didn't really go too much into the performance metrics. A lot of what I had was just a lot of very boring stuff as far as firewall, email, everything like that, but, so I just went with the number of service requests. But I do want to highlight in the upper right-hand side that it is the police department that is the largest customer. Hence why they get the most charge. You bet, anytime. But yes, and that's usually the, the case. It's usually, we do have our, our three largest customer bases is police, fire, and library. Unique as far as HR is in there, and that's just strictly because their request for new employees and turnovers and reductions are, we've reflected in this, this graph. Some of our efficiencies, we've reduced, department efficiencies, I'm missing, sorry.
There's a generator in this building just attached to this building, in case anybody's wondering.
Okay, I'm sorry. We've reduced our operational expenses by transitioning our sailor data circuits to AT&amp;T Control Center. This basically effectively, what it does is prior with all of our data circuits, so when we say sailor data circuits, these are with all of our MDTs, anything like that that uses a sailor. A lot of times, we're getting charged, a monthly charge from AT&amp;T, flat rate, this is the amount it is. That vehicle may be in the shop, or it may be very limited data usage, but we're still getting a flat rate. By transitioning over to this new program, basically it's based upon, it drops, it's a tiered base, so we have a base charge of like $11, and then it tiers up based upon the usage. So we've cut down our, that charge tremendously. We've reduced our Helpdesk tickets by implementing Windows authentication for the police software. This has helped to reduce the number of after-hours password resets from the police department.
I'm sensing a theme here.
There is a, just a little bit, just a little, just a little bit. We've modernized our operations by converting paper-based forms to digital format, eliminating manual processing and streamlining data workflows across departments. On our radio system efficiencies, we've streamlined cross-agency communications and eliminated compatibility barriers, but previously hindered effective coordination. That was basically just by us signing these MOUs with these other agencies. Also, a big help is with, with going to little state, state-issued radio IDs. We've significantly improved data transmission speeds, reliability, and bandwidth capabilities across our whole radio infrastructure, and we're proactively ensuring equipment reliability while preventing costly emergency replacement and minimizing repair expenses for aging Looking ahead, our Fiscal 2026 initiatives focus on accessibility, efficiency, and innovation. We're prioritizing ADA compliance for all the city websites, ensuring equal access to all our community members. We're going to expand our data visualization capabilities with additional departmental dashboards in city works, giving departments better insights in their operations. We'll be implementing public web forums and Laserfish, making it easier for citizens to interact with city services online. We're actively embracing artificial intelligence also to assist with computer asset tracking, warranty management, and replacement cycle. This will improve our inventory management and budget process. And finally, we'll be implementing specialized software to help track laptops in, in compliance with these requirements. Some of our initiatives for the radio system are critical for maintaining our reliable public safety communications, so we're going to implement redundant network connections between the 911 center, 911 center, and our towers. Currently, right now, the way they're laid out is that our 911 center has a connection to the south, south tower, and the south tower has a connection to the north tower. If we lose any of those connections, we lose connections between the towers. So this way, we're going to actually create redundant connections, connecting them all together, so if one of the search, circuits go down, we always will maintain communications with the towers. We'll be upgrading our radio system to version 2024. We usually stay one version behind. We don't want the latest and greatest, we want the most stable one. So 26 is the latest one, we'll go to 24. Most significantly, we'll be working to establish a connection to a regional radio system, which will dramatically increase our communication capabilities with other regional systems. So whether it's reused through Gators, which is out of Bear County, or Harris Text Warrant, which is out of Houston, the ones we're looking at. So let me walk you through our budget request of $2,787,000, which represents a 10.5% increase over Fiscal 2025. So personnel costs, this 19.88% increase reflects two key factors. The implementation of the city's pay program adjustments, and also the addition of the Assistant Director position, which is critical for managing our expanded responsibilities. Maintenance and operations, this 21.55% increase is primarily driven by software maintenance. As we have expanded our technology footprint and capabilities, our ongoing maintenance requirements have grown proportionally. Also, our existing vendors seem to like price increases. I actually love price increases, seems like. Our one-time requests, this is a 94.42% decrease from Fiscal 25 because we're completing our ERP project, Tyler Technologies, and our one-time request of $10,607 is specifically for Office 2022 for the police department. And we'll go into our revenue structure. We generate seven, $2,756,000 in revenue from interdepartmental charges for technology services we like to provide to the, we provide to the city departments. I, um, first, I'd also like to thank the chief for footing the bill. Anytime. You know, they complain a lot. I've heard a lot of complaints about this internal charges, charges like it's a bad thing, and I'm going to, is he here? He's not here. I wanted to paraphrase our CFO.
No, he's behind you.
That's cost recovery, baby. That's cost recovery, baby.
I didn't say that.
Paraphrase it.
I said paraphrase it. That's it, cost of business. And of course, now we get into our view, future vision, '27 beyond. We'll continue to plan for a comprehensive 3-1-1 call center to improve citizen services. We need to select a new CAD-RMS solution for the police and fire department, and we'll be exploring AI-powered predictive analytics for budget trend forecasting, crime trend analysis, and infrastructure maintenance planning. I'd also like to launch a citizen tracking facing improvements, including inquiry chatbots and payment portals with SMS notifications. Most exciting is our digital city concept, creating a virtual model of Victoria for growth planning, like SimCity, but real municipal planning. On the radio side, our long-term planning addresses both immediate needs and long-term infrastructure needs. Our current Motorola GT-R base station repeaters, those are the ones with that bottom in the center, is nearing end of life, and if we, 2030 is the end of, end of life on that, and so we'll need to replace those. And those are, the new model is the D-series multi-carrier class. Those are quite expensive, so we will definitely be looking for any kind of grant funding that we can get to, to do that. The other one thing we'd like to do is actually transition from our FDM, Frequency Division Multiple Access, to TDMA, Time Division Multiple Access. Effectively, what that does is when we have talk groups, and we have 15 available talk groups, but basically, you can only talk one, one conversation on one talk group. With the TDMA, we can actually double it, and so we can actually get two conversations on one of our channels. So we're basically doubling our channel capacity, so that's something we're going to be looking for in 20, beyond. So in summary, our 2026 budget represents a strategic investment in Victoria's technology, infrastructure, and capabilities. The 10.5% increase delivers significant value through enhanced cybersecurity, improved citizen services, operational efficiencies, and the leadership capacity needed to manage our growing responsibilities. I'm happy to answer any questions about our budget or our initiatives.
Any questions for Mr. Foot?
Thank you for helping the police department.
Anytime, I try to do my best. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a truly a team effort. Thanks, James. We're going to keep it going. We did not have City Secretary's Office and Finance Department on the original schedule, but we assumed correctly that there would be time for be time for you to hear from them as well. And so April will talk about City Secretary, and then Wesley will actually wrap us up with the Finance Department.
I think Jessica's pretty happy that the chief of police is still here.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As Hesu stated, I found out yesterday, late afternoon, that I would be presenting, although my presentation was done. I had to quickly write notes, and Hesu and I went over this about 4:15 yesterday. My office, as evident by this slide, we do a variety of different things. We are the permanent record holder for the city. We do a lot of meeting minutes. I am the local registrar for all of Victoria County. So we issue, file, and review all of the birth and death records for the entire county. We do issue a variety of different permits and licenses. I'm the Elections Administrator for the City of Victoria, and we do a lot of agendas and public meeting notices. There are a host of other things that we also do that I just did not even list here, the biggest thing being the public information request that my office handles. So as Chuck is getting a new person to handle his, those all come to my office first. The org chart, we are one of the smaller offices in the city with just myself, the Assistant City Secretary Sandra West, and then our two administrative assistants, Marisol Garcia and Jackie Pettis. So the department has remained strong at four for the last several years. I believe it was in 2021 that we last had an increase from three to four. When I first started here 17 years ago, we did have four, and we went down to three, or back up to four again when we took some responsibilities from the legal department in 2021. So our department mission is to support government transparency by recording and maintaining all official city documents, city council legislative actions, and to provide courteous and knowledgeable customer service to all of our citizens and staff, and to fulfill all responsibilities of office in a professional manner. So that is our, on the left there is our, the same staff picture we used from last year. We liked it, so we kept it. And on the right is the three of us that participated in the heartwalk earlier this year. So our goals and objectives are to always administer a fair election that results in the wishes of our community being heard at the polls. We would like to provide a level of customer service which exceeds the expectations of our residents of Victoria, enhances their quality of life. We also want to provide staff with professional development opportunities to increase the knowledge of all aspects of our department's responsibilities, and then, of course, to register, record, and issue vital statistics in a timely and accurate manner while maintaining the security of those records. So we are tasked with sometimes turning people down for vital statistics just because they don't comply with the regulations on getting them. So our highlights, our office did conduct some training this year for the agenda management software for both, for police, fire, and the parks leadership, to help that be just a more efficient process for them. We also conducted training on record retention for some city employees. And then, just back at the beginning of June, y'all saw that we were awarded the Achievement of Excellence Award from the Texas Municipal Clerks Association for the 2025, 2026 award cycle, and we were one of 45 cities to receive that. And that's our third consecutive award in that area. They barely started seven years ago, so. Our metrics, probably not as exciting as many other departments, but the garage sales for our department have gone down over the last few years. We do have an online system for them to request garage sales through the website, or also they can come into the office sometimes. They even do them over the phone, and they just pay over the phone. But it hasn't dropped all that much, but it's slightly has dropped too, and we're projecting it to remain around 1,350. Sets of minutes written, that's all dependent on how many meetings you guys have, as well as a lot of the other meetings that I facilitate writing minutes for, which are several other of the economic development type boards and commissions, sales tax, the PFC, the HFC, TERS board, all those boards that I handle, development commission, public facilities, or public health facilities, commission some of those that we don't use too often. So that's, but that remains consistent around around 50. The vital statistics, that particular graph lists not only the ones that we issued, but also the ones we register. So the registration fluctuates. I don't like projecting that one or estimating it because it's a combined projection of both birth and deaths, and I never want to wish anybody to die. So, but usually, it has dropped since 2023 for the ones that we've issued. And I believe that's a result in, there was, the state was having some trouble with their software. The state requires funeral homes. When they go in and issue, or when they go in and enter a birth certificate, they require them to actually purchase at least one death certificate from them. It's cheaper when you purchase them all at once rather than splitting it out in two different orders because of the way the death certificates are priced. And so for a while, our issuance increased because the state was really slow at issuing those. So the funeral homes were willing to pay twice to get the death certificates, both them and us. And they've kind of straightened that out, and the state's doing better. So they've kind of gone back to just purchasing from the state in a lot of ways, which makes sense. I don't blame them. That saves them money and that they're passing along to their families. But the, like I said, the registrations, we just kind of have remained consistent around 3,100. There was a spike in the registration of deaths in particular during COVID, of course, but it's kind of leveled out since then. Public information requests, so you see those significantly increased from 2022 to 2024. And I believe that's really just a result of all departments doing a better job of entering those into the system that we use to track it. They all come into my office first, and then we facilitate getting them out to all the departments, the particular staff that handles that in each department. We watch them, make sure they're hitting their 10-day deadline. So sometimes they get emails from me and like, hey, what are you doing? What's due tomorrow, things like that. So we just watch them consistently. And the total transactions has actually dropped slightly. A lot of that is the result of when we stopped selling game room permits. So that lessened the game room permits, as well as the coin-operated machine permits or amusement machine permits that they had to have for the machines in there. So that lowered that quite a bit because those individual machines was one permit per machine. If they had, you know, 50 machines per business, it was adding up. So we're projecting that out to be about 11,000. And that does not include any of the vital statistics since they're referenced in the other performance metric. So our efficiencies, we did add an additional credit card machine last year. We only had one, so customers often had to stand in line just to pay. So adding that second machine has decreased the processing time for our customers and staff. And then, my staff came to me, and we already had a nice shredding machine because we hand shredded anything that dealt with vital statistics. And so they said, you know what? We think we can keep up with everything. So instead of outsourcing part of our shredding, they just now shred everything by hand in the office. So between customers and between other things they have to do. So that saves some money for us.
Who's that in the picture?
Yeah, that was us with Batman. We were very excited. And then, our new programs and initiatives for 2026, courses to continue with the issuance of vital statistics according to Texas DSHS regulations, and to enhance administration of the citywide records management program. You'll see in a later slide that we would eventually love to have a staff member that does nothing but records retention across, and records management across the city. We do want to review the agenda management software options, just to make sure that we have the best fit for our city. So sometimes there's quirks with our system. As evident last week during the council meeting, we had tried to make some changes, and it just didn't update. And that was even with the help of technical support, from what I understand. So there's just some quirks to the system that we would like to possibly find a better solution that works for our city. And then, training for our staff to maintain a high level of customer service and facilitate professional development. So our budget, I think we have the smallest in the city at $444,501. So that's just a variance of $33,163, or 8.06%. And those changes are due to the pay program and the reoccurring increase due to internal service charges, James, and the increase to fees for professional services. That was mostly in the side of those professional services fees are with the company that handles the codification of our code and maintaining it online. They had some increases there. And then, the cost of office supplies. So we did ask for an additional $500 for our birth and death paper. It's very expensive, and we're required to buy it from only one vendor that the state approves. So anytime they go up, they renegotiate the state contract, we get no say. We just have to buy it at that price. So, and it's very expensive. So I just recently ordered, and it was about $5,000 for one year's worth of paper for us. And then, the professional service line item does include funds to cover the November civil service and collective bargaining election. And then possibly, if we do a voter-approved tax rate election, that would be, those same fees would cover that election, hopefully, all at once, because it would still be a citywider at that point, because it would be an election that also comes with any changes to the state constitution or anything that we would split the costs with the county and state for that election.
And I want to, just real quick, just interject, because I know the question comes up, and we haven't had a chance to publicly convey to you what the cost of the May election that just passed was. You may recall, some of you realizing after the 2024 election, it costing us over $100,000. It was about $113,000, and that really kind of caught a lot of people off guard. Well, the one that just passed in May of '25 was $101,000. And so the cost of elections has increased significantly. So it no longer is, you know, the $50,000, $60,000 that people thought it would cost. It's coming in at six figures now.
It can cost less. It all depends on who else is in the election with us.
Right. And with the civil service election, collective bargaining election, and I asked April yesterday, I was like, when was the last time we, the city had something on the ballot in November?
I think it's been since the 90s.
And so we don't really know how that's going to shake out on how much that's going to cost us. But the budget does have that $60,000 in there, though, as a placeholder.
Normally, on this year being the third year, because we have elections two years in a row, and then on the third year, just because of the way y'all's terms circulate, we would not have anything in the budget specifically for election. We normally keep the budget the same. We do projects, like a big records retention project or something like that with those funds. But this year, because we knew of the collective bargaining and civil service, we're just keeping that money in there specifically for the election. So, and then, capital changes did decrease because we have less computer hardware that we're replacing, and the one-time expenses did increase due to the need of another desktop scanner. My office scans and documents every day, all day. All of us have scanners. So one's broken right now, so I gave up mine so that my staff can have it. And so we're going to replace that. So I don't have to depend on them to do everything for me. And then, a slight personnel increase there. So revenues, that still has the wrong amount. Yeah, we did change it. A lot had to create this slide for me last night. But it currently shows that I have $1.5 million in revenues, and that is not true. I wish it was. But it's going to be probably right around 500,000. If you had those numbers up, they don't total 1.5 million. You know, we're messaging earlier, that's like, that's right. So, but basically, our revenues kind of just cover our cost of our office with a slight, you know, slight more there. Most of our permits come from, or our fees come from the liquor licenses and permits that we issue, and then vital statistics. You see a separate category for the record and license permits because that's a significant one. We just collected those this past week. So they pay a large fee to be on the rotation program for the city to be called out to accidents and things like that one. So that is a large amount as well. So, but the remote certifications and the vital statistics, those are really, this issuance of birth and death records just depends on what system we're getting it from, from our local birth or death, or the state records. So finance did project a slight increase of $20,000 just because we're seeing more revenue come in from liquor licenses and permits. 2027 beyond, we have, we would love to have another staff member that does nothing but public information requests and records retention, because that does take a significant part of our day. We would love, in order to have another person, we need a larger space. So with the renovation of City Hall, we're hoping to get some more space for our office to include at least one other employee, and, you know, maybe space for additional in the future. And our, we want, you know, some additional professional training for all staff members, both on vital statistics and municipal clerk duties. And we would love some improved point-of-sale software. And our permitting software, we use the same software as Julie, so we're hoping that that does finish out before September. But if not, it may be that we just need some additional. Our permits are very different from theirs, so it's really hard to use one piece of software for their type of permit and ours. So, and then, James and I have discussed that we do, we'll eventually need some new digital bulletin boards there in City Hall. They just, after a while, kind of get burned from, you can see even now on the very bottom of the screens, there's like a burning issue because they constantly run 24/7. And that is a picture from one of those staff members in my office got married back in March. So that's a picture of all of us sharing her excitement with her wedding shower. And the lady on the end is Sandra's mother, who we affectionately call Mama. She comes to visit us sometimes. And thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them.
Any questions for Ms. Hilbert? All right. Thank you, April.
Thank you, April, for adjusting so last minute for today. So I appreciate it. And next up, Wesley, pay attention. Next up, last department to go for today will be our Finance Department. And so I think it's fitting that Wesley wraps us up for today, since he helped drive the bus on putting all of this together. Sir?
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you. All right. Well, good afternoon. I'll be presenting the Finance Department budget. Does it still work? Okay, so I don't lose it at all. Okay. All right. So our department's responsible for accounting and financial reporting, payroll processing, purchasing, budget preparation, treasury management, and accounts payable. I do want to point out that we do this not only for the city, but also for the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation, Victoria Housing Finance Corporation, and the Downtown TERS. The Finance Department is shown in the blue boxes. On the left and right sides in black are the Purchasing Department and the Utility Billing Office, both of which report to Finance. Now, within the Finance Department itself, we have 10 FTEs. These are primarily funded in the General Fund, and the three grant positions are also split funded with other city funds and grants. Our mission is essentially to be good stewards of taxpayer funds and all other city funds by being financially transparent, maintaining proper internal controls, and following sound policies. We also strive to provide quality customer service for residents, employees, and any other stakeholders.
Wait, go back?
Trying to figure out who Gilbert was.
All right, who's Wesley? It's the last presentation. It's going off the rails.
What's this free chat?
It wasn't even ChatGPT. They got the off-brand version.
I didn't make it.
Gilbert wouldn't approve anymore.
Money well not spent.
There you go. All right. So our goals and objectives include high-level cash and debt management practices, accurate and timely budget and financial reporting, improvement of efficiencies in seeking out cost-saving measures, facilitating the budget and audit processes, obtaining grants, and providing financial support for departments. This year, we began implementation of a new accounting system to replace SAP. This is phase one of the project. We have two additional phases for HR and utility billing, which will start in fiscal '26. We maintained our bond ratings on our GOCO and revenue bonds, and...
You're the one with the gray beard.
And we received a budget NACF awards for the 40th. And we received a budget NACF awards for the 40th and 41st years, respectively. This chart here shows the trend in accounts payable entries, it's the blue bar. You'll see there's about 8,000 entries that we're estimating for next year, actually around 8,000 that we're projecting for this year. Under our current process, departments will fill out a PDF form that we call an AP voucher, and attach an invoice to it, and submit it to Finance, all for one person to, to input all of these, all of these entries into SAP. So that's a lot of work for one person, a lot of, a lot of opportunity with multiple steps and data entry to make errors. Under our new system, that AP voucher process will just live within the ERP system itself, so departments will enter all the coding and all that, and upload, upload the invoice with it, so when it gets to Finance, we're essentially just verifying the coding is correct, or paying the right vendor, et cetera, hit OK, and move on. So it'll, it'll limit the opportunity for error and just kind of cut back on that workload for that one person. So excited about that, because we love Janie. This next one, these are our performance metrics on our purchasing department. On the left side, these are the solicitations that we do through BidNet. A lot of this work happens all in about the middle of the fiscal year. Recently, the state legislation, they, they passed a law to increase the threshold to 100,000 on competitive bids. So if we follow that and adopt a local policy of that same amount, that would reduce the workload related to the competitive solicitations. And with the help of IT and legal, and when I say IT, I mean Wayland, because I don't want to give James any credit, we were able to create electronic workflow for contract term sheets, and, and Wayland's really, he helped, he's helped us a lot with making old processes, paper processes, electronic, and ensuring that finance is in the loop of the processes that, that we need to be, so we can verify that, that the funding is there and that we're coding everything correctly. And also, again, with, with the small team here, we do manage a very large budget, and ensure that all, all activity is properly recorded in order to receive the clean audits that we have been receiving, and preparing a balanced budget that meets the priorities of councils. So we're always looking for, for ways to become more efficient in completing our tasks. And 2026, we'll be going live with the accounting module of Tyler ERP. Again, like I said earlier, we will begin implementation of payroll and UBO after that. And our fiscal '26 CIP calls for issuing $33 million in, in COs. So we'll be working with our financial advisor and bond counsel on those transactions and meeting with the rating agencies in preparation of issuance in February or March of 2026. In addition to the COs, we'll also be issuing about $9.1 million in venue tax bonds. Those, of course, will be funded by the new venue tax and short-term rental tax that was approved by the voters in May. Implementation of these fees will begin in October 1 of this year, which will collect directly. And then finally, if the, we have possible implementation of a new stormwater fee, and once a decision's been made on that, either yes or no, we will begin a water rate study to update fees that were previously implemented in fiscal '19. Finance budget for next year is increasing $27,000 at 3.3%. The increase in personnel is due to the pay program. MNO is due to IT charges. I apologize, man, I'm just trying to make your front hole.
Internal charges.
Right, right. Capital is for laptop replacements, and the one, one-time expense that we have is for the stipend program. Looking into the future, we'll continue exploring more efficient options, options for performing departmental tasks, working ongoing live with our new ERP system. I will participate in the process of the City Hall renovation with a plan to move the department back downtown, and then just continuing to stay on top of potential changes in legislation that impact us. Sometimes they're helpful things, like increasing the competitive bid threshold, and other times they're the horrible things like limiting the, our ability to issue COs to fund projects, which thankfully didn't pass this time, but it'll keep coming back, so. But that is the end of my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Wesley, great job on the budget.
Thank you, Wesley, and yeah. I hope you feel the same way, but every year that we do this, the presentations get much, much just more smooth, more efficient, more succinct, we're able to go through more in much less time. I think that just speaks to staff's own ability to just understand what they're presenting over time, but also just thanks to Finance and the, and the work they put into ensuring that our presentations flow smoothly. We already gave them a round of applause, but thank you for, to Finance and all the directors and chiefs that have been working tirelessly over the last couple of months to get to this point. But of course, this is just the beginning. As I mentioned early on, I look forward to working with you over the course of the next month to hopefully prepare as final as possible proposed budget that would be presented to you on August 5, and then ultimately approved in mid-September. Through the course of today, you know, I've received feedback from a couple of you that you have questions, that you've jotted down questions. I think it would be helpful if, if you could, you know, type those questions out, that'd be very helpful, and that would help us summarize all of the questions that we get from all of you, and that then we can provide answers to all of you as well. And I think that'll make the process go, go much smoother as well. But anyway, that's all we have for today, Mayor, and happy to answer any questions or address any concerns you might have about the process or next steps.
I think we all saw the timeline, familiar with what's coming, so great job, everybody. Thanks to all the department heads who put the, put a lot of time and effort into these presentations, I know, but they are helpful, so thank y'all very much. And with that then, we adjourn, everybody have a good weekend.